All right, it is 5:30, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And if you can give us a roll call, please.
Ms. McQuaid. Yeah. Councilmember Nathan.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tiedemann.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Here.
Mayor Gary.
Here, thank you, Anne. We'll go down to line number two. That's our study session, we'll start with two dash one. We'll go ahead and hear the report from staff before we begin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This evening, you have before you a study session on your strategic plan. You've had a couple of staff reports on the current version of the strategic plan beginning in December, and then a conversation about what the next iteration of the plan should entail in terms of format and template. With the council giving general consensus consensus to continue with the current version and template of the strategic plan and update as necessary. Included in your staff report, we walk through what the potential process would look like for updating your plan. Pretty straightforward in terms of ensuring that the plan remains current and reflective of the city council's goals and objectives, and in response to community concerns and interests. Again, as a reminder, the strategic plan is incorporated by policy into your council policies and aims to achieve things above and beyond the City of Albany core services. You'll find we've provided the core services as an attachment to your staff report to help further define exactly what those are. Sometimes those ebb and flow over time as new directives come down from many different levels. And then walking through your strategic plan, the current version is included as attachment one to your staff report, which has been updated since the last time you saw it in terms of any relative accomplishments. So in the 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 final column on the right of the work plan items, if there was anything to add additional detail on, since you last received an update, you will see that noted there. The items in gray are conceptually complete, and so that may be an opportunity to identify new initiatives. Of course, any of the standing initiatives that haven't been completed are also up for discussion or revisement as well. Currently, you have five goals, which then dictate the objectives and the accompanying work plan items. The overall approach over the strategic planning process was to work towards a reasonable number of work plan items, ideally accomplishable in a two-year period, not always the case. And sometimes these reach over many years. And we phase as we go with the higher priorities of the council. Also included in the strategic plan are the carryover of your city mission and vision statements. These are longstanding statements as developed by city councils over the years, and certainly something to review and ensure it's fresh and current again. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and really just want to give you back the time to go ahead and dive in.
So first I'll ask, does anyone have any questions for the city manager before we start? All right, we'll go ahead and start with the city mission statement and vision statement. Go ahead, Councilmember McQuaid.
I'll start out by unmuting myself. I have some process questions. Are so regarding the vision and mission statement, is it the goal that we complete those tonight? Or is it that we throw out some ideas?
Is this to throw out some ideas? My recommend, I'll go ahead and recommend that there be a subcommittee and two councilmembers work together on the mission statement and vision statement, and then bring it back based on some of the the information we gathered from this meeting this evening. So that's all for that.
Could be my suggestion too, so we're on the same page on that.
Okay, did anyone want to start? Have any suggestions that we can write down? And then we'll we'll move forward. I didn't see, I'm sorry, Councilmember Nathan, because I'm used to your hand being up. This little hand pops up, I'm like, what is that? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, with regard to the mission statement, I'd like to make a pitch I've made before. I think that small town ambiance is maybe not really reflective of what we might be trying to accomplish in some areas. I'm thinking in particular of San Pablo Avenue. If we're going to have a more more density and bus rapid transit and that that kind of development. That small town ambiance, you know, it sounds a little like what, you know, people talk about community character, that that everything has to keep very be very limited in its in its scale and aspect. And I wish we could just find a little different way to to express how we want our community to to evolve. Thanks.
Do you have any suggestions or kind of other words that you want to throw out that the subcommittee could possibly, you know, put together and formulate a different sentence?
Um. Let me let me try drafting something and sending.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would probably want to emphasize walkability and a sense of a sense of community. I don't know that certain things, but I'd like to get away from ambiance. If others are, you know, I I'm not saying this has to happen. It didn't happen last time. But if others agree with that, I'd like to try to find another way to capture it.
Okay, Vice Mayor Jordan, go ahead, your hands up, and then Councilmember McQuaid.
Yeah.
The statement, is that where you're on?
Yeah, I think I chiming into it to agree with Councilmember Nathan and perhaps, I mean, a jurisdiction of 20,000 people is not really a town, a small town. It's a small city. For marketing purposes, maybe there's some advantage to sort of keeping this this small town in there. But I'm really struck by Albany actually being a city at this point in terms of, you know, it's not possible for any of us to know everybody in the city, for instance. Whereas from people who have actually lived in small towns that I've spoken to, the plus and the minus is everybody knows everybody knows everybody's business, which is both an attraction and repellent depending upon one's personal preferences. And I would say that's not the case with Albany, given its size. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember McQuaid.
Thank you. I'm just a little comp again, I think later in in the regular meeting. But I I think weaving in or emphasizing our racial equity statement as part of, and I don't want to separate mission from vision at this point, but I think weaving it into both of them is is critically important at this point. And I don't particularly have language at this moment to do that, but I just think it's it's something that we want to emphasize, and this is a good place to do it.
Okay, Councilmember Tiedemann.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in and say it seems like it's good we're all in agreement because the small town ambiance thing jumps out at me as one thing that I think could change. I wanted to agree with Councilmember McQuaid on, you know, we should emphasize that message in here somewhere. And so that was a lot of what I was planning to say, but I think that forming a subcommittee and drafting this is the right way to do it, and I would be happy to work on that.
Okay, and I would too. So at least me too, if we agree that Councilmember Tiedemann and I will work on this together, if you're in agreement with that. But if there's more words to capture, let's get as much as we can down so we can kind of go back and forth and figure out what the best way to capture the city's mission statement and vision statement. Vice Mayor Jordan, then Councilmember McQuaid, go ahead, Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yes, I support that ad hoc committee. Thank you for volunteering. And another word that jumped out to me is responding to the needs of a diverse community. There's something that strikes me as patriarchal about that. You know, the diversity, the diversity is out there and, you know, the people in the center who are not the diverse people are responsible for responding to and making sure that diverse part of the community is well-served. So I don't, I don't know, I don't find that language very inclusive, so.
So funding to the needs of the diverse community, that's what you're referring to?
Well, it's the responding.
Respond, okay.
Yeah, you know, this is very, very right brain, so I can't entirely put my put myself on it the way my left hemisphere usually does, but there's something about that that bothers me.
Okay, Councilmember McQuaid, go ahead, thank you, Vice Mayor Jordan.
I just wanted to say that I also had an interest in the subcommittee, and I don't know if the other two councilmembers do, but it might be appropriate to open it up to nominations or have a selection rather than this first two people that spoke be the ones chosen.
Well, and we can definitely, if you want to, where it's fair, we can do two on the mission statement, two on the vision statement and come together. That's another option we can do. That way, we get ideas from different perspectives. We can do it like that. If if another council member, I'm assuming Councilmember McQuaid, you would like to be on one of those statements with another council member, would that work?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so so how about this? If Councilmember Tiedemann is in agreement that we work on the mission statement and then the vision statement, Councilmember McQuaid and no?
I'm sorry, my plate is really full.
No, they don't want to. McQuaid, I can work on the vision statement with you. Would that work?
That's fine.
Okay.
I I'm declining because as Councilmember Tiedemann knows, you're the last person I want writing something like this.
Okay, if that works for you guys, I mean, I'm okay with that. Okay, all right. So are there any more words? Well, now we can move down to the vision, vision statements. Is there anything you want us to consider, take out at at this point?
Just that, you know, walkability, bike bike ability, somehow something about.
Accessibility by bikes or.
Something more specific than sustainable environment. I'm sure that encompasses it, but it does seem like a special virtue of Albany is how easy it is to get around, just.
Okay. Anyone else on the vision statement, Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yeah, I'm still noodling this, so I'm not sure if it belongs in the mission statement or the vision statement, but I think maybe vision might be the right place. But, you know, I always think that one of our goals should always be, you know, how we locate ourselves within the region and within regional issues, because so much of what we discuss is regional problems. So acknowledging that in some way of, you know, we are part of the larger Bay Area, part of the county, part of, you know, several city environment, respond to issues within that.
Okay, Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yeah, that reminds me, given, which would be a little ironic given what I said earlier, but I think when Albany was undergoing a motto update from its prior grand motto of Northern Gateway to Alameda County, I had some others put in the idea of small town and the big city, which is sort of a little bit to that, that idea of what Councilmember Tiedemann just laid out, you know, recognizing that unlike other small cities, you know, people can go right through here without even realizing they're crossing from one city to another city to another city, because we all just blend together from the casual observer's perspective. I think the city has done a lot of work on its open space and emphasizing its open space along with volunteers other than the waterfront. So I would like to see some emphasis on that. There's been a lot of work on the the two creeks that actually form the boundaries of the city, as well as we're going to be talking later about Albany Hill, which is a great asset. So, yeah, so I think we're going to discuss one of the the natural geographic features that the city is trying to emphasize would be best to try to bring them all in in some sense.
Okay. Anyone else? Oh. Look like we have any, you can open up for comments for a minute. If you have suggestions, just one minute for public comment, if there's anyone. Okay, we'll go ahead and move to the next one. So now we're going to review the goals, objective, work plan items to identify, and then we'll update. So we'll start with goal one, and then we'll try to get, hopefully, we can get through all five goals, but we can break it up for another meeting as well too. So we'll start with goal one. Anyone want to jump in? Vice Mayor Jordan, go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, so my suggestions is to keep the language the same. I was going to make suggest the language change on them, goal two, and also suggest moving the housing objective from goal one to goal two and make objective two and goal one adapt to climate change. Because that's that's a major emphasis now that we've adopted the CAPCAP. And we don't have that as an objective in the strategic plan. Understandably, that that plan was adopted, I think, since the strategic plan was adopted and proposing to change the first objective to reduce pollution in and from buildings. So this gets to both the greenhouse pollution from buildings, but also indoor air pollution that is produced by combusting fossil fuels within buildings, which is a an area that there's pretty broad scientific consensus is a problem now. And buildings are actually one of the main sources of other air pollutants from combustion, nitrogen oxides. So sort of gets to gets to all that. And then aligns the objectives, the first three objectives of that goal with the three sort of main pillars that Climate Action Committee has identified, which is buildings, adaptation, and transportation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Jordan. Anyone else? Councilmember McQuaid?
Thank you. When I went through this to review, I just I just want to be sure that I'm doing this the way that we want it done. I made I were comments on all for many of the goals and work plan items. Is that what you want right now to go to?
Just go through one at a time, because that's what I did. When I went through, I was like, oh, I have a question about this or change this. So but Vice Mayor Jordan, we do have noted, it looks like you want to say something, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I was just, so I was just focusing on objectives and goals, and then can do items later. I can do items now. It's up to you in terms of how processes.
So we start with goal one specifically. Is there anything within those four underneath the advanced climate change, promoting housing? Just kind of, let's just go there and then.
Right, so I guess I I got my suggestion for the objectives before objectives and how to, which ones to change and which one to move. I don't know if you want me to discuss specific ideas for items underneath each objective at this point, or just keep the focus on objectives and goals.
Let's do objectives and goals, and then let's hear everyone first, and then we'll come back around. Does that work? Okay, Councilmember McQuaid, go ahead.
So you don't want work plan items specifically discussed at this point? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I don't have anything to say at this moment.
Okay, Councilmember Nathan?
No, I I I I don't have it. I think page five actually looks very good to me. I I support Vice Mayor Jordan's suggestions.
And Councilmember Tiedemann.
I think all my stuff on this is work plan items. So, yeah.
All right, all right, we'll go ahead and move to the work plan items. I don't have any suggestions at this time either. So Councilmember McQuaid, we'll start with you, and then we'll go around.
Okay, thank you. Um, so word originally was advanced climate action.
Okay.
Um, I would move the master plan for urban forest to a work plan item instead of a potential work plan item. And I would eliminate the electrification two-stroke engine prohibition as a feasibility. And again, move it, it seems like it's 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 being implemented, so I would take it out as a potential work plan.
Um, is that is that correct? I thought I thought it was not being implemented.
Well, under status and comments, it says city staff will review the feasibility. So it seems like it's it's out of the potential and it's into the, are we going to be able?
You're saying move it up, not.
Right, move it up, it's not done, it's just, it's no longer a potential, it's a sort of reality. Um, do you want me to continue through housing availability, or do you want me to stop?
Let's just stop right there and then see if anyone else wants to jump in, then we can go to housing. Vice Mayor Jordan, I see you.
Yeah, so the items I had, again, the idea of making objective one focused on buildings, was item one, electric preferred for major remodel, and item two, existing building electrification pilot program. I've been working in discussion with Bayran and the Energy Council staff about the possibility of of some of the one-third of the DD funding that voters recommended going to greenhouse pollution reduction, being used for a pilot program to electrify existing buildings, which obviously is the majority of what's going to have to happen with our buildings if we're going to make our greenhouse pollution reduction goal.
Councilmember Nathan?
No, I'm sorry if I'm confused. I just thought, so that would be a for, we would now have five work plan items and not potential work plan additions. Do I understand that correctly?
Well, let's see, so this this items under objective one? I think we're talking about items, and I don't remember what the other three are. I'm not particularly inclined to the take on as a small city, the small engine prohibition. I don't really, I don't see that it's going to be feasible for us as a city to actually enforce that. I know there are cities with tremendous problems enforcing it. I don't remember the developer in Fortis Master Plan. My suggestion was to put that under objective two, which is adapt to climate change. That's our main adaptation measure of focus to identify with the Climate Action Committee. And then again, as I was saying, to move the move broad housing and availability and quality down to the next goal.
And where would you put urban forest? It would be under work plan, it would be still be under this objective, but it would be.
Well, it would be under a new objective called adapt to climate change. So my proposal is to separate out, rather than just have advanced climate action, to separate out an objective that's focused on buildings and objective that's focused on adaptation. Because those are fairly different in in nature and what's entailed in them.
I don't know, I I at this level, at the level of objectives, I think advancing climate action would apply to both efforts to reduce greenhouse gases and to adapt to the changes that are already inevitable. But you're saying it should be two different objectives.
Yeah, and the reason I think this is because a big part of promote active transportation safety is as a climate action. But we have it at the objective level rather than the advanced climate action level. And obviously, active transportation does other things, as does eliminating the natural gas combustion in buildings, and they have other health benefits, other quality of life benefits. But we have active transportation separated out as its own objective. And so in that sense, it made more sense to me for logically to separate out advanced climate action, since it entails active transportation into the other two parts that have been identified in our cap, which is reducing pollution from buildings and adopting a climate change. So for sort of adequate equivalent levels, logical levels.
Okay.
I mean, if if, you know, the other option would be to make advanced climate action a goal, which would be another option, and then buildings, adaptation, and transportation would be three objectives within that goal.
I'd rather keep them together under goal one.
Yeah, which I which I agree, that's why I was hoping to separate out advanced climate action, those two two objectives to match the third that's already there.
So the two objectives would be.
Reduce pollution in in and from buildings.
Wait, that's the work plan item.
No, that would be an objective, because there's a lot of different things that need to happen under that and adapt to climate change.
Well, what do other folks think? It's really specific to me. I mean, I see, it it seems too specific to be an objective, that the specifics to the housing, I mean, I agree with you, it's important, it should be in there. But I think that the level of specificity should be should be similar. And and I I'd put that under, personally, I'd put it under advanced climate action. But if we're going to split climate action into reduce emissions and adapt to climate change, you know, it would, I guess it would go, what what was your phrase? You're not calling it reduce emissions, what are you calling that first?
Reduce pollution in and from buildings. And so two items under that were adopting electric preferred code for major remodels and setting up an existing building electrification pilot program. And there's other items that could be under there, but but those are the two I think could be a focus over the next two years.
I don't know, I think then we'd need three, because it because we're not only trying to eliminate, reduce emissions from buildings, we're trying to reduce emissions from all kinds of all kinds of things, are we not?
Well, there's basically buildings and transportation and waste for the three main categories. We don't really have emissions associated with water, because our water is primarily gravity-fed by delivery to our area. And our waste treatment plant is operated on methane that's generated from both the sewage and from waste food materials. So that was sorted out in the the prior cap. So the main source of emission we have are buildings and transportation.
So if, for example, that, so we would exclude something like, say, buying electric, all-electric equipment for the city, you know? If we wanted to get mowers and blowers and all these different kinds of things that we we use for maintenance, if we wanted to use those for, we wanted to convert to electric, that wouldn't be something, that wouldn't be, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the subtext of of the approach I took is that going through the prior strategic plan, there are more items in there than, and this is not a criticism of staff, there are more items in there than staff was able to make substantial progress upon. So I just think we have way too many items, and I would say that's that's upon us as a council, that we're not being disciplined in terms of the policy and in terms of expending staff resources for a number of items that staff has capacity to actually work on. And so it's really on us to to calibrate the number of items that we select to what staff can actually do. And in my mind, replacing, you know, a weed whacker motor with an electric weed whacker does not scale in the same way that trying to decarbonize building.
No, I I agree, but I think that that's a work plan question. That's not a question of our objectives. Our objective is to reduce emissions, and that would include pretty nearly anything. I mean, things might come up that we have some unknown opportunity to reduce our emissions, but it doesn't involve buildings. So it doesn't, it doesn't fall into our, it isn't part of one of our objectives. The same would be true with EBC. If if EBC, we might have another round with EBC where, you know, they changed their program, and we have to make a decision about that. To me, all of that. To me, all of that falls, the objective is reducing emissions in order to address climate change, to, to make our contribution, our municipal contribution to the effort to slow climate change.
The EBC would fall under an objective of reduced pollution in and from buildings. I mean, that's essentially what it's about. It's, EBC is mitigating the emissions that come from the operation of our buildings.
Well, it also is, is, isn't it also our, you know, our electric cars are, we're, we're, it's all, everything that we have that is electric, isn't it?
Yeah, so we could change objective three to be promote active and electric transportation. If we want to bring in electric transportation. But again, I, I
I just want to keep the objective. You know, I'm okay with splitting it in two. I'm just not okay with going down to the level of saying it's just about buildings. That, that's my problem. I'd like to keep the objective at the highest possible level. I'm okay with going down one level. I'm not okay with going all the way down to it's just about buildings. But if you feel very strongly about it, I, I, I can, I
I don't, yeah, I don't feel that strongly about it. What I feel strongly about is, is the items. Because that truly matters.
That's what really matters.
And then we have something like half as many items as we have in last strategic plan because that's what it appears from looking at this last strategic plan and the previous ones is the actual capacity. So if we're going to do our job and provide a policy direction that, that is definitive and not leave the decisions to staff on which things to focus on and which things to drop over those two years, then, then we need to reduce the number of items that we have on the strategic plan.
I completely agree with that. Now, what about other people? What do people feel about the objective?
Let me have Councilmember McQuaid and then I'll jump in. Go ahead, Councilmember McQuaid on this.
Thank you. I was wondering if, if it would work to have the work plan item implement the CAAP with an emphasis on reduction of building emissions or decarbonizing buildings or, or pressing, you could certainly fill in the blanks there, but would that work to kind of? Because what we really, what we do want to do is to, is to implement the cap. And it sounds like there's a real need to sort of focus on the big picture that's in there. And that might be a way to do that by addressing emphasis on that piece. Would, would that work for you?
Well, I'm just letting you know, following the climate action, any of the three things that they've, the three themes they've chosen to focus on are reduce building emissions, adapt to climate change, and reduce transportation emissions. So those are not specific enough to my mind to be work plan items because they're fairly broad. Again, you could, you could change one of the goals to implement the cap or reduce greenhouse pollution and adopt climate change. But those, to me, those are intermediary between the top level and the bottom level.
Councilmember Tiedemann, do you want to jump in?
I don't have a ton of strong feelings about how to organize this. You know, I think Vice Mayor Jordan's ideas about, and the, the, that he's communicating from the Climate Action Committee makes some sense of what to focus on of, you know, building electrification is important. Though, to be completely honest, my main focus here is not on, always on what we can do to promote building electrification, but on the EBC side of this and what I can do to try and have them have, you know, better energy mixes. So I'm generally okay with whatever organization we go with here. As long as it sort of includes those main points that we've, I think, generally all agree on.
Is there, I mean, could we put it, I think, with Councilmember McQuaid alluded to this, kind of like a subcategory? I mean, the, the, the content you bring up is important, as we all agree, but it's just a matter of where do we place that? I, I can't imagine putting another objective. Or do we replace it with something else?
Well, my thought was to, as I said, it can burn effect number two, to the climate change adaptation. And then to move the housing down to the next goal. But we still have four objectives. All right, I can show my screen if that would help. I don't know.
Please, let me see what, I'm just like, okay, maybe.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I appreciate that because I don't, I think visually myself, so. So this is what it would, this is what it would look like.
Preston, what happened to the housing? I'm sorry. I don't know where it went.
Yeah, that's fine. It's, uh, it's down here now under object, under goal two. They're down here. Because it's not really about healthy and sustainable. I, I see the housing is more related to to this, which is a language change. So I'm suggesting from engaged diverse community to maintain an least diverse community, community diversity.
If you, if you all are in agreement with that, I would agree that housing would need to go under goal two versus where it's at now, but. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think it could be in either place. It, it really serves both objectives so strongly. But I'm, I'm, I remain concerned about dropping pollution from sources other than buildings. But if it, you know, if that's what people want to do, I'm okay with it.
Well, this could be, how about we change this to reduce pollution from transportation and other sources.
Did that work for you, Councilmember Nathan? We changed the wording and put action items under that objective?
I, I don't agree with it. I think it's getting down to the, down to the work plan level. I'd rather that we had our objectives be the kind of things that we say, yes, that is what we are, are trying to achieve in the, in the big picture, not the, the little picture. But I, I, it, it's fine.
Councilmember McQuaid or Tiedemann, any thoughts on the wording or?
I tend to agree with Councilmember Nathan that
Okay.
the objective should be broad and the items are the, sort of the meat of the, the plan. And as, you know, as far as the housing, I think it could go in either one. But I think the housing does fit well in the, in the healthy and sustainable urban villages. It's kind of what it's all about.
Yeah, and we, we want housing even for people who are a lot like the people who are here now. We want housing for everybody. You know, I, I, we can discuss that philosophically, but increasing diversity is great, but the, the, but housing is, is for everybody.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Nathan. Anything else, Vice Mayor Jordan? We're ready to move on. Unless you have another suggestion.
No, I think that, that was it. Under, well, under public health and safety, I put the mandatory size of retrofit item, which is leftover from the last one. And not much work has been done on yet. Added in monitor and develop provision for mental health services, since that's pretty unsettled currently.
Oh, hold on. Juan, are you on support, public health and safety? Is that where you're at? Okay, so hold on. Go back up.
Okay.
Availability and quality. Any, any changes to that work plan? Sorry, Councilmember McQuaid, any items?
Right.
We're, we're going to the work plan items now. Did we, did we reach, did we reach closure on the objectives for fostering a healthy, sustainable, pardon?
Let's go back. We started with goals and went with objectives. Does anyone have anything on objectives they want to discuss before we move on to the work plan?
What did we end up with on objective one?
So I'll suggest that if we keep, if we keep this advanced climate action, we go, then this could go away. Like that, plus whatever else.
I think we had a consensus on housing being, staying in this, the same space. So move it back up.
So like implementing the, the, the very first work plan item, so we've got objective one. We're going to advance climate action.
Yeah.
And will that include, and I guess this is, would be a question for Vice Mayor Jordan, would that include adaptation? Would, being, adapting to climate change be part of advancing climate action? Which I think it was intended to be previously, but I'm, I'm asking your thoughts.
Yeah, I guess we could add, I mean, if we want to be parallel with the, the title of the plan.
That looks good to me. Yeah.
Are we all in agreement? I can't see everyone, so just say yes or?
I think we're good with objective one. We have an objective.
Are we all in agreement? Okay. All right.
So what are the, are those the three now work plan items under objective one that we see on our screen?
I mean, that, that's what I suggested, but that's, I don't, I don't mean to be controlling the narrative by showing this, so there's other things people want in there.
I would like to continue, I would like to continue to have an item that seeks to advance the phase out of two-stroke engines. That means gas, the gas-powered leaf blowers, mowers, anything else that utilizes a two-stroke engine. And I do understand that it may be infeasible to have an ordinance because we don't have we don't have a code enforcement for anything but the most extreme cases of abandonment and neglect of buildings. Correct? Is, Nicole, am I? Can you correct me if I'm misunderstanding what we've been hearing from staff on this?
Yeah, you know, this has been in the works for ages, I, I do have to say. So I think that we can certainly follow up with a discussion item at the council level. It would probably be complaint-driven enforcement, but we do need to work through the who involved in that in terms of code enforcement or other staff. So that would be part of the conversation.
Okay, let's, let's, are people okay with keeping that in? And I completely respect and agree with you, Vice Mayor Jordan, that we need to we need to be careful about selecting the right, you know, be, be exercise discipline, as you say. But these are, these engines are a horror from many different angles. And I'd like to keep, keep pressing forward with getting rid of them.
Yeah, I think for my part, if this was in here, what I would do is seek to, to use the network to try to get the state to adopt a ban. Because for us to do it as a little city, you know, which we, we had on our agenda and we sent a letter about. But I think that's probably the more feasible way of getting this done. But if we have it in here, then we'll work on it. So, yes.
We could even phase out using them ourselves. You know, the, the city uses these things. We should be trying to get to the next, the next stage, at least as a municipality.
Right, anyone else on objective one?
All right. I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, now we see. Do we want to have, and maybe it's clear to everybody and it's fine. Do we want something in there about implementing the climate action plan that, that we have, climate action and adaptation? Or is that just sort of a given that we don't need to think about it?
Yeah, my perspective is that that plan has, again, we wouldn't be exercising discipline if we did that because that plan has 100 things in it. So we wouldn't be providing staff direction. Okay, which of those set of things do we think have the biggest bang for staff's
Okay.
capacity?
And keeping it up to date and all that is part of our core, becomes a core function.
Okay.
Okay, I move on to objective two. You want to start, Councilmember McQuaid, because I can see you. Can't see anyone else. I apologize.
Sure. So leaving it for this moment, promote housing availability and quality. First thing that I had was evaluate zoning policies. I don't think we, in this plan, need to be too specific in what we're thinking about. The next one, evaluate measure K zoning on Albany Hill. Perhaps including that in the upcoming housing element. Create a halftime code enforcement position to deal with blight property issues. I would cross-reference that to maintain an attractive atmosphere in the business district. Implement a vacancy maintenance plan, both commercial and residential, holding property owners accountable. If, if property is vacant for a long period of time, they need to say what they're doing about having some tenant, what's, what's their long-term goal? And this again would cross-reference to maintaining an attractive business district.
I'm a little hesitant about adding a position in the strategic plan. It seems to me that's really more of a budget issue. We, we didn't budget for it, did we? You don't recall?
Pick that up, but we can, you're right. But I, I do agree with Councilmember McQuaid regarding the vacancies, like we have to, I think, have some type of enforcement or at least have that conversation on what that would look like. So I think that needs to be there.
And I, I think, Rochelle, I, I agree with what you're saying, but I think if we start looking at things like vacancy management and two-stroke engines and all of those things, without somebody to actually do the work, there's a reason to, to put in policy. You know, if we, if we know we can't enforce something, that, I've always been a strong believer that if you can't enforce it, don't do it because it just creates a problem. Perhaps putting a position in the strategic plan would sort of force us to look at the budget and perhaps adjust the budget to accommodate that.
Well, you know, in theory, you can enforce through the police department code, code violations. A code enforcement is a, is a less expensive way to address that. And, you know, maybe that's something that, that goes under the policing issue as we're talking about. You know, are there things the police do that they shouldn't do? But we should be, I think that I, I would be inclined to leave it at a more general level about blight, both commercial and residential. You know, we've got blight on San Pablo Avenue, these huge graffiti issues, really, really awful ones. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that code enforcement, though, I, to me, that I'm not sure that that goes to, oh, I guess, housing quality.
If I may, I If I may, Mayor, I know you can't see me, so I'm just going to jump in. In terms of the how of implementation and how we would staff, I think that would probably work better at the city manager level once we have the policy direction on the initiatives that you would like to see move forward. Because I think there's a variety of staffing models.
And I would agree. I think we should take that off and stick strategically with the plan. And then as items come, like the city manager said, she'll be able to provide us with the necessary information needed for us to consider having a position at that point.
How about if we have an item that says simply increase address, address blight? Or or develop a plan for reducing blight? And just leave it as blight. We don't have to talk because we also have, you know, there's multifamily, I'm sorry, mixed use that, that could be blighted. So just leave it as reduced blight. Does that work for others?
I'm worried that's not thick enough.
That it's not what?
It's not specific enough, but maybe it is, I don't, I don't know. I mean, code enforcement, vacancy management are two quite different things. And I would say that with, there's, with the number of objectives that exist in the plan. And I know we haven't gotten to whether we're going to keep the other ones. If we have four items under each objective, then we're not going to be being disciplined.
Well, we'd have three if we had develop a plan to reduce blight. Doesn't vacancy management, I mean, what we're talking about here, that the concern is essentially blighted vacant property. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Tiedemann.
You're breaking me up a little bit for me, Mayor, or maybe that's on my end, I'm not sure.
Yeah, you're breaking up for me.
Well, we'll see if it fixes itself. I've got some additional work plan items for that one, if, if now would be the time. So I, I would generally agree with the evaluate zoning policies. Though I would say we could maybe add something slightly more specific of, you know, why we're evaluating them to try and make it more possible to develop housing of various types. And possibly include that that would mean looking at measure D, I think Vice Mayor Jordan had that in his original spreadsheet, which is very helpful, by the way. And then another work plan item that I wanted to see on here of, you know, previously, we've got the development of affordable housing project, which is great. And that, I'm not sure if that needs to stay on now that it's fully, you know, in the process. You know, it's not done, but it may not need to stand, I'm not sure. But to identify additional funding sources for affordable housing, which to me would say identify or possibly pass a bond measure to increase affordable housing stock. And then another thing that occurred would be creating a local density bonus program to further create housing. Also, just to mention, on one point, Vice Mayor Jordan said, you know, if we have four items for everything, we're not going to be disciplined. I think that is a good point, though I also, my first thought looking at our strategic plan is goal one has climate change, housing, transportation, and public safety in it, which together are generate the vast majority of discussion on things we have on this council. So I think we may have goal one be a little bit overloaded and the others a little bit underloaded. So I'm less worried if we have more discussion here than in other places.
Councilmember Tiedemann, I agree with you about the priority of these things, but I see those as very much part of implementing our housing element. And I don't really think that implementing the climate, the, the housing element belongs in the strategic plan any more than it belongs than the implementing the climate action plan does. Once something is an adopted plan and the housing element is something we've adopted and we have, we're required to continue updating it to state requirements, but that is very, to me at least, that seems very much a core, one of our, our core missions. And I'm not sure that that I would put those here for, and the density bonus stuff is, you know, that goes, that comes, I think that's part of the work plan for the planning and zoning.
Yeah, I, I take that point. I think the density bonus, I think, may be a little bit too specific, so I'm fine with striking that. I think identifying more funds for housing, I, I like to have in here because it's something that we, I think, belongs in a strategic plan because we don't need to do it, right? We, there's, there's nothing forcing us to do it and it not necessarily a part of our housing plan and may involve doing something like putting something on the ballot, which is why I mentioned a bond. So, you know, it interlocks with a lot of the housing element, but I think goes above and beyond that and is on that sort of large strategic level.
Okay. All right. And anything else on objective two? So we can do the next one.
I would say I agree with that because the housing element doesn't require us to fund affordable housing.
So, yeah, and it is specific direction to the staff to do something, I agree.
Okay. I think Councilmember McQuaid, did you want to jump in before we move to the next objective?
I was just going to say, if we're trying to sort of condense how many items we have, we could combine evaluating zoning policies, including, and add including measure K. So they're not two separate items, they're rather one item.
Makes sense.
Makes sense. All right. All right, we'll go ahead and move to objective three.
So this is what, what I had was update active transportation plan, which has been in orbit for quite a long time now. We're five years behind on that. Complete street lighting plan, so it's sort of pulling apart. We had, we had one strategic plan item that had pavement condition, street lighting, and safe crossings all in one previously, which is way too much to have as one action item. Sort of seizing those apart. And I have certainly heard, when I was campaigning over and over again, and I've heard it in this, this body, comments about our street lighting really being problematic. So I wanted to high-grade that one to its own, its own item. And then I think this, yeah, I mean, because we haven't updated our active transportation plan, there are opportunities such as the Jackson, the development along Jackson to develop more motoris separated facilities that are necessarily specifically called out in our, in our active transportation plan, although it is identified as a route. So I don't want to wait, given that we're five years behind, to grab these opportunities to create more motor separated cycling facilities if the opportunity to do so arises. I'm not sure how to handle that, but I can say that, that our, our cap sets as a goal, reducing vehicle miles traveled. And the only way that we can do that, or we have control over that, is by providing facilities for people to get around by other modes. And worldwide experience shows the way to do that is to not ask people to bike with motorists right next to them.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Jordan. Anyone else?
I'm okay with pulling that out. I mean, it, logically, it does go under the active transportation plan. But I agree, if it's been long delayed and there are other opportunities presented, that making that a priority makes, makes sense. The other, the street lighting, I want to keep that, I, I don't want to lose the the crossings, the intersections and crossings language. Because that's, we, we need street lighting, you know, just for people getting down the street. But we especially and above all, just desperately need lighting at, at crossings. And there are some crossings that we may want to actually do things like, you know, the, the crossing at Marin School in additional locations. So I'd just like to say, include crossings.
Improve street lighting.
Pardon?
I mean, I could change this to improve street lighting, particularly at crossings. I don't know if that captures it or not. Obviously, the first step is a plan and, and the city's had a putting out, or well, I think it put out, actually, city manager, you might be able to weigh in on this. I have some recollection, the transportation commission developed RFP or waited on RFP for a lighting consultant, but that was, I think, a couple of years ago. So I don't know what, if anything, is happening with that.
That's part of the CIP, isn't it?
It is, it is. The first step is analysis of current lighting and, and issues thereof. This one needs additional attention. We've had a transition in the CIP manager position. And so unfortunately, this project needs to be prioritized as we continue to implement the CIP once we're back fully staffed.
Yes, I think that's why I kept it at plan, develop a plan. Because once we develop a plan, I'm, I suspect we're going to need funding to implement it. So I don't really want to, I, I think we set ourselves up for failure if we set the work item at this point as improved street lighting. Because I don't think we'll get there. I, I think we have some steps to undertake before we actually have improved street lighting on the ground.
You know, here's what the old language said, and I'll leave out street paving quality because I know that that, that does seem like a different issue. But we said, develop a timeline and funding plan to support scheduling CIP projects to achieve street safety-related infrastructure goals, including appropriate night lighting of street sidewalks and parks and safety features at intersections and other crossings of roadways. I agree, it's a lot of words, but it's, it's very specific about what we want to accomplish. And I, I'm, I would be inclined just to keep it and just get rid of the street paving quality piece.
Yes, I agree, but it's, it's so much that again, I don't think it's within, I don't think it's within capacity to do all of that in two years. But I think we need to pick, we need to, again, be disciplined and pick, okay, which, which part of that do we think is the most important to get done?
It's developing a timeline and a funding plan. I don't think that's too much in two years, actually.
You're right.
Okay. So grab that.
Can I jump in?
Yep.
You know, I have a little bit of concern over, over maximize, maximize motoris separated cycling facilities. I don't want that to be at the detriment of pedestrian crossings. And I, I'm seeing that a little bit on Marin. So I just, well, I think we, what you want to have those is in the places that are appropriate and as best we can, we don't want to prioritize them over pedestrian safety.
So maybe put it with the active transportation plan so that in that context, we're looking at all of the different active transportation modes and not just the, the bike, the, the cycling.
Right.
How about update active transportation plan including motoris separated cycling facilities?
Well, I
With an emphasis on, or, you know, something like that, with a priority on.
My concern then is we'll miss opportunities if we wait for the plan to be updated because when I'm waiting for four years for the plan to be updated and there's, there's no no prospect of it happening that I know of, even now, because we don't have funding for it. I mean, the city's been trying to get grants to fund it, which is how it was funded previously. I'm a little surprised that we haven't been able to get a grant because usually that's agencies' jump on funding updates of these plans because that's the first step. So I don't know why it hasn't been funded, but it hasn't been funded and we haven't done it, we don't have any plan to do it.
The transportation commission had us listed as, just looked at that and had us listed as being in compliance because it was not necessary. Well, well, let's take a look at that.
Okay, my understanding is they're supposed to be updated every five years. But in any case, it's been ten and whether it's, whether it's required by policy preference, that's certainly not a law or not, the field has changed in how, you know, how you support.
No, no, I, I agree. I'm just saying that's why we might not have gotten a grant to do it is because the, from the transportation commission's perspective, we're not, it's not a priority to get.
Oh, I see from the Alameda County grant, I, I thought they were the ones that had the five-year policy.
They do, but, well, I'll pull it up and I'll send it to, I'll post it later, but it's.
Let's finish objective three, so we can move on and you guys can bring it. So.
If I could reference, I, I think I know what Councilmember McQuaid is referencing with regard to, to what's going on in the transportation commission in Marin, and I agree. The reason I hadn't put pedestrian crossings here, but I, but I think your point is, is good. So definitely need to recalibrate is because upgrading of pedestrian crossings has been incorporated into a lot of street paving. So there's kind of a, and we have the complete streets plans dotted, which are in the CIP. So there, there's a lot of work in process and that is required as part of what's called routine accommodation. But yeah, it hadn't occurred to me, that example where there's a, there's, there's battling fought over the trade-off between those two that I'm not too really comfortable with either. So yeah, I don't know, I don't know how best to frame this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Jordan. Do you want to? I, I like the idea, yeah, you move, okay, so you did it.
I did it.
And put it, I was like, you did it, I was getting ready to say what you did it, okay. Sounds good. Put it down there, that sounds like a plan. All right, and the last objective.
Wait, what did we do with it?
We put it with your recommendation, right? You're moving it to the update.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just deleted it because an update to that transportation plan is going to maximize motoris separated facility planning because that is where the whole field is at. I mean, I have no doubt that if we actually get the money and we do it, that's going to happen. My concern is that we're behind the curve. But I do think that, that as Councilmember McQuaid pointed out, highlighting those facilities puts them potentially in tension with pedestrian safety, and that was not my intent. But I think it's better just to handle it this way, and if opportunities arise, we'll grab them. We don't have to have it in the strategic plan.
All right, objective number four, support public health and safety. Any changes?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Okay.
I'm updating the language to reflect a regional body rather than a subcommittee for regarding alts debates. I'm not even sure where that is on here now, sorry.
Yeah, so I I mean, I'm, I'm hearing is really this, this support for making this last item wording dependent, not potential, but actual.
Preston, I think that's possibly a good idea. I don't think it's very practical. Preston, I think that's possibly a good idea. I don't think it's very practical, as I don't think that's the problem.
Okay.
It, it won't, yeah, it, it's.
I mean, it's, it's the problem, but it's not the problem they're trying, that Senator wants to address.
Yeah, I, you know, honestly, we, and Councilmember McQuaid and I have been going to these meetings for years. I, I'm not even sure it belongs in this strategic plan, because we just, we don't have enough influence over it. We're just too small, a piece of the puzzle to, so I would just stray a little bit personally.
It's a horrifying problem, though. I tried to educate myself, been on it today, and the more I learn, the more horrified I am for us.
Yep.
Right, and I wouldn't necessarily take it out. I, I agree with Councilmember Nation, we have spent countless hours sitting around the table. But I do think there's a role for us in trying to look at this more regionally. You know, I could share my philosophy on this for hours, and you don't need to hear it right now, but I, I would, I would like to leave it in there in some form. I think having regional medical care is important and should be one of our goals and objectives. Exactly how we get there is another issue.
But will we accomplish that in two years? I mean, I think, you know, having it there and actually not really accomplishing it within the time span. I mean, we just want to make sure, like I think Vice Mayor Jordan said, we just want to make sure that we're not adding on, just get the things that need to happen now, and then we can look at it later if it comes up or an opportunity comes up to add it on there. That's just my take on it. I just think we shouldn't have anything on it that if it's not going to happen within the next year or two.
Yeah, my, my suggestion, since this is a regional issue and there's regional body, and we have an appointee, my knowledge, that regional body, courtesy of Councilmember McQuaid, thank you, is that that is really our mechanism for working on this. Rather than having a no strategic plan, it's just like various, so as we're pointing at the various regional bodies, we don't have our goals for each of those regional bodies elucidated in our strategic plan, our strategic plan's really about what, you know, what extra can we accomplish within our city with the resources that we have. So I'm certainly in support of the council continuing to work on it by having an appointee to the regional body. Other than that, I don't really know what we can do.
Right. Are we in agreement to remove it, and we can revisit at a later date?
What about, here's sort of a compromise, how about continue to advocate for hospital, continue to advocate for adequate health, adequate hospital facilities for the region?
The hospital is really about emergency, emergency department, right? I mean, it's not about hospital services, because it's really about the emergency.
Part, it is broader. It is, the emergency department is the most urgent, you know, in having a cath lab that you can bring people who have heart attacks is the, 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 the most pressing issue, but there is also the fact, and it, it becomes an equity issue with lower-income people, too, the hardship on people to travel, you know, to Pill Hill, if you've got a loved one in the hospital and you live in Richmond, getting to Pill Hill is, is a major schlep, and it can affect your people's recovery, whether their loved ones are able to be with them. So, you know, I, I think it is broader than just the emergency issue.
It's, what's the phrase? We use a full-service acute care hospital.
Yeah.
You know, it will also impact our ability to provide care, you know, if our ambulance is gone for several hours, that's going to impact a lot of things in the city, so.
True.
And I like the continued advocate, I think that's a good phrase. I'm not sure adequate geographic distribution, I'm not quite sure what that means.
Well, to me, that means that there's no full-service hospital north of, once Altabates closes, north of Kaiser Oakland. So to me, it's, it's, you know, it's an issue of having hospitals that are, as Councilmember Nation was saying, that are within a reasonable geographic reach.
Right, so I mean, I guess, I would have said something maybe simpler of.
Sure.
Sort of a regional, you know, whatever, I don't want to take time, we're spitting that much.
Sure. That's why you don't want me on one of these subgroups to write the vision or the mission, because I'm terrible at this stuff, so I don't know how I got in this position.
That's fine, well, because you pulled it out, so you're pointing it in. All right, so let's go ahead and move along to goal number two, and that is engage on diverse communities, start with number one. I'm sorry.
I want some more to add to.
Okay.
Increase public health safety. I also wanted to note that we're at six forty-five, and I think we should probably get public comments, so it makes sense to discuss this, and then probably save goal two, three, four, five for another session. Anyhow. So just to add to public health and safety discussion, I'd say the goal, as written down, a monitoring and development provision of mental health services, I think is good. I would add to it just mental health services and homeless services. As I'd say that, I classify this as a public health and safety issue, because oftentimes, people who end up dealing with homelessness issues are public safety, just like the police, and because homelessness is often a public health issue for the people involved. So I would just add that, that's my main contribution there.
Should we specify addiction services, you know, the, what's going on in San Francisco is kind of mind-blowing. I don't know how much of it we have here, but to be sure that we're, we're driving towards, if we don't already have it, sort of a rehab-on-demand model, so that anybody who wants addiction services has the ability to, to get it and get it quick.
I like that, I, I, I had an alternate, you know, idea for what we could have here, which is, instead of specifying all this, essentially just saying, you know, explore and develop provision of alternate, you know, public safety services that include mental health, addiction services, homelessness services, that would be specifying its alternative to police involvement, which is most of what we have now.
Well, I think that comes up in the policing committee, and I'd rather not say now, you know, we want, that that's where we want it to come from. We do, we want it, and it's a future question for discussion, where we want it to come from, and that's something we want the, the task force on policing to, to give us some ideas on, I think. Does that make sense to others?
Makes sense to me.
I would agree, Councilmember Nation. All right, go ahead.
As we're, as we're looking at these things, I'm, I'm a little bit confused, I'm sorry. President's doing a yeoman's job here, sort of updating us as we go, but I'm curious about items that are on the work plan that we haven't mentioned. Do they just remain on?
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, so that's a good point, I, I, yeah, that was my, my list, fair enough. So this is, this is the, what was on the work plan, this is what I was proposing coming into the meeting. Social host laws, you know, it hasn't happened in the last few years, I don't see it again, if we're disciplined, I don't see it rising to the level of importance of these other items that we have. Radio status of current cannabis ordinance, I mean, that's, I don't know, I have that coming up later, but it seems like not much is happening there. So I was proposing those for deletion, this is done, so that's deleted, this one I proposed keeping, simplifying.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Jordan, the, the social host thing was inserted two years ago at the specific request of the police department, as I recall. They, they wanted us to do this, but maybe they don't care anymore, that things may have changed.
Yeah, I, I searched on this a little bit on the web, and, and, I mean, people who serve alcohol to minors, and maybe this was far broader than that, but at least people who serve alcohol to minors are legally responsible. You know, if they serve alcohol to minors in their home, they're legally responsible for what happens, they can be sued. So I wasn't really sure, it seems, sort of seemed like, in a broad sense, this was already handled by state law, but police department.
Let's ask the city manager to check with the police department, whether this is something they still want. If it is, let's just get it, get it done, and I, I'm not sure it belongs as a strategic plan of the city council. It's just, you know, one of those kind of ordinance update things that we do when they're needed by, by staff requirements. But I'm good with leaving it out, but I'm, as long as somebody's going to talk to the police department about it.
I'm, let me jump in for a minute, I think actually it was my item, rather than coming directly from the police department, although I probably talked to them about it. There, there was an issue, and it became at least a bit of a discussion point. And I think it was partly just to emphasize that, you, President is correct, if, if minors are drinking within your home, you are responsible. And there are other cities that have kind of codified and clarified that, and that was kind of my thinking. I'd be willing to do a little sort of outside-the-box research on this and, and come back to you at some point with, with more information.
Okay, with that said, I don't support having it in the strategic plan.
Same here.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to take it out of the strategic plan, it might just be good information for us to have.
Okay.
Great, yep. And then I, and then this has been kept. This is about, you know, regional, appropriate regional hospital services, the language is now simplified, which I think it could stand simplifying to make, make the document more readable on a scan by everybody, so, but that's basically this item. And then new item, we talked about this item, and this was another item I had on my list, so we haven't talked about that one. And I know in the, the certain community, they're discussing, essentially constructing on a voluntary base, but they might need, may or may not need some nominal, you know, very nominal, like thousands of dollars financial support for components to actually build radio systems that can communicate outside of any other system going down after earthquake.
Guys, we're less than 10 minutes away from our meeting start time. I don't know if we have any public comment, and.
We do, we do have a.
We need a break.
Bring the public comment, and I did inquire with the city manager, I think this needs to be like a standalone meeting, where we have the time to really dive in, we're time-crunched right now, and we're just, we're just on number one, we have other items to look at. So I'll go ahead and allow the public comments to come in, we'll listen to those, we'll take a five-minute break, I need five minutes, we'll come back and we'll start the meeting.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead and let him in, Anne, please, thank you.
Hi, I don't know if I'm unmuted, but I've.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is Brian Martin, and I had my hand up since objective two, so let's see. So one thing is.
I'm sorry, if I could just jump in, I would suggest that we give the member attendees who want to speak more than a minute at this point.
So go ahead and give them two and a half minutes, Anne, please.
Okay, thank you. For, for objective two, I was glad to hear about blight being addressed for businesses and mixed use. Then for public land, or for the greenway, that's also a place where sometimes we see blight, and so I don't know if that's public, people's fences, so that's something also, too, and other public buildings and things, so that's something to make sure that that's also covered, if it's not. And then housing, well, we see during discussions of the San Pablo Avenue specific plan, planning is only commissioners, discussed encouraging a story developments on Long San Pablo Avenue with no onsite parking, so I think the city really needs to plan for that kind of thing, if that's what actually ends up happening, we're starting to see large developments proposed on San Pablo Avenue using the state's density bonus law at the bowling alley with over 200 units, and that alone is expected to lead to hundreds of cars in the neighborhood. So I think on the work plan, it says, there was a, a, what's it called, the parking permits were investigated. So the, the bowling alley, for example, is offering parking spaces that are fewer than one per unit, and the cost, I would think, more than $1,000 per year, so, but the neighboring community is free, so the city needs to somehow figure out how to address that, maybe it's a parking permit system, maybe it's something else, but to actually do something to look at the parking permit system that was established in the previous work plan, and with a lens of looking at actual developments that are before us like this, and maybe it's parking permit, maybe it's something else that will help with that kind of thing. For housing in general, I agree that measure K should be revisited. I think measure D should also be looked at again, I know the city looked at, did something with, with that for parking, I believe, but R1 zoning should be reevaluated as well, and I think also the, the, the city should look at, I know the city hall area was all done, retrofitted a few years ago, and I think it should be looked at to investigate a building, multi-story, mixed-use, public facilities on the ground level, and then housing above it, and that's well buffered from neighboring houses, so I think that should be included in a housing section somewhere. I think that should be at least, the beginning step should be started on that. I think staff, not only with for blight, but should also track vacancies on San Pablo Avenue and Solano, and approach owners regarding development potential, I think that would help the city meet its goals. And finally, would support cooling centers and indoor spaces for objective four, and with filtered air during wildfire season, so I don't know how that, where that fits in objective four, and then also electric charging infrastructure, I'm not sure where that would go, but I haven't heard that mentioned, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, go ahead, Nick.
Okay, I think you can hear me now, so I don't think there's any legal requirement that you stop the meeting exactly at seven and start the other meeting exactly at seven. That said, I'm sure, as, as you pointed out, you need more time for this discussion. The, I want to speak strongly against not implementing any ordinances or putting anything on the books that you feel you quote-unquote can't enforce. The, our rulebook, our ordinances are, we're full of, you know, the town is full of ordinances that, I think if you look through, you might claim that we can't enforce them. I don't think that's a reason not to put something on the books. If you put something on the books, number one, you're making a statement, number two, it, you will get some compliance, even if you get some non-compliance, you will get some compliance. And number three, I do believe our police department can enforce any and all ordinances, so I want to push back on, on that notion as it applies to some of the work items. I want to support the urban forest work item, making sure that we get that done, and a ban on two-stroke engines, as well as banning all leaf blowers, even if they're electric, because the, the particulates that they push into the air are not healthy either. I want to support electrification, and I think you should have work items on abandoning gas in new buildings, as well as major retrofits. I want to support a work item for an affordable housing bond, as many of your neighboring cities have done. I want to support specific work plan items for putting a reform of measure K and measure D on the ballot in 2022. The city council has to do this, you can only do this once every two years, and this is, is going to be a big part of our housing reform and getting more housing and affordable housing in Albany, so those are really important. And wow, I think that does it for my comments. I yield back my time, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting at this time, we will start up at 7:05. Thank you so much for your comment, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting at this time, we will start up at seven oh five. All right, we'll go ahead and start, it is seven oh five, and I will call the meeting to order. And can you go ahead and give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes, right here.
Councilmember Nathan?
Here.
Councilmember Tiedemann? Vice Mayor Jordan?
Um, Councilmember Nathan, I. You look unmuted by symbol, but I think you just spoke and I couldn't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Looks like everyone else can hear me. Uh-oh.
All right, I'm going to go out and come back then.
Okay, um, Mayor Gary.
Here, uh, let's give Vice Mayor Jordan a couple of minutes to jump back on, please, just one sec. Vice Mayor Jordan, are you ready? You can hear, yes, okay, you're good to go. All right, we'll go down to line item number five, the city manager report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, um, the Albany Fire Department conducted a water rescue incident recently. As use of the bulb has increased, the Albany and Berkeley Fire Departments responded to a water rescue incident last week. Where they rescued two kite servers, surfers. The department has a low-angle rescue on the Western Point, or an. Individual who fell near the water's edge, so applause to them for those significant efforts. Uh, Public Works, we have a sewer construction project going on, the city is performing essential work to improve sewers. At the intersection of Buchanan and Cleveland, please mind the area, the work is planned to start on June twenty-eighth. Through November twenty twenty-one, uh, we will have posted parking guidance in the area. And of course, please go to the public department, Public Works Department website for additional information. And to sign up for construction alerts on any of our projects. City facilities reopened today to the public, we were happy to see people at our counters, and we have also implemented a. Appointment option for folks seeking specific services, so please see all of that posted on our website as well. Um, the passport counter will also be reopening as of this Thursday, July eighth. And that service is appointment only, so again, please take the time to schedule an appointment to ensure that you get the service. And focus that you deserve. Um, the second of our Albany Parks Planning Workshops will be held this Thursday, July eighth at seven P M. As part of the Parks Rec Open Space Commission, so please enjoy that opportunity to. Provide input on how you would like to see our parks' future planning. And actually, that's a short and sweet report for tonight, so that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you so much, city manager, for your report, we'll move down to line item number six, we're at Good of the City for public comment. These are comments made for items that are not on the agenda, the public will have three minutes to speak. And with that said, I'll give you a few minutes, if you raise your hand, the city clerk will let you in to speak.
Hi, everyone, um, I just had a couple of things for public comment, first of all, um. I'd like to ask again that public comments be allowed after the city manager report, um, in case we have questions about something that was said. Um, and then that could be clarified for us, rather than not being able to do that. So I've asked this before, and I don't see anything in the, I can't find anything in the city guidelines anywhere that says that there can't be comments. So I think this is just something that could be decided one way or the other. I'd also like to ask again that the city begin these meetings with a land acknowledgement. And also, and I would like to ask again that you invite local students, especially those who are Black Indigenous or people of color. To share a short reading of that they've written, or one that they've chosen as an opportunity to be part of the city meetings, and also. Would bring more people to the meetings, because families and friends would also be there, that's it, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Looks like that's all the public comment, I'll go ahead and close line item six. Now we'll move on to line number seven, the consent calendar, I will go around the room. Um, asking council members if they have anything they would like to pull, I'll start with Councilmember Tiedemann. Councilmember Nathan?
No.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Nothing.
Vice Mayor Jordan? And I have nothing, I'll go and look and see if there's anything in public comments, public would like to pull. Go ahead, please.
Um, I would like to pull uh, seven, six, seven, seven that I know, um, Mr. Jordan. Yes, councilmember, or whatever, that was polled, um, seven, eight, and seven, nine. But I'm going to basically be making the same comments about all of them, so. I could just make all my comments the first time and then not have to keep jumping to each one, it's basically kind of a general comment about all of them. Want to go ahead and do, however you want to do it, it's fine with me.
And will you allow her at least thirty more minutes to do get those comments out, that way we can, and let me make sure there's no one else. Okay, go ahead, please.
Oh, I do my comments now, please. Oh, okay, um, so seven, um, six is a decision, was a decision between two bidders, and. Um, I looked to see, I looked on the websites to to see anything, I could find anything about the businesses. The one that was chosen appears to be um, a generational, generation, many, many generations of whiteness. Um, and I would like to, was wondering if Albany has ever considered taking um, some anti-racist action by harrowing Black or. By Black-owned businesses, I think it's really important to look at where we spend our money, which businesses we support. I think it's a statement um, about our values, and in the case of Albany, I think we have some work to do. But there may be some efforts that I'm not aware of, um, which would be fantastic, and so if so, I would love it if there was a way of telling that that was true. Maybe it would be on the website or something, or something that says that we have a commitment to anti-racist action, including supporting businesses. Owned by Black Indigenous and people of color. On the other bidder, the one that didn't get chosen, has this statement on their website, the first one doesn't have any statement about diversity or anything, but the. The one that didn't get chosen says, Michelle's self-performs most construction activities on projects, but hires local specialized contractors. When efficiencies can be gained, whenever possible, we seek the services of qualified, small disadvantaged veteran women and or minority-owned businesses. In keeping with Michelle's core values and our commitment to social responsibility, it is Michelle's policy to provide these kinds of firms. Or the D V, et cetera, firms, the maximum practical opportunities to participate in the projects we undertake. And to help our customers achieve their goals for this kind of participation, so I'm encouraging Albany to have that kind of goal. Do we support small disadvantaged veteran women and or minority-owned businesses? Because I can't find anything in the staff report about that being a consideration. I think that I just want to conclude my remarks about that, because it's true for all of the ones, and then you're also putting out a bid, and I would encourage that to be part of the bid. Courage reaching out to businesses that are owned by Black Indigenous or people of color. And I want to just say, if the city is going to spend at least thirty thousand dollars on consultants for a racial equity plan. I think you should be considering taking an anti-racist approach to everything that the city does, including when you're awarding contracts, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. All right, uh, looks like we have another, did you want to pull something off?
No, I'm sorry, I just am not sure if this is the time when I would comment on the appointment for the region's meeting or not, I could, didn't see it on the agenda as its own item.
That is uh, uh, item.
Ten one, I think.
Thank you, I think it is ten one, sorry, so no, not at this time, not ten one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and bring it back in, Vice Mayor Jordan, line item, you pull seven dash seven, go ahead, please.
Right, yeah, so this um, this item covers phase one of implementation of the San Pablo. Complete Streets Plan, at least the portion that has to do with improving safety for people to travel by sidewalk. And that extends from Brighton to uh, Portland, it's my understanding, if I'm recalling correctly. Uh, my focus is on Brighton, because there is a major project that has had a preliminary application submitted. Maybe I have that language wrong, which is the five forty San Pablo. Um, application, so I have some concern that, that that project as designed might not work well with the future of what's planned at that site. Um, so I was wondering if staff could just maybe take us, take us through that. Uh, and one of my concerns is that our active transportation plan calls for connecting. Um, from the intersection of Brighton and San Pablo to Adams via some sort of cycling facility. And there's a few ways that could be done, um, but some of them might have more consequence for this design of this particular phase than others. But I don't know, staff has contemplated, um, you know, the interface between five forty San Pablo and the. And what has previously been designed um, for this project.
City manager, do you have someone that can speak or assist that comment with that?
Yeah. I'm looking for areas, yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you, Mark, go ahead, please.
Uh, sure, um, yeah, we talked, we talked through the options uh, today, and you know, our thought is that the, most of the. Improvements that we have planned are probably good, um, as, as they are designed, there is some potential. I think there is a potential that some of the improvements, depending on what the, the solution for the uh, bike route. Um, we, we rework some, uh, some of the improvements, but we think that might be limited, particularly at the corner of Clay. Uh, we have a bulb out there, um, you know, we, we're going back and forth, there's, there's an option of. We proceed with our plans as, as drawn, because our idea was this is more of an implementation piece, so. We hadn't planned a lot of um. Analysis of various options, it was really just tuning up the plans and going into construction. Um, so our, our thought is go forward with construction, um, if they need to be tweaked down the road. That's probably fine, my guess is that um, we'd be reworking that, that corner there, and my sense is we would spend. Every bit of that dollar to construct that, trying to figure out what that option would be right now, and. You know, as details develop, and of, and of course, if details develop um, in the short term, and they're actionable, we would have. Clearly incorporate those into our project, um, but I don't think it's worth necessarily holding this up, because there has been a lot of effort. Into this intersection, and there are some really good things at it, including moving the crossing at Brighton to the north side, which I think are important to get done. In the short ton, short term.
Yeah, I would generally agree with that, I know somebody got, got hit, unfortunately not substantially injured, but somewhat injured in that crosswalk yet again. Uh, by a low-risk turning left coming out of Brighton. Um, where, I'm a little surprised, to my knowledge, the, the five forty San Pablo project, actual application hasn't come in. On that yet, is that, could you confirm or deny that understanding?
Um, that's, I'm, I'm actually not directly in that, that's, that's.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot, I was more of a city manager.
Yeah, and then I'm not, I'm not up on the details of that, until it gets, it gets um, further down, that's when we get involved.
Yeah, no, that was a community development and city manager question, sorry about that.
Jeff, are you able to respond regarding the application status?
Um, Jeff is recused from the item.
Yeah, councilmembers, Jeff Bond, Community Development Director, I'm recused from that project due to uh. Uh, my wife's professional responsibilities.
Yeah, I think you, you did apprize this about before, I apologize for not numbering, um, but I don't know if there's any other staff member, who knows? I mean, I haven't seen anything noticed from planning and zoning or whatnot, but I, I know we go to city staff first, and then. Might take a while to get to the point where it'll be brought to planning as only, I'm just trying to understand. You know, is that, is that moving forward, or is it moving quite slowly?
It is moving forward, an application has been submitted, but it hasn't been yet scheduled.
Okay, okay, well, so then I would just counsel, well, I guess, I guess another aspect of this is that unlike. The developments at the eastern edge of University Village along San Pablo. Um, I mean, this, this project has no obligation to do anything along San Pablo in terms of the, the public property, right? I mean, it doesn't, doesn't have to pay for or make any improvements to the public property. So I guess, I guess the question here is, is the public works director said, well, the, the corner of Clay. And San Pablo will probably get reworked as a necessity associated with this project in any event. But that wouldn't be paid for, done by the applicant, to my understanding, but please correct that if, if I'm wrong.
I, I'm not sure that we're going to have all of the direct information on that project tonight.
Okay, that's fine, um, I guess my direction would just be to, you know, look for opportunities for integration. You know, to the extent possible, I know that the timing's not great, but, uh, and then just to follow up on the, the attendees' comments. Um, what latitude does the city have, yeah, I think on construction contracts, the state law require lowest responsible bid. With essentially no latitude, um, whereas I think on like consulting contracts, there is some latitude, I don't know if you could expand on that for them.
I'm looking to our city attorney to advise on contract laws.
We have very limited latitude on public works contracts, as the vice mayor has just indicated, we're required to look at the. Um, or accept the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. Um, otherwise, we have to reject all bids and, and not. Not bid the contract out for, um, not, not necessarily bid it, but we wouldn't be able to execute a contract without going through that. Lowest bid process unless we meet other requirements, um, consultant contracts, like professional services. The, the government code provides for the ability to look for the most qualified person. Um, so it's not necessarily price-related, as opposed to the most qualified person to fit um, the needs of the city. But we are, we are, the type of contracts that I think we have on our agenda are, are very limited.
Thank you for the clarification, thank you to the attendee for raising the issue, I apologize, we don't know more latitude there, but it's the way it is. Um, with that, I'm, I'm done, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, I just want to interject, um, for your seven oh seven, seven, seven item. If we can get a motion but have the seven, seven item brought back. Once we have more information, and then we can approve it, are you in agreement with that?
I would be fine with that.
Questions, okay, all right, so can I get a motion?
Actually, if I could clarify, I, I would prefer to approve it tonight so that it can move. Staff can move forward, but to bring back a, bring back a report. Discussing the articulation of this project with the five forty San Pablo, because I, I. I don't think it's, I think there's grant funding, and I, you know, I don't want to delay it.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Motion?
I'm moved to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
All right, can I get a roll call?
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Council, uh, Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
And Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much, we're moving down to presentations, line item eight, we'll start with line item eight dash one, we'll go ahead and get the report. From staff and hear the presentation from our consultant.
Sorry, give me just one quick minute.
Okay.
Hey, so good evening, council and Mayor Gary. I'll go over the staff report briefly and then our consultants are here this evening to do a presentation on the report. So on June fifteenth, twenty twenty, the council considered a request from then Mayor Pilch to authorize the Social and Economic Justice Commission to add to their work plan. Discussion of how Albany might confront institutional racism. The council directed staff to provide recommendations on a consultant to assist with initiative. On July sixth, council approved a contract with Nicole Anderson and Associates to develop a citywide racial equity plan to address systemic racism and further inclusivity and social equity within the city. The purpose of a racial equity plan is to establish a clear vision and systemic approach to addressing identified racial equity gaps. Because the consultants worked closely with the SEJC to develop a draft equity statement and draft survey questions. Explore equity issues that are impacting the community and participated in learning opportunities to further their collective understanding of equity. Community listening sessions were held to gather information from and hear the voices of the community and begin the process of learning and understanding the history of racial oppression, not just in the United States as a whole, but specifically within the city of Albany. Racial equity trainings with staff were also conducted. The final draft report includes an equity framework that incorporates five overarching goals and associated indicators to support diversity and inclusion and nine clear recommendations as next steps. As the city moves forward in its efforts to build a culture of equity, belonging, inclusion and entire racism. So as I mentioned before, Nicole Anderson and Dr. Holt are here this evening to present the draft plan.
Thank you so much, Assistant City Manager.
All right, thank you so much for having me, as is about to say, my name is Dr. Shelley Jones-Pope, it's so good to see everyone again. And honestly cannot wait to see everybody again in person, it's like doing this Zoom thing, it's all right, it it's good, but after a while, it's getting a little old. And so I'm excited to be here tonight to present our final report to you and to share some of the insights that we learned about the city of Albany and about the the dedication that we saw from not just the SEJC, but also from city staff at all levels to be able to do this work. The work that we're doing is not easy work, we don't take it lightly on staff or the SEJC or anyone, we we are very as some of you have attended our session, it gets pretty deep. And we started really addressing some of the serious issues that systemic racism and systemic oppression has done not only to this country, but in particular to the city of Albany. And of course Albany is very near and dear to my heart, having been a Berkeley grad and living in Albany for a short period of time while I was in college. I experienced some things in Albany back in the day that I wanted to make sure that this work is happening. I still have many friends from college who still live in the area and want to be involved, want to see this work happen. And so, yeah, hopefully I could share my screen, which it looks like I can, fabulous, and all right, can everyone see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent, all right. So with that being said, I'm going to jump right in and how I I'll kind of go through the presentation and at the end I'll be ready for any questions that, to answer any questions that you all may have. So this is the way that we see this work is oftentimes when it starts, when it comes time to do equity work. People want change, but very few, fewer people want to change and very few people, if any, want to lead the change. That's because equity work forces us to address some of our inner notions and our preconceived biases about people who are different from us, about our past, about what we understand to be true. And that can be very difficult for people to deal with, and we do this all over the country, we've had, and we're very excited again to be here in Albany. So oftentimes, a- as city leaders, this is what our equity work can feel like. And it feels like you're never doing enough, you're always moving forward, but yet there's always always folks saying, hey, it's just not enough, we need to do more, we need to do more, we need to do more. And the truth is, yes, we do need to do more, but we cannot close the gaps in our city if we don't close the one in our minds first. Oftentimes folks want to move directly to action, but if we don't have the rationale or the reasoning or the mindset in order to keep that action sustainable, what we'll have is action that is not sustained, it's performative action. And essentially after a while it fizzles fizzles out over time and the frustration only builds. And so our goal is to ensure that as we do this work, the frustration does not, that we're not building frustration, that we're addressing the frustration as you're allowing people this space and opportunity to learn and grow. And so we operate from a place of moving from safe space to brave action. And so every one of our meetings, we start with the four agreements, whether it was working with the SEJC over the, over the last year, I mean, I just looked at our data, we are literally one day from the anniversary of our first presentation with SEJC, it was actually July seventh of last year. And so it's like, wow, one year to the, almost to the day that we're back here and reporting to you what we're, what we've learned. And so what we speak of is staying engaged because this work can get very uncomfortable. Experience that, experiencing that discomfort and not running away from it because part of the of the organization of the power structure that keeps racial oppression and systemic oppression of all kinds in in place is that whenever it gets uncomfortable, the power structure can walk away and step away and not have to experience that. And so we have to lean into that discomfort. Speaking your truth, even if your voice quivers, even if it makes people uncomfortable, because oftentimes our truths are different. And since our truths are different, we have been, we've learned and been trained not to make people feel bad by speaking our truth. It's why many times we keep things to ourselves and they just tend to fester and grow as opposed to letting that out and letting people know what our truth really is. And finally, to expect and accept non closure. And that's because we are not going to cure over half a millennia of systemic oppression upon which this country was built in a few sessions in a year or in any of the timeframes that quite frankly are going to be comfortable for any of us. It's often too fast for those for that systemic oppression is either brand new or they're just not understanding it. And it's way too slow for those of us equity warriors who have been in this game like myself, I've been in literally over half my life actively, but I started off as a child with my parents going to rallies and being exposed to some of the systemic oppressions and it's just not fast enough for some and it's too fast for others. So we often at times have to find a a happy medium in the middle and that means we have to expect and accept non closure. So this was the overall process of our work together, what we wanted to accomplish. Not just with the SEJC, but overall is to get a definition or a working definition of racial equity that we can begin and learn from, to utilize some subcommittee space to develop some key focus areas, which we did. And we'll speak to those and a collection of, and reveal some quantitative and qualitative data. While we didn't get to the collection piece, we're going to speak to that. What what some of the challenges were and also some ways that we recommend moving forward so that you can get to regularly collecting data that can begin to inform some of the decisions. Although we did get to many of the community listening sessions, which were very powerful here in the city of Albany and we are, one of our recommendations is to encourage folks to do the listening sessions much more regularly and sincerely and authentically engage in listening to what the community has to say and implementing what we can when we can. So our role, the role of the commission and is to identify some metrics the impact on city government and we're going to speak to those in just a moment. And finally, the outcomes that we wanted to have, excuse me, I have to stand up because I'm, I'm actually only five feet tall, but sitting down and presenting is just not working for me, all right, thank you. And so, there we go. So collaboratively developing a racial equity plan is always tough because, again, like I said, there's this balance. It's not fast enough or not deep enough for some, it's too deep and too fast for others. So we got to recognize that as we're doing this work, we want to have it stay in Albany. We want this to be something our children and our children's children can speak to. This is when we saw a change happen in Albany and it's still happening to this day and we add, they can continue to build on it. And also recommending for some, recommending next steps for you to continue. And so, I mean, our last time that we came in here, this is where we had come, we had, we had four subcommittees at that time. What that had been created based on the data and that was around affordable housing, business development, policing and education. Each subcommittee did come up with their own statement and then we brought and contributions to the Equity Impact Action Plan. And through this work and collaboration with the city, the policing work actually developed its own special task force that the city took over, since it was, it was an area that required a lot of different folks and and work to come together. And so we focused on the affordable housing, the business development and the education, and we definitely contributed to the policing and look forward to that continuing within the city, within that special task force. And our ultimate goal is that our recommendations, as we're here today, will come to you as city council. What we also were able to do, in addition to working with the SEJC with the, to develop the racial equity impact action plan. We also were able to do three sessions with the entire city staff. And let me tell you, working with Albany city staff, I know it gave me hope. There were some days that we, when you do this work day in and day out, you oftentimes wonder like, okay, is it going to stick? How hard is it going to be to bring people along? And let me tell you, working with the, particularly the police department, the city leadership folks that a lot of this work was very new, it was very uncomfortable for some because we're giving information, especially when we started to get into the role of history and the history of these various entities with racism and with sexism and with classism. There were some uncomfortable conversations that happened. And what I can say, I was very proud of Albany for this, is that folks jumped in and were asking questions and wanted to know. In fact, one of the sessions, I actually stayed on two hours afterwards. Just talking to folks that wanted to keep talking and wanted to keep learning more and were asking questions. And so that's what you want, what you don't want is folks shying away from it and trying to run. I can speak to many conversations that I had personally with Nicole and Isabel where we're just delving deeper into this, trying to figure out exactly what does leadership look like when you're trying to lead for equity and understand equity work at the same time. Because that's, that's a tough place to be when you're, you know, kind of wondering, how do I do this and lead it? And also, you know, bring my staff along as I'm working. And so those three sessions, we started off with building safe space. We had several cat moments, which we could call confirm, ask and provoke, where we present some, mostly it's historical knowledge. Or really putting everything together, oftentimes the work of equity is that we see, often see the the systems happening individually. And individually, racism or sexism or classism or various forms of oppression can seem minute and seem easy to dismiss. But when you put it all together and you start looking at the way laws have happened over time, it's hard to miss. And for some folks, it's like, whoa, I hadn't thought about it all together to realize that systemic oppression is just that. It's a system, it's not an individual, it's not just the institution that we call the city of Albany. It's the entire system that we are operating in, which was designed for certain people not to succeed and for certain people to succeed and then to deny that it actually operates that way. And so that was tough for some of our folks to wrestle with, but they did. And they did it very well and want to continue doing it, which speaks to who we are in Albany. But we started to understand, like, like I said, the connections to US history and also the cultural proficiency framework. Which really intrigued folks because it gives us a way to understand how we recognize and respond to differences. And that's at the core of equity work, is recognizing how to, how do we see that things are different? But I was, how I respond to these differences is what makes the difference. Defining stereotypes, implicit bias and rate, what actually racism and a racist is. Those were very tough conversations, but we had them and we're going to continue, we want to continue those. The the staff and the community was really wanting more, like, I need to understand more, especially how it fits within the various departments, because we weren't able to really speak to, how does this fit within how, within housing, with particularly the staff? How does this fit within leadership with that staff? And so we want to be able to keep doing that work. Also, understanding a systems approach. And so taking it out of the individual and that it's no one person and, you know, we have, that is racist that is causing this. It is a system that, and so in order to address this, we have to address the system. And so we weathered water of systems change article, this is something I would recommend. Anybody who's on the call, who wants to do this work, who's interested in this work and wants to understand how to change it systemically. Yes, we can all perform, do performative measures, we can read statements, we can, you know, have whatever happening that is performative to demonstrate equity, but at the end of the day, what we have to change is the mindset. Because equity, the racism that we see is not just a result of the systemic policies. The systemic policies were created by people who thought that was the right thing to do. And so in order to change it, we've got to change the thinking that caused those same systems in the first place. That causes folks to deny they exist, but also causes them to keep perpetuating over time. And so closing mindset gaps in order to close systems gaps, that's the real work of equity that's sustainable and not performative or, you know, just some kind of demonstration that ultimately people forget over time. And so here is the working definition that the SEJC came up with from all of the groups coming together. I will read it aloud and then give you a moment to kind of digest it. It says, equity in Albany is when every resident has their essential needs met through the redistribution of wealth, resources, power and opportunity to advance their well-being and achieve their full potential. Additionally, it is when social, economic and political outcomes are not predicted based upon a person's race, gender, age, sexual orientation or any other protected class. And so, give you a moment just to digest that for a moment. So this gives us something to work with, whether we adopt this one today or whether you move forward and say, you know, we want the staff to really envelop this. I could tell you, this has not been reviewed by your staff or your leadership because it was not ready when we did those sessions. This came a bit later, when we pulled it all together. But it does begin to give you something to start from, to speak to what we feel equity should be in Albany. So moving forward from there, what we also came up with in conjunction with the SEJC and the staff are five racial equity goals. And to accompany those, you'll see in your report that there are equity or diversity indicators that go with those goals that we're asking that you consider for adoption and implementation to standardize across the city of Albany. The first is that the city of Albany reflects the community it serves. And in particular, oftentimes with this, we speak to, we will actively work to eliminate racial and other disparities and hiring, promotion, retention. But I want to clarify something with this. Oftentimes on the surface level, folks believe that this means that we need to have some box checking. Okay, we have seventeen percent, you know, African American, okay, let me go to a box and let me count the number of black folks in the, in the organization and see if we checked the box, all right, we have how many Asians, let me check that box. That is not what we are talking about, that is performative and it does not change the systems over time. What we really want to go for is, yes, you want the people to reflect the community, but you want them to reflect the thinking that exists in the community, the diversity of thought, the diversity of experiences, the diversity of perspectives that exist in Albany. And Albany is unique, is more unique than any other city I've ever worked in or been in. And so that is really what we're going for when we talk about the city of Albany's workforce reflecting the community it serves. Part of that has to be built internally by shifting and working with the mindset of the people you have. It also means bringing in new perspectives that may assist in moving that agenda forward. How that works is something that we'll have to work through and and figure out over time. Looking at purposeful community outreach, outreach and engagement. This is, I heard one of the callers earlier speak to the community partners and the businesses and being very conscious about who and how we promote various businesses. And that may also mean looking at our policies, no disrespect intended, but by having policies that say that we need to only choose the lowest bid. Oftentimes communities or contractors of color may not have built the level of business to be able to compete with a, an established business that may be able to offer a lower price. And so that may, and I, again, I'm not saying like, okay, go change this tomorrow. I'm just saying that that's one of the things to consider if we're really looking at, um, diversifying who it is that we're offering contracts to. Again, not saying like Dr. Holt said, I'm just pointing that out as one of, what, what could be an obstacle to really doing this work. Another piece that came up over and over again in the community sessions is how we communicate information and who gets the information. And the conversations went from everything, the putting flyers on different buildings to how do we communicate with our, um, our, our, our unhoused populations, how do we communicate with our seniors? How do we communicate with people who speak different languages? And are we really reaching the whole community of Albany or just those who happen to know how to get on a website? Go and find out when the meetings are and such. So, um, that came up no matter which work, uh, whether it was the staff group, the SEJC group, the community listening sessions, community engagement and outreach came up every single time. Not saying I have all the answers, I'm just saying that that's definitely a place, uh, where some efforts, uh, could be done to improve equity. It was also a place that became a, um, a friction point when it came to, uh, getting the survey out. We came up with the survey, we came up with the questions, we started talking with, um, staff and SEJC were working together. It was actually really beautiful collaborations that we saw people meeting each other for the first time. Uh, staff really engaging with SEJC members. And the question that always came up is like, how are we going to do this? How are we actually going to first of all have the manpower, but also be able to get, um, the community to communicate to us what it is their needs are. Um, third is equitable service delivery to residents and visitors. And this has to do with providing guidance, education and assistance to every department as they develop different methods and sustainable methods to build the capacity so that they can achieve those equitable outcomes. Some departments understood and could do this, had already developed some practices. Others were still trying to figure out like, how does this even look? Because of the intricacies involved in their department. Yeah, but what I can say is that not one department had, not one person on the Albany staff was unwilling to, um, consider various options. It was most, it was never whether, it was oftentimes how, how do I do this and do, you know, the litany of things that they still had on their lists. Um, support human rights and opportunities for everyone to achieve their full potential. This had to do with building compliance with civil rights laws, ordinance and regulations within the city of Albany. And, uh, really looking at how we can build that throughout. It also came back to also communication and access for various groups of people who may not be receiving the messages based on the current mechanisms of communication. And finally, an outward and, um, very transparent, very explicit commitment to equity and policy and decision making. Um, and so the, the comments of this were we need to be very transparent and deliberate, collaborative and inclusive around the internal and external individuals and groups about how we hold ourselves and our partners accountable for equity. We need to be able to call each other out, call each other out, you know, and we, and what we often say is call peop- call issues out, call people in. And so that we can have those conversations and kind of have some self checks a- and some group checks to say, hey, you know what? That thinking may not be as equitable as it could be. And so the, um, each of these in your report has, uh, various indicators to support, um, how we can move forward. And so that's there for you to consider for adoption. Finally, um, we have some recommendations for next steps and if I can, I'd like to shift screens, um, real quick. So I'm gonna stop here, uh, because I want to, I want to put up the, uh, graphic for not only you as the, uh, council, but also the audience to see how we broke down the, uh, systemic framework into our, uh, for the recommendations. And so, can everyone see that systemic framework, this, um, kind of upside down triangle thing here? Perfect. And so what we did was we took all the recommendations that not only the SEJC came up with, and we're talking about the twenty, we met with the twenty twenty, uh, SEJC, uh, several times. And we met with the, uh, recent SEJC one time to get their, uh, thoughts on this. And this also came from some of the staff sessions that we had. And so we took the systemic framework from the Water Systems Change Art- Article to create systemic change and recommended some actions that the city council can consider for moving forward. Um, when it comes to policies, and so I'm gonna start at the top of the triangle and move down, recognizing that everything starts with the mental models on the bottom. If everything starts, if we don't adjust mental models, policies, practices and resources will literally only be performative. Because a- until something new and shiny comes along. Uh, but I am going to start at the top just so you can see what, um, this look, just explain each one. And show how we're connected to the mental models. So we want to leverage equity and personnel policy to guide the recruitment, hiring and retention of staff. This came up over and over and over again. Uh, in the policies and practices for how we do our hiring, we want people who think like the folks in Albany. Not just look, uh, so this is not just checking boxes and, you know, saying how many Jewish people do we have? How many African Americans, how many Asians, how many, you know, people of whatever descent? This is also in experiences, it's also in perspective, right? And so how do we adjust our policies, whether it's the questions we ask, the processes we use? There are processes that we know scientifically lean more towards people who look like the, those that are doing the interview. We have already a bias, no matter who we are, we all carry biases. If everybody on the panel doing the hiring looks one way, chances are they're going to, um, hire someone who looks like them. And that's just, it's not just, um, bias, it's also, uh, science that tells us this. So how do we adjust our policies to allow for that? Within the practices, we want to continue to implement and monitor and refine equity work through the city leadership. Uh, and we are recommending the development or the hiring and preparation for an equity officer to help hold this work. What we found oftentimes is that people that were doing the work on staff were already stretched very thin. And while they want to focus on equity, they can't do that in a di- in lieu of their actual job that they have to do to run the city. And so having someone that can hold the equity work and keep everyone accountable is what we're recommending. Um, and that would also include kind of working with the SEJC and all with various committees to really hone in and, and help us keep accountable to that. Um, allocating resources to those that are directly impacted, uh, the target communities that we want to see addressed through equity. And so whoever those committees are, and that's going to shift and grow and change over time. Uh, but we want to make sure that this equity, uh, that we have resources allocated to that and it's not just saying, um, we want to do this, but we're actually putting essentially our money where our mouth is. Um, resources is also more than just, uh, money, it's time, it's personnel, it's thought. Um, it's all that comes into the various, it's putting resources in, building the community and the collaborations and the partnerships that we know will bring equity to the organization. Also, um, so getting into that semi explicit, that middle level, we know that, um, racism is held and all forms of oppression are held in place by power and the relationships, the networks that we create. That's what holds systems in place, right? And so we want to make sure this internal and external communications and outreach plan. Like I mentioned earlier, it comes up over and over again, we've got to have a way to reach all factions and sectors of our community. And right now, quite simply, that just is not all there. There were a lot of ideas that, um, are not only in this report, but in also in all the supplementary documents that are attached to it. There were so many ideas that came from the community and such that we now just need some opportunity to put that together into a plan that's really, that's going to work for each department and overall for the city. Also looking at the power dynamics, um, leverage, what we're suggesting is that you leverage these SEJC and the staff working together to monitor action fast progress and then also leverage the community voice to inform decisions. Not just speaking at meetings, but honestly showing them how, when they're speaking and, and making suggestions, that those become incorporated into what we're doing. Um, there are always some tiers of equity actions that we can take. And we always suggest you get some small wins in there, things that are, you know, easy to implement so that we can focus more deeply on the, the, the more difficult stuff. And that usually has to do with the power dynamics that exist. All of this relates to the mental models. Quite frankly, there are some folks that still do not believe that that systemic oppression exists. There are some folks that believe that racial issues, transgender issues, uh, uh, they're just like a figment of people's imagination and they're just, you know, something that, and this came up in some of the community's, uh, forum sessions as well as some of the emails and such that we got from private citizens just emailing us saying, a- and we spent a lot of time with many of those folks just having conversations, just one-on-one. Many of them begged and pleaded not to know, not for folks to know who they are and that's fine with us. We enjoy having those conversations because this work happens system, it needs to happen systemically, but systemic work happens one person at a time. And so we recommend ongoing professional development for your staff, especially your leadership. Um, so that with some follow-up coaching, so that they understand how to operate within the dynamics of various people who, um, they know don't believe, but they still have them on their team and they want to continue to work with them. Um, I, as a former superintendent, I've always said, I don't believe in throwaway people. And, and that's just who I am and how I build my leaders. I don't believe in throw, you just throw people away because they think differently or they're not quite in the same place you are. You work with them and there's a place for everyone, either in this organization or in another one. But there is a place for everybody in the work that needs to be done. And so, um, with that, uh, you can see that the, uh, recommendations, so structuring that one. You can see the recommendations that are on the, uh, bottom of that, that speak to. Okay, you can see this screen, yes? That's the last part of it. Um, uh, adopting an equity statement, um, whether it's the one that was presented by SEJC or allowing your staff to build on that, um, is also a, a great way to approach this so that it, they have the buy-in, um, and understanding of where it came from and their voices in it. Complete a minimum of two additional listening sessions a year for a total of at least four a year where we sit down and just listen to the community at least four times a year, right? So, and, um, and what we would suggest is basing those around the various areas that occur. So around affordable housing, around business development, uh, around racism in general or sexism or whatever it is that's coming up. Um, complete the racial equity community survey. And, uh, one of the biggest barriers to that again was how are we going to get this out? Who's going to tally up the information, tally up the data? We actually do these on a regular basis. What we recommended was doing court because the survey, once we got all of the different areas of housing and policing and everything together, it's so long and so comprehensive. We recommend doing quarterly surveys so that we train and, and get our community accustomed to giving us feedback regularly. And then you accompany those surveys with a listening session because some folks will fill out a survey, other people will attend and tell you, you want to get all of that back. Um, revise the mission and vision statements to reflect racial equity. This is something that the city council could do and we can definitely support that work. Um, supporting the launch of an Office of Racial Equity and Human Rights Equity Diversity Inclusion, however, whatever you want to call it. Uh, people all over the, uh, country are calling it different things, but particularly offer support to that person. Oftentimes the person who comes in as the EDI director, and I know because this has happened to me personally several times, is usually the only person of color in the room. Um, and that's often, i- it's a great thing to do, but it's also a, a tough place to be. So we recommend that whoever that person is, you get them some support and some coaching so that they can handle some of the stresses of being an only or a first. And having been a first three times in my career, I can tell you it's very mentally, emotionally and physically taxing. It's great, you will get, get great results for your organization, but we also got to think about who that person is. Um, provide yearly updates, um, to the community, um, progress at minimum yearly. Um, if you could do something every meeting, you have different ways that different organizations are doing this. Um, here it comes again, outreach and, um, community. And I mistakenly, I'm sorry, there were only nine, I mean, I, this is a faux pas on my part. Partnerships we created with, uh, SGEJC and I say we, not Nicole and I, uh, but we as the, in the SEJC worked very closely with the Albany School District and they created a beautiful partnership, um, had an amazing community listening session. Um, and so we recommend that you keep that going and align that, those goals with yours so that you have, um, something that you're addressing with the youth, you bring the youth and the city together. And there were so many examples, and one of the callers mentioned earlier about having the kids come and speak. They want to come, want to get involved in city government. Man, what better way, you know, that, I mean, most of the time is that we don't get them wanting to be involved and we're begging them to be involved. You have a community that wants to be there, how do we create space for that to happen? And then finally, and, and some would have argued this should be number one, is to review of, uh, the police department policies and procedures. And what we noticed over time in working with the police task force and your amazing police department is that, um, this is going to take some time, there, there's more than a willingness, but we want to be strategic and thoughtful about how we ensure safety for our community, but also shifting the mindset of not only our officers, but also the community in general about how we respond to various needs within the community. So with that being said, um, keeping in mind that as we move forward, we want to focus on cultural proficiency. And really that's just recognizing and responding to differences. Um, there is a continuum that, uh, that speaks to you. And so this is what we went over with your staff and with your SEJC is understanding how we respond to differences is at the core of everything we do. And what we want to do is get to cultural proficiency, which is we're responding effectively in novel environments. But we have to often recognize where we are in different circumstances and be comfortable admitting like, hey, you know what? Some of my, I'm culturally blind to some cultures, I'm culturally pre competent with others. I, I, and with, I've recognized that there has been some cultural destructiveness, either in my history or in the history of, of the come, uh, the country or the community. Um, so we encourage continuing the equity in the workplace. This is the, a path of learning for equity in the workplace to begin to develop that culture of equity. And so this is the same path of learning that we take in different le- layers, um, depending on the years that we work, uh, with organizations and it really is about building the capacity to understand what's happening and how do we make changes. Um, and so we combine all of this together to take a systems approach to the work, which is what we recommend, uh, for Albany. And I cannot thank you enough, we are so glad to be here with you and to have had this opportunity. And I want to open it up now for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Shelley, for your presentation. And so if you can, uh, lower your screen, we'll go ahead and get some buy-in of questions from the council members. Or we go out to the public. Nothing from the council members?
Also my usual role of talking too much. Um, so, and thank you very much for developing this and presenting it to us. Uh, I wanted to, to see clarity on goal five, which was commitment to equity and policy decision-making. Um, the indicator that was listed on the table is effective policing practices. And I wasn't quite what I expected because policing practices is, obviously one domain of policy, but housing is another domain and there are various other domains. So I just seemed like a little bit of a disconnect there or, or shooting maybe low or maybe the idea is, you know, that's, that's the first target. And then, you know, as you succeed more or less on that, then you move to another target.
Um, as you look deeper into the report, that was just one, so we gave examples of various indicators and we gave one example within effective policing practices. Honestly, it came to a point of space at a certain point of trying to keep it on one page. But when you go deeper in the report, you'll see that there is policy, um, the, uh, recommendations for each one for housing, for, uh, business development and for education that were there in addition to policing. I left the policing one there specifically because remember the policing came into a different task force. And so you won't see as much of the policing in this report. So that's why I made the decision like, we give you the example of policing, but you'll see a much deeper analysis on the other three in the subdocuments.
Okay, and so it's in the, the appendices or the, uh, the sections that follow the table with the goals. Or I'll find those, thank you.
Yeah, and so you'll see it on like each, um, section, each subcommittee came up with, um, almost like their own upside down try with, for their systemic approach to education. To, I mean, I just kind of put them together in some overall terms, but they gave very specific, uh, recommendations and, and things to consider. It's going to take some time to get there, obviously. But the thoughts that were there, um, firstly, I thought were amazing for everybody to just come together and go, all right, let's see how, what we could do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Nasa, go ahead, please.
There we go. Um, Dr. Jones-Holt, thank you so much for the excellent presentation. Uh, boy, this is, this is a meaty, meaty report. There's a lot to absorb, there's a lot to think about. Um, and, uh, and every page just sends ideas, you know, uh, flying everywhere. Uh, I did want to be sure that I do understand what we're doing tonight. We're, we're receiving this presentation. We're, we're receiving this presentation and we're asking questions. And I assume we'll hear from the SEJC about it. Um, we're not being asked to, uh, to adopt the plan. We're being asked to understand it and accept the report. Is that, I guess this isn't, it is a question for, uh, for the mayor and the city manager, just so I'm sure I understand. We, we have in sometimes we've had some, um, some areas of ambiguity around when we receive a study. It happened with the, uh, the transition study for the bulb included a plan, but we didn't, it, it was only, the, the study was only to be a, a jumping off point for a plan. And I'm looking at this and I'm assuming it's the same. There are some very concrete recommendations being made. But this is a jumping off point for creating a plan going forward. We are not adopting this plan tonight.
That's correct. I'll just jump in. I think because, you know, like Dr. Shelley said, it's been a year, right? And so I wanted, uh, the opportunity for them to bring something to us so we can see what's going on, what some things we can consider, right? Some things we may want to make suggestions, but ultimately eventually we will adopt this plan. But I, I believe if I'm not wrong, Dr. Shelley, there, there needs some more, a little more work done to kind of complete it. But, you know, again, go ahead.
Um, well, the recommendation that we had talked about, and again, Nicole and Isabel, please jump in, was that we wanted to now move to the next step, which is to work more closely with city staff. We worked very closely to get this far with the SEJC and, and, you know, bring these committee recommendations. The step that, the next step is to now work more deeply with city staff to be able to have them be able to even implement this plan. Should you even adopt it? Now we got to figure out like, how do we build the capacity of your leadership and your various departments to even move forward? Um, so even if you were to adopt it today, it's like, okay, you can adopt it, great. But you still now have a whole body of work to now get through the mental models of your staff and your leadership to be able to even implement this work. Equity work is not just business as usual, and it's not just leadership as usual. And so, um, having worked with Nicole and Isabel, I can't tell you how amazing it's been to kind of pick their brains every once in a while to learn about how, first about how cities work as opposed to school districts. Cause my, my experience is in school districts, but also to now look at, okay, now how are we going to lead this moving forward? And make all of these pieces come together. And so very similar to what we would do in a school district, we can, you know, say, okay, now that we have this kind of vision of what we want to do moving forward, how do we prepare the internal staff to be able to even do this? Does that make sense?
Councilmember Nathan?
Uh, yes, yes. I'm sorry. I thought she was asking you. It makes very, very good sense. Thank you.
May I just jump in to clarify, the, uh, the agenda item does ask for a motion by the council to uh, accept the study or, or plan, if you will. And, and that would be exactly as Dr. Holt indicated, the, the launch into the next phase of rolling up our sleeves and figuring out how. And we would do that, uh, through partnerships.
Okay, but we're, uh, that leaves me still feeling a little bit uh, uh, like there's still some ambiguity here. I mean, we are receiving this information. We are not acting on it. We are not adopting the plan. Uh, we are, we, we still have too much work to do to understand this and process it. And, um, and from what you described, SEJC has additional work to do and so forth. But, uh, we are not adopting a plan that, that the staff is then going to implement. That is, that's, we're not at that point yet.
No, we're not at the point of adoption. There's a, um, and so my understanding from city leadership is that there's a difference between exception and adoption. So if we're accepting it, it's like, now we've received the information and we want to move forward to the next phase. Adoption would be, this is it, and this is what we're going to do. Well, we, we still have planning to do in order to be able to figure out like, how exactly would we implement something like this? And, you know, what would need to happen within city staff? That work has not happened. And so
Let, let me be very clear. I, I'm not, uh, I'm, I'm not bought into everything that is proposed. And in particular, I'm not sure, uh, I'm not sure that, that I'm bought into adding DEI staff just because of, of the size of our city and its staff and, and our needs. So that's one that kind of jumped out at me. I don't want to leave anybody uh, with the impression that by accept saying, yes, I think that they did a lot of great work. And I accept this plan as a very worthwhile thing for us to continue working on. But I'm not saying, you know, we're, we're, and I hope that the council is not being asked tonight to say, yes, okay, that's the plan. We're going to have, uh, we're going to hire an officer. We're going to do these, these various things. So I'm sorry, just to be
No, I, I would defer to Isabel and Nicole, but my understanding is no. In order to, uh, adopt a new position, what we would have to do is bring you a job description, a salary, a budget, like all of those things. What, um, is being proposed here is to begin to investigate even if how, how we would even approach something like this. And so, no, you're not saying today, oh yes, we're accepting this. We're going to have an EDI person. We're going to adjust the policies. We're going to, we're gonna, we're gonna. That's way too, um, presumptuous and you're way too early in the process. That is not what we are recommending. What we're recommending is that there's now the city staff have an opportunity to digest this and then see how do we take what we see as somewhat of an ideal? Look at our current state and start to mesh that. And they will then bring you some, it'll probably be piecemeal. Like they'll bring you various steps and phases along the way that they come up with. But quite frankly, this is not something that you could adopt and just go with today. It's not even in that form.
Yeah, we're, we're still in the brainstorming to phase of things. Okay. And there's one other thing that I, I feel the need to say, and I, I, I don't want to seem uh, that I'm, I'm being excessively, uh, picky or, or something. But I, I, the, there's only one thing that I don't feel like I can accept in the sense of, okay, this is, this is a good document for us to, to keep working on. And that was on page 20 with the, the comment that, um, strollers and rollers, uh, about the stroll, the Albany Strollers and Rollers organization. And there was kind of a, um, um, a comment that, um, you know, middle-aged men and women in Lycra are part of the controlling narrative. That, the, the characterizing people based on race and age and what they wear. I think is the kind of thing that we should be, we should be moving in the other direction. You know, the people's race and age and what they wear is the kind of thing that we should be becoming more accepting about what other people do, even if they're white, even if they're middle-aged. And even if we don't like Lycra, you know, the, what, we, I don't, I, I had a negative reaction to that one thing. As something that maybe doesn't belong in a report that we're, you know, accepting tonight. That, that's just one thing I wanted to throw out there.
So I want to respond to that because part of what we do is we give you exactly what was said by the community and what was put out. We took out bits and pieces of it. I'll be honest with you. We took out quite a bit. But that is part of the mindset that we're going to need to shift because if that's what exists, one of the things that one of our predecessors in this work, Dr. Eric Witherspoon would say, we have to face it to fix it. And I don't think that that's a very becoming, uh, term or description of the strollers and rollers either. I agree with you there. But if that's the way that the community views it and what was said, we need to go, okay, what does that mean? How do we process that? How do we work through the mindset that this is what people are seeing? And so, um, I'll be honest, we took out a lot of the, um, uh, uh, things that were similar. Um, that may have been one that we just missed, but that is actually a quote, uh, from, and so, you know, I, I don't want to, like, we, we always kind of tread very lightly with how much do we pull out to be sensitive and how much do we just say, okay, we got to face this? And, and then figure out better ways to describe one another, um, than, you know, some of the terms that were used. I, I personally like Lycra personally, but you know, you know how it goes. So, so I, I do apologize on behalf of our organization for anybody that was offended by that. But again, we do bring in the quotes as they are and we got to face it to fix it. So if we want to fix the image of the strollers and rollers, we got to know what's out there. And then we bring, I would love to bring the Strollers and Rollers organization as a partner. And we figure out how do we shift, you know, this perception that exists around this organization, right?
Yeah, yeah. I would just make it very clear that this is not coming. Uh, this is not a part of the report that we are being asked to accept. Uh, as you know, that this somehow reflects our community's perspective or something. It's not part. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're so welcome. Thank you for the questions. I appreciate it.
I think Vice Mayor Jordan, did you have your hand up? I'll go to Councilmember McQuaid.
Yes, it was actually with, under the acceptance conversation and, um, so yeah, my understanding was accepting the report would nicely be implementing all of it, obviously. But the, I think the nine next steps are, are items that we consider in the strategic planning process, you know, which ones of those might we adopt for the next two years and which ones do we on the list for um, some years out. I'm, I'm smiling and laughing at the, the stroll and rollers because I'm actually a co-founder of Strollers and Rollers. And, uh, I can say to me flattered that somebody is going to call me middle-aged at this point. Uh, and I don't really, I'm trying to think, do any phones roll into where Lycra, but you know, it's the mental model. It's not the reality. It's the mental model. So it's pretty intriguing. And I appreciate Councilmember Nathan daylighting that. I was just going to kind of let it slide. Um, but it is interesting to think about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McQuaid?
Thank you. I want to go back to the language in the, um, agenda. Staff recommendation, the city council received the presentation. Here we've talked about accepting, we've talked about adopting, but the language actually says receive. And, and I think it's important that we follow exactly the language.
That's the part that was troubling me and accept the plan.
Where do you see and accept? I'm sorry.
That's under staff recommendation, the entire sentence.
I cut off, cut off my reading too soon. Thank you.
No worries. All right. We're going to jump on, get some, uh, public comment in and then I'll bring it back to council to kind of wrap things up and see where we go from here. All right. All right. So if you have a public comment, um, and we go ahead and, and let the first one in, go ahead.
Um, Mayor, three minutes?
Yeah. Let's do two.
Hi, this is Brian Martin, Albany resident. I want to thank the city for looking into these issues. Two issues I wanted to raise. One is, I didn't hear anything in the report about zoning. Zoning is something Berkeley and Oakland and other cities have been looking into. Zoning that appears to perpetuate old racially motivated redlining policies where neighborhoods with lower valued homes are sometimes the ones that appear to be on a city's plan to experience the most negative effects from high density development. While the rest of the city maintains the zoning for single-family homes with no impacts from dense development, negative impacts. I recommend the city view zoning through this lens, even if it isn't in the report and for the consultants to consider that in any future updates. Uh, also the second item, the last item I was, I heard from the consultant, the recommendation for more diversity in city contracts. That was brought up earlier in the meeting. I'd like further clarification from legal counsel as to whether, what is legally possible. In my own personal experience about eight years ago, it wasn't a racially or, or gender or anything related thing, but it was really an issue of incompetence. We had a sewer, uh, contract awarded to somebody that worked on my street. And, uh, there were all sorts of property damage and injuries. My own daughter was injured. Uh, mildly injured, uh, clothing damaged. We had sewage backed up into our own property. And really the worst thing was is they used high, they used, uh, heavy machinery next to a high-pressure gas transmission line, a massive thing like the San Bruno incident. And they struck that with, uh, machinery. And then they were awarded contracts later after, after that contract. And I asked city then, and the city staff said, the, uh, state law requires the lowest bidder. And we can't include competence and, uh, threat to public safety in our bidding. So I would like clarity in what is allowed because we have a consultant here telling us diversity should be in city contracts. And if it's not allowed, it's not allowed. I just want more clarity on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, please.
Hi, good evening. Um, you know, this was a very, very good presentation. And, you know, it's kind of like school in the classroom. And, um, this, this person here, this consultant is like our teacher. And I listened and I digested and I accepted in all these words we're throwing around. We just got to break it down. Okay. It's common sense, right? You treat others how you want to be treated. There's so much racial injustice going on. And it's, it's terrible in Albany right now. It's terrible the way we treat African-Americans. We got African-Americans sleeping at the Albany library. What do we do? We put more planner boxes. So the person can't camp there. You know, it's kind of passive aggressiveness. And this homeless person sleeping at the Albany library, whoever's not updating the water hand wash station in the porta potty, it's, it's the city's passive aggressive way to deal with this. And it's not right. You know, it, it's, it's a hazardous situation. I mean, it's a science experiment going on in the porta potty in the library. You know, if it was maybe a, a white homeless person, oh yeah, we, we'd be, uh, filling that hand wash station and emptying that porta potty every day to make it better for you know, this passive aggressive approach to homelessness i- is, is sickening to me. I mean, what is Albany really doing for the homeless right now? And especially African-Americans. We've got the professor on Kierut, you know, making sculptures. I'm the only one dropping off food and orange juice to the guy. I mean, the city can't even drop off any water for someone to drink. And we spent all this money and all these programs and, and I see nothing. All I see is myself picking up everybody else's slack. I mean, I stepped up to the plate to do this laundry program because people in charge just dropped the ball. I mean, as if homeless people and people of injustice don't have it difficult enough. So if I got to provide laundry out of my pocket, so be it. I, I just really wish the city would step up to the plate like I have and hit a home run. You know, this is common sense. We've got to adopt all these policies right away. We're going to take a break next month. And then we won't be back till September. And by the time we even do anything, it's going to be too late. It's going to be next year.
Jeremy, Jeremiah, your time is
Thank you. Thank you, Ann. Keep up the good work. I'm just really passionate about this. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Next, please. You're mute. Um, it looks like Bart. Are you, is he next?
No, Amy.
She's on mute.
Amy, can you go ahead? There you go.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor Gary. I would like to just share a brief comment. This information received is not entirely what the city needs at this time. The impact of this so-called presentation was already from the start discriminatory. You spoke with staff, you spoke with members of the SGS, whatever, whatever that committee is. But you did not include the residents. This is not something that you do when you move forward in equity and diversity. Equity is the quality of being fair and impartial. Diversity and ideology is an ideology that enables whites to only superficially commit to a diversity or the, or something of inclusivity, inclusivity for services rendered. You have an all-white city pretty much with some different ethnicities. I'll admit that. But it's not inclusive of all. You must be inclusive of everybody that's there. And this is why this should not be received. It is not a good report. And this is why this should not be received. It is not a good report. It is a good report only for those who don't understand what diversity truly is. You, I read this report, it implies, well, it has a lot of things in it like SMART. Unless SMART is used as an acronym in corporate America, not for, for government. There are all kinds of things I can say, but the main thing is this is not what your city needs right now at all. So that's what I needed to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, please. Go ahead, Bart.
Thank you. Um, thank you, uh, council and uh. I just wanted to say it was a pleasure as a member of SGC, SEJC to work with Dr. Holt. And uh. She's a much better final draft than the draft that we have. Um, I wish we could keep her. Rather than the pieces of paper. Um, but there are a few things I do need to point out. I, I don't think this. Can be a final draft because nothing here is final and um. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. The equity statement. Uh, may have come from things that, that SEJC said, but there was never a discussion. Of a final draft uh, statement on, in SEJC. So, and there was, there was no uh, resident input into the, uh, into the equity statement, and I think that's a problem. I agree that that uh, really is not uh, yet ready for prime time. Um. Also, the, uh, the draft doesn't have anything about the history of racism in the city of Albany. Uh, including redlining and police uh, brutality, which is very much part of the history of this community. And needs to be in this report so that people understand. Uh, what the background is uh, to the, to these issues and why they're with us and how they got here. The suggestions related to uh, education, we do need a closer relationship with the school board. Uh, in order for those to be implemented, they can't be implemented alone by the city. So I would just say that there's a lot of work to, that needs to be done, that SEJC has never even seen the draft and it's not. Clear what SEJC's role is now. And uh, let's throw out the draft and keep Dr. Holt.
Thank you so much for your comment. Next, please.
Hi, uh, thank you, Dr. Holt, for the presentation and for the draft, um. Whether it gets thrown out, we keep you or not. Um, I, um, I had just had a few comments about it. I want to start with the, the equity statement that I. Anytime in the document that used the word resident, I would encourage you to replace that with community member because resident can have. A pejorative or, or actually not maybe not pejorative, but a scary uh, feeling to some people. There's something about the word residence. So I, I would use community member. And then I also wanted to talk about, um. Uh, it says based upon a person's race, gender, age, sexual orientation, or any other protected class on. Uh, you cannot socioeconomic status is not a protected class, but it should definitely be included in there. I appreciated the quotes that were included, um, and I would like to see more. I would love to have seen everything that people said. I think it's really interesting when you get to hear from people. I would support having an equity officer. I hope that happens. The definition of transgender uh, needs a lot of work and so I, and I'd be happy to send you a better one. Um, and I want the um, cultural competence. I also, I think that I saw that you're, you had a scale, but I actually think it's not possible and. We don't actually, nobody really thinks that you could become culturally competent in somebody else's culture. So I really prefer the term cultural humility where you really look at yourself and be aware of what your culture is and then look at other people and realize. Then do more listening and less thinking that you know what they know, know about them. So I would also, if you haven't explored that word, I can send you some information about that. Maybe you have. Um, and then, um. Let's see the, um, just want to make sure. Oh, and then the whole idea of the city of Albany reflecting the workforce, reflecting the community. I, I understand that what you said, that there was a lot of different. Ways of talking about that, but I, I think that it should be reflect the world and not the community frankly, um. And then I just wanted to finish by, um, asking about the word performative. If I feel like. I understand what you mean, that you don't want to be just ticking off boxes, but on the other hand, where do you start? Maybe, maybe it's okay to be performative and I was wondering if you would talk a little bit more about that. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Next, please.
Hi, uh, thank you for taking my call. Um. Thank you to the consultants and to the SEJC. For the good work that you've done. Um, I love the idea of having not only a race, uh, a race equity statement. At the city, um. I love the idea of making race and social equity a moral and business imperative in the city's mission, vision. And strategic plan as you're talking about that. Around issues of accountability. I love that question of how do we know that this work is sticking? You know, um, and what I would ask for is. Some transparency. So specifically, I would love to solidify the role of the SEJC. In implementing and monitoring the equity work that is being done in the city, um, in the future. And that it's, uh, I would love the idea of an equity officer, but that, uh, at least it's directed by that SEJC. Um, in some of the reports that I see that the, that are made to the city council, there is. A statement looking at social and equity uh, lens. And so I would love the SEJC to be the, and the equity officer to be kind of looking through those as you make decisions. So that it's not just a financial decision like we're gonna go with the lowest bidder. I also love the idea of targeted universalism and partnering with the school district. So that if we're looking at student education outcomes, that we would look at what are the pro-family interventions that the city would support? What are the effective policing policies? So that we're not just targeting black and brown. And I also love the idea of looking at incorporating Albany's racist history in the report. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Next, please.
Hello, uh, Nickelle Chalbony, resident. Uh, thank you for the report, uh, and thank you to the city and council for supporting this work. I just want to second Brian Martin's comment about housing. Uh, zoning is going to be particularly important as we consider our housing element and the fact that we are. Almost completely single families owned and how that affects equity uh, throughout the city. So, um, I urge, uh, the consultant, Dr. Shelley Jones-Holt and the council to keep that in mind as we move forward with, uh, doing our housing element. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. And last comment, go ahead, please.
Hi, this is Greg Downs. I appreciate you all's taking this up and appreciate the discussion, which raised a lot of good points. And I also appreciate Dr. Holt. And her work throughout in the presentation. I just want to pull forward based on my experiences on SEJC. A number of comments, including my former colleague Bart and a number of other people. Julie and others about a couple of pieces to point out. One that when we discussed this in SEJC, there were other portions of this that were intended to be developed and included. There was a, you know. Much discussion of the importance of a section on history. I understand that. There's been a, you know, move to, to advance what there is, but I think, um. This was not the, the framework that SEJC. Had discussed. Uh, B, we had discussed that. From, you know, getting where we were in November, December, that the goal was for it to be picked up by the next SEJC. I'm not on the SEJC. I didn't apply to be on at this time. But my understanding is that that ball has been, has been dropped. And I would say that that raises concerns for me that there's a goal to develop a. Kind of equity framework that marginalizes the one commission we have that's aimed to focus upon it. And that has a lot of really extraordinary and committed people on it. So my suggestion would be to accept it as is, but to ask to go back to the SEJC to ask this SEJC to go to work. At filling it out, at clarifying pieces, uh, you know, that were, you know, suggestions and building in more of those community voices. And that the proposal really include a place for future SEJCs to be part of the accountability process. Because right now we have some of the instruments of that. If we have a person who's on staff, who's part of that accountability. They should be working with and engaging with and in some ways reporting to SEJC about that. In order for us to ensure that all the pieces of the city that are focused on this are working together. So I'd encourage that this report, you know, be thought of as a kind of interim, a sort of moment in time that sort of moved, uh, you know, that didn't go through the processes that were described to us and pitched to us of what was gonna happen. That it go back, uh, that it build on what's here, complete that, but also build in a role of SEJC. Because I think building up a framework that doesn't include that means that we're gonna be back here again in a few years talking about why this plan didn't work. Thank you for taking it up in your time.
Thank you so much for your comment. It looks like we have one more. Go ahead, please.
Hi, um, I, my name is Karen Sabata. I actually am on the SEJC and I wanted to just raise that, um. Uh, I, I wanted to concur that it's really important that this come back as we, we did get a, um, a presentation. Gaining some feedback, but we didn't see this document. And in particular, I want to really. Look at this equity statement and, um, and I think the conversations that we could have in, in SEJC are really important. For example, this, um, this question of meeting the needs. Of, of the folks in, in Albany should also address a reckoning and reconciliation of the past that, that is. Not just sort of, you know, blindly, you know. Created the situation that exists in Albany, but really purposefully. Excluded certain people. So it's not just sort of like, let's do this, but let's do this what with a full face on the history of what's happened. In the city of Albany. And so I wanted to just really, um, speak out that, that I, I believe that, um. That this, that the role of SEJC is critical and that the, 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 um, the uh, commission be utilized. In the best way possible. Um, additionally, I wanted to, um, I, I do, I do want to encourage, uh. I don't, I don't think it should not be accepted. I guess I'm advocating that the, that it also, that it be accepted as is and that we move from there. And I also wanted to speak up about, you know, this really is about resources and it has to be about resources. And the equity officer, the, the staff that's being proposed in this report is really important because otherwise. It is yet more performative window dressing. If this council, if this city really has a commitment. Not only this should this be in a report, but it should look like human beings in the city of Albany doing this work.
Thank you so much for your comment. We'll go ahead and bring it to council so we can finalize the conversation. Does council have any other remarks? Or questions? And Dr. Shelley, uh, let me not forget, did you want to address something, some of the comments and? Okay, go ahead, please.
I'm good. Um. This is a kind of a moment where I need to be very, uh, careful with my wording, but I will say this. That, uh, the history piece, um, it was a pointed discussion. As you saw in our pre, our interim report, it, uh, and our final report, uh, there was a, there's a difference. And I think that part of our recommendations to bring SEJC, the staff and everyone together to keep that work going. Is part of what's needed in order to, uh, become more transparent, more knowledgeable, and quite frankly, more comfortable. Talking about the history and honestly, to get one story, because part of the challenge is that there are so many different perspectives about the history. That we need to, we need to, that's something we need to flesh out altogether. And so there was kind of a, a shift when we went from, um, twenty twenty to twenty, to the twenty twenty-one group. And, um, as we move forward, um, not too much about looking backwards as much to, to only to learn. But as we move forward, I think that having an opportunity to bring folks together, there was a lot of work done with the SEJC. From twenty twenty, a lot of work done with the staff. And to bring the current SEJC along and to continue to work with the staff will have us embracing and being able to face. Some of the challenges of that history. And so, um, I do concur and. Um, I think that that's something we can all work forward through together. Um, and there's still a lot of work to do. Like I said, it's been one year. And when you look at where we were last year. And compared to this year and our comfort in being able to talk about these topics, we've all grown exponentially. And so now it's about taking that work forward. And, um, a lot of what was stated, I completely concur with. And this is where I said earlier that we've got to balance. There are some people for whom this work is moving too fast. There are some people for whom this work is not moving fast enough. And those of us who are actually leading and doing the work have to balance all of those perspectives so that we don't lose people along the way. This is four hundred years in the making. Some would say half a millennia, five hundred years in the making. It did not just come about recently. And so, um, looking at the progress that we've made in the last year, absolutely great work. Do we still have work to do move for, to do moving forward? Absolutely. And whether that work is with Nicole Anderson Associates and I, or. You know, with the SEJC and the staff coming together, that, um, whatever needs to happen. What you have now is a basis or a foundation to start looking at some of these issues more deeply. Especially the issue around housing that came up quite a bit, especially the issues around education, business development. And of course, we cannot leave out policing. Those are the four areas, as you heard, are very hot topic areas. Um, I also want to comment about, as I did, we did hold several community listening sessions. What I'm hearing and understanding is that we need to do more and I agree with you. We need to do more and hear more from the community and get them involved. So thank you again for this opportunity and we're glad to be here. We know this work is messy. It's not easy. It's not fun, but we're here and partnered with you to do it.
Thank you so much. Any other questions from the council or comments?
I, I was interested to hear a little bit more from one of the attendees who made a comment, but only obviously with the attendance of the council.
Say it one more time, I'm sorry.
I said there, there was one attendee who said, this was not what the city needed. And I was curious if the council's amenable to hear. A minute or two from that individual and what they think the city does need now as, as input.
No, I think for, for the sake of time, we can have that individual send you an email and address that and have that dialogue. I think we want to continue this along to the next item, but also want to see if I have a motion that we accept the plan based on conditions, whatever that motion would be. Go ahead.
I can make a motion to accept, accept the plan, um. With the condition of. The addition that the recommendations are not in priority order. They are numbered and so that can sometimes imply that there's a priority ordering. Um, I don't think that was the intent. Uh, Dr. Holt, please correct me if I'm wrong. Um. There are some, some, I think edits that are needed that, that confuse me. For instance, the first goal. Um, and this is clarified in the, the slide deck that was presented, but the first goal as in the version that, that was given to us says, the city of Albany workforce. Reflects the mental models the community it serves. And that didn't make sense to me. Um, and now I under doubt that I think that was an editorial. Issue. So there's, uh, a few others of those, um, that are in there that need to be corrected. So, uh, I suppose I could. Pass those along to the authors for correction. I don't know what process, um, council would like, but I think those need to be corrected. And, uh, finally, you know, from my, my understanding, what I heard is that the SEJC. When it's a twenty twenty iteration of the SEJC did not see this document. It currently on the title page or second page, it says developing collaboration with. The twenty twenty SEJC. I, I think it'd be more accurate to say developed after consultation with. Um, or developed after collaboration with, just so there's no confusion around that point. So those are the three, three changes that. I propose in the motion.
Thanks very much. Vice, uh, Councilmember Nathan, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, would you be, um, accept a friendly amendment that we, um, uh, acknowledge receipt? Rather than accept the, the report to eliminate any ambiguity about. What we're doing with respect to adopting the recommendations that we're. We're taking in this information. We've got a lot more to do with it, uh, before we take next actions.
That's fine with me.
Thank you.
So acknowledge the, uh, the council acknowledges receipt of the report. So acknowledge the, the council acknowledges receipt of the report. With the most, uh, three modifications. As described. I don't know how that strikes others. Do you say, okay?
That's why some member nation second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
Councilmember Nation?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much, Dr. Shelley. Thank you so much, Assistant City Manager, for working on this and we look forward to seeing an updated version here shortly. Have a good evening. All right, we'll move on to item number eight, two, with the presentation on the annual fire prevention measures on Albany Hill. Go ahead and get a staff reported and this for information only for the recommendation. Go ahead, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our interim Fire Chief, James Boyo, for the presentation.
Thank you. I'm muted if you're speaking.
I apologize. Still navigating the. Technology side of presentations. I apologize.
After 15 months, you don't have to learn so. I'm just messing with you.
Are you seeing the, my, the presentation with the notes or the full?
You're still navigating. We'll wait on you.
There we go. Are we seeing it now?
No, you're not sharing your screen.
Oh, okay. I apologize. Sorry.
Take your time. There you go.
All right. Okay, and I'm sure you're seeing my notes right now with the presentation.
Yes, go ahead, please.
All right, very good. Good evening, Mayor Gary and council members. Albany Fire appreciates the chance to give a brief informational presentation regarding fire prevention on Albany Hill. The past, present and future actions. And that we're going to cover the history of fire prevent, prevention efforts, our vegetation management, share our guiding documents and procedures. Our cross department, uh, cross department collaborations, community partnerships and collaborators. Our community outreach efforts and current, future fire department plans. And then we'll have time for questions at the end. So this kind of broke down the history into two different sections here from 2003 to 10 and then 10 to present. 1994 was the first recollection that we have of conducting hill patrols. In 1996, we added Knox box locks to the gates at Hillside Taft and 535 Pierce to make it easier. For us at the fire department to access those gates. As a result of multiple fires in 2005, the fire department personnel spent multiple days. Removing brush, grasses and vegetation, vegetation to recreate the fire roads and trails. That were at the top of Albany Hill, eventually connecting them down to Pierce Street. And improving the gate access to the top of the tap. So it was easier to get fire apparatus onto that fire road. Personnel spent off duty time and used personal equipment to get this done. And this, uh, this really. Really drove home our situation that we had on the Albany Hill after all the major fired, uh, major wildland fires where we responded to. Back in 2004 and 2005. In 2006, Chief McGinn started our, using a shelter belt to remove grasses. And bring the fire roads down to bare minimal earth. Conducting the mowing every year, 15 feet from each side of that fire road to get the grasses down within three inches. And we were doing this about three weeks to a month prior to July 4th. We were getting those grasses down to the lowest level. We could as close to July, July 4th. And getting the most we could out of the mowings that we were doing. We were doing this on a $5,000 budget at the time out of the fire department budget. Also in 2006, we received our first brush engine, 2180, carried 243 gallons of water, hose, hand tools and a pump. And that allowed us. Throughout the hill. We ended up using that, that very year on a, one of our more significant wildland fires there on the hill. From there, we continued with the vegetation management with shelter belt and again, still on just the $5,000 per year. And in 2000, 2011, the work began on what would become the 2012 Albany Hill Master Plan. In 2016, the city manager, Penelope Leach at the time, was able to secure, measure our funds to provide vegetation management on the hill. And during that time, the Parks and Rec Director oversaw the funding and contractual obligations. While the fire department was tasked with overseeing the vegetation, cutting and removal. In 17, Margot Cunningham was hired as the Albany Hill Vegetation Management Coordinator. Margot is essentially taken over vegetation management on the hill with fire department oversight and approval as it relates to fire prevention pieces. In 2019 to 20, we worked with Public Works to get a dry, a dry fire hydrant at the top of the fire road. On the top of the hill and a fire department connection for us to be able to pump water. Up the what, what we call wet, dry standpipe all the way up to the fire hydrant itself. We call it wet drives because we have a check valve. So the pipe is filled almost completely with water. And when, when we hook up to this, we can have 1,500 gallons a minute of water to that hydrant. Within 15 seconds of connecting our pumps to that, to that line itself. As recently as May of this year, we conducted familiarization training with Berkeley's Fire Department on off-road vehicles throughout the hill. We got their type three and their, and our type six throughout the hill on all the roads. And we've been working, recently been working with Public Works and East Bay MUD to install an additional hydrant at the top of Taft. On the circle next to the fire department connection. And it sounds like we're, we should have that installed within the next three to four months. Here's an example of the vegetation management on the hill. You see the creekside, this is a creekside at the end of the fire road. Looking towards the Madison entrance. You can see the, the grasses are a little bit long right now, but they've been taken care of. And the crossroads is an example of what the grasses now look like at the creekside trail. The crossroads is a really good example of what vegetation management goals we, we are looking for. You can see there's still the grasses, but all of the big. All the big vegetation are the dead and down or any jackpot type situations are, are gone. So it's very difficult for. A fire that starts there to get up into the canopy and, and through ladder fuels and, and create a devastating fire. Here is vegetation management on the hill west slope. This is dead and down on the left. And western mid slope dead and down. These are the, the, the piles of fuel that we are working to get rid of right now. Captain Weitzel, who's managing this program for the fire department. Myself and Margot Cunningham met last week to identify and prioritize areas like these for, with, for removal. And we're currently working with the property owners. This is on the, should be noted, this is on the private property area. Some of it is part of the HOA. And some of it is part of the Golden Gate Hills Development Company. So we're working with them to, to get these removed. Some of the guidance that we utilize for fire prevention, we use the California Fire Code 2019 Edition. These are specific to wildland type interface areas. We also utilize the Albany Municipal Code, Chapter 11, there's, uh, is the fire prevention chapter. And the chapter 18 for administrative nuisance abatement. And the 18 dash 1.6, section A subsection one is part of. That's the area that deals with the weed abatement and vegetation portions of that code. We utilize areas in the California Building Code to make sure we're doing the most fire resistant. Then we can, we can. Excuse me, that we can have done. We utilize the 2012 Albany Hill Creekside Master Plan. This is really the, the culmination of fire prevention and vegetation management, meeting habitat. Preservation. And then we also use our standard operating procedure 24 and that's our Albany Hill Patrol. This is, this is the, the procedure itself during fire season, that's declared by Cal Fire, we start patrolling the hill daily. And the daily hill patrol for us is, is driving and or hiking as many of the trails as we can. But we are going from Pierce up to Taft and from 535 Pierce. To the end of the trail, which is near where the, kind of the willows are, where it meets the Madison Access Trail. And we'll also check Jackson and the top of Taft for those areas. We do it twice a day. So I don't know if you've seen this or remember seeing this, but when we have the red fire. Weather days, we have the red flag flying outside of the front of the station as a reminder for folks that it's critical fire weather. And we will patrol the hill twice a day on those. This is part of the guidance that we send out with our weed abatement letters. And this is also what we give to the HOAs so they understand what we're looking for in the means of. Fire vegetation management principles. And some of our access points, we have Gate View. Which is a walk, walking trail. We can get fairly close with the engine and then we'll do progressive hose lations type operations to get. The hoses to where the fire might be. Hillside Avenue, there's an access gate there that has one of the Knox locks that only we have a key for. We can get our type six through there. At the top of Taft, the fire road gate there, you can see on the left-hand side of that gate is where our fire department connection is that. We utilize to, to supply the fire hydrant. Right now, we're, our water source is mid slope on Taft Avenue. And we just lay a five inch supply hose up to where this is and then pump into. This FDC to give a water supply up to the engines and folks are at the top of the hill. And then we have Taft and the Jackson Trail head there. Both of these pictures are also great examples of the type of fuel. Management that we're looking to do on the top of the hill. You can see that there's no lateral fuels that are close to the, the trees. A lot of the understory is taken care of as far as the grasses. And there's not a accumulation of dead and down. And then we have the Pierce Street Fire Road Trail. This is from Pierce Street up the slope that goes, this goes to the top of Taft. And then the Creekside Fire Trail. This is looking towards the west. And then we have our access gate of 535 Pierce Street and the Creekside Fire Road from that gate. Heading towards Madison and the Occupational Center for the Blind. Here's our Jackson Street access and then our, our Madison Street. So cross departmental collaboration, none of, we, we, we wouldn't be able to do this work without the help of the whole team. So with Public Works, Public Works is the biggest collaborator to Albany Fire's prevention efforts on the hill. Our natural areas coordinator, Margot Cunningham handles the bulk of the vegetation management contracts. Direction to contractors ensures our efforts cause the least amount of disruption or damage to the ecosystem on the hill. Margot's taking the lead with dealing with the eucalyptus decline and saving the monarch habitat. The Albany Master Hill Plan is our primary document when making vegetation management decisions, as mentioned before. And it should be noted that the first document, the 1991 document, didn't have information about vegetation management or, or even mention. Fire prevention on the hill. And during that 2011 process, Fire Marshal Crudo at the time. Was heavily involved and we came back with a document that we're working on still today. We also work with community development. They are building code enforcement or planning and development portion. And they're utilizing the California Building Code, the Albany General Plan for 2035. And there's also the zoning map that they'll utilize as well. Albany Police Department also patrols the hill weekly and are instrumental in maintaining a fire safe environment. Specifically by providing a presence on the hill with the encampment. Mitigation. Historically, many of the fires on the hill are related to encampments so occupants can cook and stay warm. Starting 2014, they were able to use their dual sport bikes to access other areas that the hill more, more easily for more frequent patrols. And it should be noted that when we're doing these patrols ourselves in Albany PD, is we encounter a great deal of our citizens, property owners. It provides that presence. And it also is informational from that. We do a lot of fire prevention education up on the hill during those sessions. And then Albany PD also helps with arson, arson investigations if it's deemed to be a arson type fire. Neighborhood Services helps us with the homeless outreach and engagement and encampment mitigation. So when we have situations. Like you see here with a tent and a tree house and, or excuse me, a tree house tent. In one of the, one of the oaks on the Madison Creekside area. We have to, we have to enforce our, our codes and the no camping and such. And it is a fire, again, a fire hazard because of the past history. So we will utilize Neighborhood Services to help us with those, getting people resources, a place to stay. And also making sure their property is taken care of until they can. Claim it if they're not able to take it with them. Our community partnerships and collaborations. So we've, we've worked with friends on the Albany Hill, friends of Five Creeks. CERT and then also the private property owners on the hill, the Golden Gate Hill Development Company, Gate View, HOA, Bridgewater HOA. And the Bayside Commons. Friends of Five Creek and Friends of Albany Hill have been. Great resources for making sure that we're doing the best we can to maintain the beauty of the park and the reason that people go up and enjoy it. And have been great collaborators. CERT helped us with our evacuation drill we had, we did two years ago. Simulating what might be a wildland fire from the hill heading into the neighborhood. So CERT was instrumental in helping to coordinate that with their time. Community outreach. This is our example of one of our abatement letters. This is the one that was set out this year. We have our critical fire signage. So people understand when they enter, these are at all of the entrances on the hill. A person will encounter, encounter one of these signs. The evacuation drill that was just mentioned. And then we have our, our fire safe landscaping resources. This website's great because it gives you a lot of options for beautification and fire safety. For your, for your house, if you live along that area, along the hill or on the hill itself. And then our current and future plans. Currently, we're, we're coordinated training with mutual aid departments. So Berkeley came in. Trained with us. El Cerrito and Richmond Fire in the process, were in the process of setting training up with them. We installed the additional high fire hydrant at the top of. Taft Fire Road and we're just getting ready, like I said, three to four months from now to have the hydrant installed at the top of Taft itself. We continue fire code and fire prevention enforcement efforts. We're collaborating with regional resources experiencing similar eucalyptus issues like we're seeing. So East Bay Regional Parks, Berkeley Fire and LC Radio Fire are all dealing with the same types of situations. The other current work that we've done with the trees is, again, we've done the assessment. We're waiting on that, the final, final report. And some of our future work is going to be the assessment of fuels and their, their hazards. And proposed treatments on the city and private lands. That's being done through Wild, Wildland Resource Management. We're going to do any thorough forest structural inventory of Albany Hill to develop short and long-term plans. For maintaining monarch butterfly habitat, habitat, forest health, managing fuels and public safety. There'll be more monthly mowings of the grasslands to main, maintain those, those at a low level so they don't. There'll be more monthly mowings of the grasslands to maintain those, those at a low level, so they don't turn into. Ladder fuels and get into the canopy causing a large fire. There's going to be some removal or and pruning of dead wood from about 10 trees. That pose an immediate safety concern along roads and trails. And we're beginning peer review of the tree assessment report and figure out strategies for removing. In stages eucalyptus that will not or likely will not recover. There'll be, again, there'll be more coming. On that from Margot Cunningham, once we get the final reports. We're also going to be looking to update the 2012 Albany Hill Plan. That's going to aid us in, in getting, being more eligible, being eligible for more grants with a current master plan. Seeking to apply for the grants. Continue with the vegetation management projects. And review and implement vegetation management suggestions for the Albany, from the Albany Hill Tree Study. So this, this is a picture of our Fire Road Hydrant at the, at the Fire Road on the top of the, the hill. And this is a up plus picture of what the FDC looks like. And then these are, this is the engine, so the one on the left is 2180, that's our type six here in Albany. That's our brush rig that we utilize for the hill, the hill checks. And then this is Berkeley's Type Three Engine. It's, it's quite a bit taller and larger, it carries more water, it carries 500 gallons of water and has a bigger pump, so it can pump more water. These made it all throughout all areas of the hills and all the fire roads. So from Pierce up to the top of Taft. And then also from 535 Pierce to the end of the creek. Alright, questions?
Thank you so much Chief for the presentation. And so I'll go ahead and bring it up to the council if you want to have any comments or questions regarding the presentation, again, this is for information only. Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yeah, thank you Chief Boyto. Thanks to all those current and past that have proactively brought us to this point. It's much better state than the situation was 20, 30 years ago, continual improvements. I guess a few questions and I'll, I'll line them up and then you can answer them if you need me to, to clarify by all means ask. The, the hillside entrance when I was walking around up there, it looked like not the road from the entrance to the first intersection, but. From that road to where the signs are. It was quite a cross slope and it looked like somebody drove across it with dual, dual. You know, dual rear rig, because uphill side was, uphill side was pretty chewed up. Which looked like it might have been alarming for whoever drove across that. I don't know if that was one of the rigs that drove through there. But if that particular road is used, it might, well, I guess I'm curious, do you think it needs a little grading for side slope to bring it down slightly to make it a little, a little less. Alarming to cross, just based on some of the evidence that I saw. I think you mentioned that the California Building Code. Has, if I understood, and I may not have, has different requirements for buildings that are. At a wildland interface, and if that is the case, I understand that maybe Albany. Deploys those requirements for new construction projects in that area. Curious to hear about that more, I don't think I've heard that before. And then finally, and, and we talked about this. Through email, but I think it'd be interesting for the rest of the council to hear more about that easement. That exists along the south side of the creek, all the way from Adams through to Pierce. Which is not currently passable. But I, I would like council to hear about that and what advantages. Of having that might be, and you did mention a concrete ball that I couldn't think of in my memory, that is one of the barriers to. Essentially using, utilizing that for better access. So happy to repeat any of those as you see fit.
For the, for the hillside, I believe those tire tracks are from our type six, so the smaller engines. Kind of making it right from the main fire road to see if we could pass those areas. Possibly doing some grading there in the future might be worthwhile, but I think right now. Funding should be primarily funneled towards getting rid of the fuel, the high, high levels of. Dead and down fuels in some of the areas of the hill. For the, for the building code, we. We're doing some investigation right now on what areas that we can declare a local critical fire hazard area. And then that would kick into, that would kick in. Some specific building and, and vegetation management rules for wildland interface areas. So what they call the wooie area. So that would, that will have some, some additional research by myself. Fire Inspector Tom Peters and Jeff Bond as well, to, to see what we, what we have at our disposal. To change our municipal code or adopt the, you know, adopt those sections of the fire code. And building code to make sure that we're doing the best we can to make homes as resilient as possible. And then the, from the. It looked like a fairly difficult, it was a pretty substantial wall and I. I drove down there today and it looks like you were talking about potentially the south side of the Occupational Center for the Blind. And there's a, a road there that goes through a gate.
Yeah, actually no, I was talking about on the, the map and you might have to bring up the slide. That shows the map, there's easement. It's basically a top of bank of the south bank of Sumeria Creek. And it goes along the north side of the Orientation Center for the Blind. You know, along the creek, so that part of the Orientation Center is currently behind a fence, but it's just grass. So that would require bridging Middle Creek. Which is, you know, there, there's a crossing in Middle Creek with the easement there.
That, that area, I would, it would require some, a, a bridge paving, an agreement with the state. I think that's part of the area that the. Occupational Center for the Blind uses for training. As far as, as managing and learning to manage. As people are losing their sight and such, so I, I. But if there was a way for us to get it access from that side, that would be a quicker, a quicker response for us. Than going down to Pierce and through two gates and then down a road, so. It's probably, I would say it's, everything is worth looking at. I just don't know from the financial side and the easement and getting permission. From the state to be able to build on there and what it'll take, but. I think, I hadn't really thought about, about that before, so it's worth looking into.
Yeah, I am still curious the status of that easement, because if it's an easement and presumably it comes with some rights to do something that. That would not necessarily be subject to state approval or not, I mean, obviously we don't want to work with the state, but if we're talking about. Fire safety and that's getting to an area that, that's hard to reach otherwise down in there, there was a lot of. A lot of vegetation right behind the center there. So anyway, it's just an idea.
Yeah.
Putting out, and then I guess. So it sounds like in the wooie, to the extent that zones can be found to be within that. With respect to the building code, that that could bring in both short-term requirements, I presume in terms of the buildings themselves. It would only bring in requirements that would kick in upon a remodel.
That's my guess, I would have to defer to, to community development.
Sure.
Answer and, and yes, but it would specify the types of materials, the frequency of which they have to be maintained and those types of. Those types of things is my understanding.
Great, thank you, and then finally, I'm. Excited to hear that the HOAs are, are engaged and. Sounds like more than willing to move forward if you appropriate time and plans are, plans are in place to do it right.
Yes, yes, they, they are, they, we've been in contact with all of, all three of them, actually all four counting. All three HOAs and the, the property. The Golden Gate Hill Development Company as well. And everyone's engaged, we're, we're really trying to time it with. Learning more about the, the habitats that are there to make sure that we're not going to. Do any harm that we can't change. But there were areas where there is dead and down that we've identified last week, myself, Captain White soul and Margot. Went up and looked at that area specifically, so we have some areas that we, what we call flagged. For them to start working on getting materials removed.
Great, thanks, yeah, and I guess my final comment would be if, if information about that easement could be brought back. To council, I think that's something that would be useful for us to at least know what that easement consists of.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Nathan, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I'm just curious. In terms of. Major projects and funding to do them. How? It, it, it sounds as though you're identifying dead and down and removing it as you find it. I'm curious with respect to the, to the public land. Whether we. Well, you, you said that we have this Albany. Tree vegetation master plan coming. When, by the way, do we expect that?
That is a question for, for Margot and Public Works, that's, that's their report that's coming and, oh, she's on.
Oh, there she is.
Yeah.
Hi Marco.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we're expecting it in a couple of weeks, the tree assessment, so that will greatly help us in. Figuring out a plan to what we're going to do with the trees and how they're doing. We do have, they did identify some that. Immediate removal and pruning, so we are going to get going on that.
Okay, good. You know, what I'm, what I'm getting at and interested in is whether we have. Sort of shovel-ready projects or how. How far we are from having shovel-ready projects that can be submitted for funding. As wildfire funding becomes, wildfire prevention funding becomes available from various sources. Hearing a lot about funding moving into the pipeline and I'm curious. How we, how far we are from being in a position to receive that.
Well, we're still working, well, we have to get the tree assessment and then we have these, the other studies that, that. Chief Boyto talked about. And so we need to get all our science in to see what, what we need to do. And then we'll go from there, we'll, we'll see what funding we can get at that point.
Okay, you know, the East Bay Regional Park District just got some significant, I think. In the range of $13 million. And, and I, from what I hear from, about their problems, they sound an awful lot like our problems, you know.
Yeah, yes, it's all similar and, and other, another complicating thing is that. It sounds like we're going to have to go through SEQA. For these, these removal projects, so that could take a while. So that's another complication.
Okay, what? Is that? Something we have not done in the past or what's the? It sounds like that might be something that was not otherwise expected.
Well, that, that would be, the details of that, you'd have to check with community development, but that's what they were researching. And that is something that, that's a consideration that we have to, to, to go through before we can do. It's not like we can just say, okay, identify all these trees and then we're going to remove them. We have to do it in a way that is. We have to do it through SEQA and, and get all our science in and then come up with a plan, so. It, it's not going to be immediate is what I'm saying, other than the immediate removals that I mentioned.
And those are exempt because of their size?
That I'm not sure about, you'd have to check with community development on that. We have Jeff Bond also on our Zoom, he's available to jump in, go ahead Jeff.
Good evening, council members, thanks for the opportunity to. Margot's correct, there's an emergency exemption, a statutory exemption in SEQA for emergency actions. And the, the types of things that we're envisioning doing in 2021. Would probably almost certainly fall into that category, so we can move quickly to address those immediate hazards. For the longer term projects where this might be a multi-year situation with habitat impacts on the butterflies. That, that emergency exemption may not be appropriate, we might need to do more thorough review. So we're, we're thinking about that and we would get that started so that when 2022, 23 and so forth rolls on. We're covered for, for any future. Mitigation actions that we decide that we need to do. In, in terms of earlier projects, that we're, we're talking about something that's a different scope than what was envisioned years ago. Albany Hill Master Plan and other planning documents, so. And there's, there's a, this is a sensitive environment, we, we all want to be protective of the butterflies in particular and, and other things as well, so. We're just trying to navigate the, the, the urgency of taking action. To protect the community with following the, the sometimes kind of cumbersome requirements of SEQA. And, and we think we can navigate that without delaying any immediate work.
Okay, has there been any? Any communication between the staff and the. The folks in the East Bay Hills who are trying to establish a joint powers authority. To deal with some of these, I think that they're looking at both. SEQA and funding issues to try to. You know, get a, a multi-jurisdictional approach. And maybe try to also get some, you know, efficiencies of scale when you're getting. This very high. Very expensive equipment into place, it can help if you're part of a bigger project, but are, has there been any contact on that?
I'm not familiar with a joint powers approach to, to the, the tree removal. I am looking carefully at what other cities are doing in terms of SEQA review. And it's pretty straightforward, it just takes a few months. It's, it's technically not that difficult, once we, once we get the science in and once we have a chance to do. Analyze the, the unique situation, the butterfly habitat, that the rest of the process is, is pretty straightforward. But I'll, I'll work with Margot and others in, in the fire department, Public Works Department to learn more about the joint powers authority.
Yeah, it's, I think it's the Oakland Fire Safe Council that is kind of leading the charge on that. But they've got people in Berkeley, Kensington, El Cerrito. All trying to figure out if there is a way to, to develop a coordinated approach. They don't yet have Albany on their list and. I think it might not be a bad thing for us to be part of it if it turns out to have some promise. For either funding or efficiencies of, of project implementation.
All second now, thanks for bringing that intel to us.
Thanks.
Mayor, you're muted.
I tried to tell you, you were muted, but I was muted.
Sorry, I have this cat running around, so I apologize. We have public comment, go ahead please, let him in, thank you.
Yes, this is Brian Martin, thank you for that report, I live at the base of Albany Hill on the east side. I had some questions I was hoping could be addressed by the, by staff and fire department. For the private land on the west side is what I'm mostly wondering about. That's great that some or maybe all the owners are working with the city to do something to manage vegetation, it wasn't clear exactly what or how much has been done yet, but. One question is what legal obligations do the HOAs and property owners have to do vegetation management? Or is their legal angle more of a liability reduction? Also, what agreements, it's, it's great if they're working willingly with the city, but you know, what if they're not? But basically, kind of what I'm, what I'm getting at. And what agreements, if any, do they have with the city to manage vegetation there? Has the city been doing some of the vegetation management on private land and if yes, with what funds? Also, last month, finally, last month, we heard in public comment at a city council meeting. Some residents of a condo complex on Pierce Street say their HOA hadn't budgeted for some. Of the capital expenses they thought might need to be spent to address the full danger represented by the vegetation. What have you heard from them about their ability to fund what needs to be done with vegetation management? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Next, please.
Hey, Madam Mayor, City Council is Jeremiah here. You know, what's the moral of this whole story? Right? Albany Hill is dangerous. There's a lot of dry brush. It's a fire hazard. Right? Common sense. And the other thing is that there's endangered monarch butterfly habitat, right? So it's a catch 22. We got to be careful about the monarch butterflies, but also the fire danger, right? So my solution is we need to get the fire department another fire truck because we only have two fire trucks right now, right? So we can only respond to so many emergencies at a time. Now, what is it? 20%? 30% of the fire department's calls are in the UC Village? And the UC Village doesn't pay Albany a dime, not even a penny for Albany Fire Department Services. Now, why is that? That's common sense messed up situation. So we need to push maybe at a two by two by two meeting that UC Berkeley needs to give Albany a fire truck or they need to start paying for the calls. Right? So that's a situation there that we need to fix ASAP. Now, as far as vegetation concerned, you want to spend millions of dollars on a contract for someone like Davey or some someone to go clean it up. Why don't we create jobs for the homeless people and have homeless people do some work and create jobs so they could be a part of society? Right? So this could be a win win situation. So we need to push UC Berkeley to start paying for their services. Okay, and Albany needs another fire truck. We only have two fire trucks. We can only respond to two calls at a time. So we got 20,000 people. We only have one fire truck per 10,000 people. Come on, you do the math. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your comment. Next, please.
Hi, Council. Again, this is Mark Grossman. This is a dumb question, probably, but I'm old enough to ask a dumb question. There was a statement made when I heard early report about this that a lot of the trees are suffering because the water table is very low on the hill. Was also mentioned that Fire Department now has the ability to spread water over the entire hill in case of a fire. And in case of a fire, we would dump hundreds of gallons of water on those trees. Why don't we dump the water on them now? Why don't we water them rather than waiting till they catch fire? I know that's not generally what's done and and Fire Department isn't the gardening department. But still, if we could put some water down and help those trees to survive, why not?
All right. Thank you for your comment. Next, please.
Hi, thank you for your report to the fire department person. I had just had a few questions. My first question is, are the types of plants that are growing near the buildings restricted or taken into consideration? I was walking there recently. I noticed there's rosemary. It looked like other high oil plants growing there. And I know some cities in the in the area, like I think Nevada, have a limitation on which plants you can grow and which ones you can't. And I think rosemary is one of them. I know it's growing all over Albany, but it's very highly flammable. So I was just wondering if there are any rules about the plants. And and I also like to suggest that the for partnerships, I'd like to suggest sort of following up with Jeremiah said that you reach out to the people who are experiencing homelessness, who may be looking for places to sleep and maybe have work with them. I don't know about hiring them, but working with them as one of the groups that you're working with. You said you're reaching out to community organizations, but it seemed to be all housed people. And I would like, I think that you should be considering everyone in the community. And then just to follow up on that, I'd like to encourage you to adjust some of the language in the document to respect to reflect a more respectful and mindful language. For example, instead of saying encampment, I would suggest saying something like tent community. We don't call those big houses encampments and the tent communities are where people live. Instead of homeless outreach engagement, I suggest engagement with and an outreach to those who are unhoused, to those who are experiencing homelessness. And I just and I'm very concerned about the whole ejecting people, the encampment mitigation, which sounds like it just means ejecting people from where they're living. And I'm wondering where they're supposed to go. There was I listened to a city council meeting in Los Angeles one recently because they were talking about camp communities and they were ejecting people. And one of the council members said, we're telling people where they can't be, but we're not telling them where they can be. And I would like you to take that. I'm hoping that's been taken into account. I know that you're trying to connect people's services, but there is no housing or safe housing. And so it's not so simple. Thank you. Thank you so much for your comments. Well, go ahead and bring it back. If you could, Chief, if you could address a few comments briefly, just address some of the questions and then we can follow up with any additional questions that need to be addressed afterwards.
Okay, we're again, I know we've we've said it multiple times as far as needing to wait for the reports to get back. That's super because we really don't know what the magnitude of the work is, in particularly on the in the private property areas with the HOAs. We do have, there are some funds that are being used to maintain the fire road that goes through the property of Golden Gate Hill Development Company. So there is monies, city monies being used to maintain our fire road and the clearing along that area. The vegetation, we we to my knowledge, we don't have any vegetation requirements yet other than it be maintained and not be considered a hazard or a safety issue. And then we can come in and deal with like a weed abatement or those types of actions and requests of the the property owners. And I'm trying to think, I apologize for the insensitive language that were on the slides in regards to folks that are experiencing homelessness. I I get how it could sound callous, so I do apologize about that. That's not what it was intended to be. And I can't remember all the questions. I tried to.
And we'll follow up. I please, public attendees, if you have additional questions, please feel free to reach out to, you know, city manager or city council members and or and or Jim, the interim chief, and we'll address them. Okay, so again, Jim, I would like to thank you for participating, definitely bringing this information to the council and to the public. And we look forward to hearing more as soon as we get the report.
Absolutely. Thank you very much and all the other departments that were part of this. It's a true collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll move down to line item 83, which is an overview of the Albany's American Rescue Plan Action Allocation. We'll go ahead and hear a report from staff.
All right, I guess that's me. So I do have money. Unfortunately, I don't think that I can go towards trees. And I, before I even start, I want to clarify that this is an ever changing and ever evolving program that you are going to see multiple times. In fact, I received an email at 8:20 tonight from the state of California giving me additional information about the funds. So I will add as much of that in here as I can. But please just know that some of this may change, you know, from now to when you see it again. So I will go straight into the presentation. All right. And are you just seeing the presentation?
Yes, I can see it too, but I see the presentation by itself.
Okay, all right. So the American Rescue Plan Act. The Albany is considered a non entitlement unit of the local government, often referred to in all of the documents as NEUs. It is a government serving a population of under 50,000. It is the money that is allocated to NEUs is apportioned by 2019 population estimates. It is distributed by the federal government to the states. California has a lot of money to allocate to NEUs. Albany's current allocation is 4.7 million. That may go up. It won't go down. Allocations can't exceed 75% of the budget in effect as of January 27, 2020. But the email that I just received indicated that the NEUs that they had heard from, no one's allocation exceeded that 75% threshold, but they hadn't heard from everyone yet. If the money is not accepted by an NEU, it goes back into the pool. Once it's back in the pool, it is reallocated to the rest of the the remaining NEUs. And so the allocation could go up until it would equal 75% of our budget. This is nowhere near 75% of our budget, and I highlight out that many people are going to decline the funds. So the email that was just sent out indicated that the first distribution should come out within the next week or so. We are receiving 50% of the allocation this round and then the other 50% in a year. The amounts can be used for qualifying expenses that the city has made after March 3, 2021. It must be appropriated by December 31, 2024. And the funds must be used by December 31, 2026. Now, the Treasury guidance, which is very long and is still only interim, again, it may change, but it indicated that they're trying to do this in two tranches, specifically so that cities can, you know, see how the pandemic evolves and see, you know, what needs that the community has over time. They're they really don't want you to allocate or anyone to allocate 100% of that 4.7 million or the NEU allocation right away because they want to see what needs are there right now. Clearly, you know, there are needs, but what about in a year from now or in two years? What will the community's needs be then? So this is going to be a very long process and it's going to come back to council multiple times as we go through this. There are a lot of reporting requirements around this money. Immediately, we are required to report to the US Treasury August 31, 2021 with any indication of how we might program the funds if we have any idea. And then going forward, we will be required to to report once a year to the US Treasury. This is different than the CARES Act funds that we received before. That was the the state of California acted basically as the trustee. So the city reported to the state and the state's really ultimately responsible. In this case, the city is responsible. Now, this money, the federal government has been very clear that this money qualifies a city for a single audit. A single audit is required when the city receives more than $750,000 in federal money in any given year. This is completed by the city's independent auditor. It is something that they know that they need to complete. We haven't had to do one in a number of years because we haven't hit that threshold, but this will put us over that threshold. And what they do is they pick one federal program and do an in-depth review of that program for the single audit. So what can we use the money for? There are four very specific things that we can use the money for. The first is public health and economic impacts. The funds must be either responding to the disease itself or responding to the harmful consequences of the economic disruptions. The CARES Act money, there were a lot of assumed uses. So, you know, they assumed that public safety was dealing with COVID. They assumed, you know, certain expenses were COVID related. For this money, we have to be able to justify it. We have to be able to identify the negative impact or the need. And we have to identify how the program or service that we use the money to fund addresses that need or negative impact. So some things that you can that qualify for this are COVID-19 mitigation and prevention, improvements made and steps taken to reduce the spread of the disease in public facilities, medical expenses paid, expenses to meet behavioral healthcare needs exacerbated by the pandemic, housing and homelessness services, grants to individuals or businesses. Normally, these grants with federal money must be made to people in qualified census tracts. But the American Rescue Plan Act opens that to hardest hit individuals. So there may be someone who wouldn't normally qualify for help, but if they can prove or we can prove that they were hit by the pandemic, then we can provide the funds. And while the city has to have made the expense after March 3, 2021, if we offer some program around this, it can bring utility bills, rent, whatever, you know, the program is. It can pay arrears to bring the person current. So even if the expense was incurred before March 3 by the person, the city can still pay it because the city's not cutting the check until after March 3. Now, a lot of this wording is pulled directly from the interim Treasury guidance. If there is at the end, when as we're talking, if there's something that council wants more information on, staff will need to do more work on that. That's basically this entire presentation is just explaining what, you know, the American Rescue Plan Act is, you know, what we have and some ideas for what council we're looking for guidance on what council really wants us to begin to. All right. So the second use is premium pay. This can be provided to essential workers such as healthcare staff, grocery and restaurant workers, janitors and sanitation workers, et cetera. The US Treasury guidance provides limits on how much can be provided. It's the greater, the lesser of $13 per hour additional, $25,000 total or 1.5 times the county's average wage. The gross that the person is receiving cannot exceed 1.5 times the county's average wage, which 1.5 times the county's average wage for Alameda using 2019 data is $136,731. So if someone was going to provide premium pay, the ARPA funds were going to cover. They couldn't exceed any of those. Now, this can be provided to government workers or other community essential workers through grants to businesses. So the third category is revenue loss. Revenue loss recovery may be used to cover eligible expenses for the provision of government services. It does not have to be directly related to COVID, but there are specific purposes that the Treasury guidance indicates. This is calculated on an annual basis, so this is another one of those things that will come back to council multiple times. Now, the base year for the revenue calculations is fiscal year 2019. So I basically I have to take the total revenue received by the city from all funding sources except for intergovernmental revenue for the year ending January 30, 2019. And then I have to compare what the city received in total revenue again across all sources at the end of the year, the calendar year, not fiscal year, in 2020, 2021, 2022 and 2023. Now, this may change. I know a number of organizations are telling the Treasury that they want it pegged on a fiscal year because it's a lot easier for community or for governments to do that. But right now, it is on a calendar year basis. Now, we cannot make any adjustments for law changes. Now, we cannot make any adjustments for law changes or or any like new taxes. We passed the during this time, we started collecting the Parks and Open Space Parcel Tax. During this time, the Wayfair decision changed, so the city started getting more sales tax revenue from from online sales than they were getting previously. And our property taxes were still increasing by a CPI adjustment. So my 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 first calculation of looking at, you know, fiscal year 2019 to December 31, 2020, it does not look like we have any revenue loss to to apply to this. But I'm going to do a little bit more research on it to see if if I'm missing something or if there's any revenue that I can exclude and come back. But at this point, it doesn't look like the city qualifies for using any of the funds under this category. As the slide says, the interim Treasury guidance suggests or includes these specific things that we could pay for with this money. This chart show is pulled directly from the Treasury guidance and kind of is a visual form of what the revenue loss calculation does. You look at the base year, you look at the black, the black portion of the lines is the actual revenue for the, you know, calendar year. And then the dark gray portion is what the revenue loss would be if you had a revenue loss. The provision provides for an expected increase from that base year. So that's what this chart shows. So the last category in the for the American Rescue Plan Act funds is investments in infrastructure. In the beginning, it was thought that it could only be used for broadband infrastructure. The interim Treasury guidance expands that to water and then also to sewer and storm drain with the idea that sewer and storm drain goes towards public health. So the city could use some of the funds to support sewer and storm drain projects. Things that you cannot use the money for. You cannot make additional payments to pension plans. If it does not, that doesn't, that prohibited expense does not apply to just the normal pension cost. This is you can't make an additional long-some payment. You can't contribute to financial reserves. You cannot use the money to offset or provide a reduction in tax rates. And you can't use it for debt service payments. Some cities have taken debt out to get them through the pandemic, and the federal government has basically prohibited them from paying back that debt with this. So those, while the contributions to the financial reserves, you can't use the funds directly or the pension payments, anything like that. The ARPA funds can be used for expenses that were already budgeted as long as they apply to one of the other four categories, which would free up money that in theory could be used for one of these things. But that's long, long out. So suggested uses. Staff have put together a handful of projects suggesting, you know, what we could use and which category it falls under and are basically at this point looking for direction from council for what you would like us to dig into a little bit more. Again, we should be getting half of our allocation, so 2.3 something million dollars shortly, and then another half in a year. So we are looking to see what sort of programs you would you'd like to spend the money on and or would like to have contribute. You'll see that obviously these amounts equal a lot more than our allocation. It doesn't have to fully fund a program. It can partially fund or contribute to funding a program. There are clearly some of these things that are already in our in our budget, like housing and shelter. So we could offer additional services or we could relieve some of the burden on the general fund currently for some of these things. There are some caveat to put in the staff report. While a grant program is something that we would love to offer, there are a lot of administrative issues. We don't have the staff to do it in-house, so we would need to see if we can find someone to administer that for us. We are still responsible for monitor for defending the program to the federal government. So even if we weren't administering it directly, staff would be responsible for basically monitoring the program and making sure that the consultant was using the money appropriately. So there are a number of different things that we would need to really dig into and come back to council with before any decisions were made. And again, we're not necessarily looking for any decisions right now. We're just looking for guidance in what you would like us to move forward in digging into further.
All right. Thank you, Heather, for your presentation. We'll go ahead and open it up for council for discussion. I'll start with Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I'm curious about the the proposal to use the the big chunk of this on the sewer for Brighton. I was under the impression that the sewer program, the funding for the sewer program was pretty well in place and that we're pursuing it pretty aggressively. We're doing it under court order. So it's a little, it was a little surprising to me to see that 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 was the big chunk that was recommended. What's what's the thinking there?
So again, this was one of the things that we aren't necessarily asking to fully fund a project with this sort of, you know, with this. It's just that's something that we could put the money towards. It would then free up other sewer funds to do other projects. And while we do have the money to do a lot of projects currently, we do have to do a sewer rate study to and potentially look at how we're going to fund future projects. So 4.7 million dollars is a lot of money. So if we, you know, can't find or, you know, are having any issues finding uses for this, we could, this is something that we could use it for.
Yeah, okay, I, you know, I'm I'm reluctant. I can see it as a backstop if we just really need something to be funded. And, you know, this is what we have that's shovel-ready and and works. But the only funds it would free up would be sewer funds, and we might move more quickly towards compliance with our consent decree obligations. But I don't know that that really, I don't know. It just doesn't seem like it it fits the bill of helping the community get over this 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 terrible period. I would lean much more, you know, earlier in the evening, we talked about lighting and crossing, making the the streets of Albany better lit and safer for people moving around. I see you shaking your head. That's not that's not not workable.
No, you have to, it has to very specifically address a COVID-related issue. And they say sewer and storm drain are COVID-related because they're public health.
So it's public safety is, public health is okay, but public safety is not.
Correct. Even even public safety salaries, they are very specific that you have to be able to prove that the person that you are using the money to fund had over 50% of their time dedicated to COVID.
Okay, well, it would be good to know a little bit more about the possibilities. If it's just sewer, it's just sewer. But, you know, it would be nice to know what what we have in our capital improvement plan and other, you know, possibilities, you know, the Albany Hill stuff, you know, again, that's not COVID-related directly. Although I think an argument can be made that our, you know, our public spaces are under 10 times the pressure that was anticipated pre-COVID. We just have so many more people and, you know, just so much more going on in those spaces that it does seem like there's, you know, an argument to be made that dealing with the influx of people into our public parks is something that we ought to be able to spend COVID relief money on. But maybe that's trying to, you know, push it too far. But I'd love to see what other, if sewer is our best bet, it's our best bet. But if there are other possibilities, I'd like to hear about them just because we do have these dedicated funds and we do have, it's like sewers are the one area where we don't seem to really need money. So it would be good to know about others. Thanks.
I think you, Heather. Thank you, Councilmember Mason. I'll jump in. I would like to see funding the grants for businesses and rental services. And how would we put together that criteria for residents that are, you know, behind? And I know the county has a rental kind of program where they're helping most residents, but there's a criteria. Most people, at least on my research, has not been able to receive those funds. So they're still looking for additional funds to help them as far as keeping them housed. As, you know, the county has their criteria, I'd like to see something happen in Albany where we put up a criteria for businesses or renters, property owners, that they could possibly tap into that money and to help them get back on their feet. And I think you brought that that up. So just defining the criteria on what that would look like, right? How would we, how would one apply and receive those funds? I would like to see something like that. Mental health is another place that I think we should really invest in, although our our population for people that are unhoused seem to be, you know, considerably lower than the bigger cities. But I think there still needs to be some of the money being distributed to, at least trying to figure out ways that we can use the money for mental health services as well. So those are just my things that I guess priorities that I think we should use the money for. And then I'll go to, I think, Councilmember Tideman is next.
Yeah, I generally agree with the skepticism about using for sewer. But to get to the questions, Heather, could you say anymore about what the Invisage way, if there was any money would be spent for that housing, shelter, rental assistance and for the local business support parts of that money?
Is Isabel still here?
Yes, well, I guess for homeless services, the money could be used for rapid rehousing, which is a shallow subsidy, but could be used over time, over time, like for a year to help someone who may not be able just yet to pay their own rent, but is working towards being able to. We could also continue to pay for the Albany House, which is the master lease, master lease house that basically houses four individuals who are experiencing homelessness. And we use that house for as a transitional, as a transitional housing. So that could also be another option.
And so to to make sure that's right, so the allowable uses, we understand them now, and I know it's always changing, includes, you know, shelters and supportive housing type stuff. That's, that's great to hear. Thank you. Yeah, I'd be very interested in, you know, increasing the amount we would give for that. I think it's been proven that homelessness is a growing problem here, and we can, we don't often get a huge amount of money like this to start big programs. So exploring, even establishing a new shelter and then eventually finding permanent funding for it would be great. But I'll keep the rest of my comments for later.
Sorry, Councilmember McQuaid, and then Vice Mayor Jordan.
Thank you. I'm going to have to switch screens in a few minutes, so don't think I'm leaving you all. I would say I agree with the comments so far that I've heard. My question is though about if we were to do a grant program or something, and obviously staff would still be involved, could that part of staff salary come out of disfunding? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yeah, I think of the items on the list, it seemed a rare opportunity to, for Albany to potentially have a shelter within the city ideally for those individuals who need that service. I think in terms of the backfilling rent, my vague understanding from general media articles is that the state is working on a program to handle that part, which if that is, if my understanding is correct, and if the state comes through, we suggest not necessarily putting money towards paying back rent because it's going to pick that up. But I don't know if there's an equivalent program for local businesses. So my focus would tend to be there. I think it's also a rare opportunity to do more in the mental health domain with the caveat, if I understood correctly, from the County Behavioral Health discussion, it sounds like they actually have funding to hire another response team for North County and then recruiting for it. They're just having to hold recruiting. So, but nonetheless, I think that's an area that could potentially use funding. I'm going to aim on the human resources. To Councilmember Mason's query about improving street safety, it's actually interesting nexus here with staff's proposal to use some of the funding, a relatively small portion of funding for green infrastructure on Marin. A project is currently being designed to repave Marin east from Cornell, I think, to the city limits. And it has a green infrastructure element, which would fit under the storm drain, I presume the storm drain funding, but that would be something that'd be interesting to research. And the value of that is that the Transportation Commission, in looking at that, what, there's been value engineering to that project because there's not enough funding for it to put in crossings on all four legs of the intersections. So the design proposal was to basically preclude crossing Marin on one side of each side street or one leg of Marin on each side street intersection, which didn't sit too well with the commission, I think, would sit too well with people in general, given a city that is one of those walkable in the state otherwise. So paying paying for the green infrastructure element might free up enough money to put in some of those other crossings that are otherwise missing due to value engineering. So and I agree, I think until we have the the rate study for the sewer replacement upgrade rehabilitation maintenance, it's, I can't really see putting much of this money towards sewer work. Those are my thoughts at this time, having mental health business and a little bit of green infrastructure. You know, none of us has talked about the the upgrade for the Civic Center. That is an interesting idea, certainly given what happened with the fires, the smoke over the last several years, having that as a, I guess, more hardened refuge, which I don't know if the upgrade that is proposed is civic biologics or the civic to would would help with particulates and toxic chemicals in the smoke from burning up of plastics and whatnot.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Jordan. With Councilmember Nacy, Joanna?
Yeah, it just occurs to me based on what Vice Mayor Jordan was saying that, you know, we may very well have people who have, and I know at least one long haul COVID person in Albany, we may have people have suffered damage to their lungs and who are going to be particularly vulnerable to wildfire, wildfire smoke during those events, which now seem to be a routine part of our lives, and that there may be reason to look into developing something that can provide shelter to those people during those events. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll go and speak. It's like we have one public comment and I'll bring it back to council. Go ahead, please. You're on mute if you're speaking, Jeremiah. No? Okay, you want to go ahead and go to Julie, please? Thank you.
Hi, thank you for this item. This is a huge amount of money and it would be so exciting if we could actually make a huge difference in people's lives and not spend it on little projects here and there that would help people who are housed, but instead look at something like doing, addressing, like it says, suggested million dollars towards homelessness and housing. And one thought I had is a drop-in center with a washer, a dryer, a shower could be part, extension of Albany Cares, but in a new building, that's a building just for that, a new larger location. I know that I'm not sure if the ping pong place is for sale and then I think there's another empty building on San Pablo, but I think that would be incredible. We could, that would also take into account the mental health services could have computer or internet access there, have devices that people could get snacks, people could charge their devices, people could get a break from just being on the streets and, and help them find transitional housing. So that would be, I feel like, number one. Number two would be providing a universal broadband or some way of accessing the internet and include devices and other sources of electricity throughout the city, because if you're living on the streets and you have a device, if you can't plug it in, it doesn't really do any good in the long run. And then another idea I had is direct cash transfers. And I sent some examples to the city council of that in case you hadn't ever heard of it. There are several cities, cities now that have, that have been doing that, Stockton, I know did several years ago, and it's just an amazing concept where you don't control what, how people are spending their money. You don't decide in advance what they need. You give them direct cash for a certain amount of time. It could be a pilot program and it makes a huge difference in people's lives to have control over where their money's going and they make really good decisions. And there's a lot of research that's been done on it. And I would really, really encourage you to look at that, especially with an emphasis on serving indigenous people and people of color. And I think that's what's happening in New York City, Oakland, Stockton, and other places that were listed in the links that I sent you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Looks like we have one more. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. It's Jeremiah here. So, yeah, I'm actually pushing a homeless person that sleeps in their car right now with my car. You know, I think that this money could be well spent on certain things. I don't know, spending it on city staff is great. I mean, city manager already makes $200,000 a year. I mean, city staff has a lot. So I think this money could be spent, you know, COVID, this money is supposed to be for COVID situations, right? So what, what happened with COVID? Everybody lost their jobs. Nobody has any money. So some sort of stimulus and this homeless thing, the, the shelter is a great idea, but where are you going to put it? Where's a homeless shelter going to be in Albany? Right? So how about Pierce Street, now warehouse next to Public Works? It's always on Craigslist for, for lease for $5,000. Now Albany Care spends $4,000 a month with Berkeley Food and Housing to house one homeless person in the Travelodge. $4,000 a month for one homeless person in a hotel, when you can lease a whole entire warehouse for 5,000 and house what, 20, 50 people in there? I mean, it's great about getting this money, but it's, it is how we spend it, right? So the best thing to do with this money is to do more homeless services, to fund this laundry program, to fund a shower program so homeless people can smell clean and be clean, which is mental health. You know, I just see a lot of procrastination in this city council this year. I see a lot of negligence in the city council this year. I see a big, huge inability to take action in the moment. I mean, what have we accomplished? It's been a whole year so far and we're going to take a break next month.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
In the moment and start making a change. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeremiah. All right, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the council. Let me just double check that there no more. Nope. Okay. And Councilmember Tiedemann and then we'll wrap it up. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I mean, it seems like we're all fairly in agreement about what things to explore, which I think is great. I wanted to add to the discussion of rental assistance. And apologies, I usually have reviewed the fine text of these sorts of things by now, but a builded path last week that ups the amount that the state is providing rental assistance from 80% to 100%, uses federal funding, extends the eviction moratorium till the end of September. I'll be the first to say it's really hard to know, you know, what's going to be enough. I've tried to predict this sort of thing and it's really hard. So I think it'd be great if staff, you know, in following up on all of our consensus to look at homeless issues and housing issues, if there is need rentals that we can meet with this. But, you know, in the service going to the highest impact thing, and if the state has actually taken care of this to some extent and, you know, stepped in, which I applaud them for doing finally, then we can make the most impact with this, I think, around homelessness services and then some of the other things we mentioned tonight.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Tiedemann. Thank you, Heather, for presenting this to us. I know as things change, you will continue to keep us updated along with the city manager. So thank you so much for this presentation and we look forward to seeing Vice Mayor Jordan. One minute?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about the direct cash transfer, sort of the universal income approach. Would that, is it conceivable I could fit in to this? I mean, I'm not weighing in on whether we should do that or not, but if Heather has a first clause on whether her read of the treasury rules in the rim would allow such thing?
So again, it has to meet those two criteria. You have to point out a need and explain how the need, how these funds would address that need. So you have to put qualifications on it that directly related back to either COVID or the economic impact from COVID. So potentially, if you said, you know, you, they proved that their job was lost because of COVID or something like that, in theory, by the way, Molly, you're probably going to have a lot more work after we narrow this down a little bit, as a lot of the explanations are, you know, here's the treasury guidance, it's very vague, talk to your attorney. And so no matter what we do, it's going to take a lot more digging in to kind of determine and, you know, make sure we're addressing those two qualifications.
Yeah, so that sounds like high overhead for, for everybody in terms of the direct, as most of the universal income approaches are not. I mean, there, there is, well, actually, I don't even know if they have a need base part to them, but the need base isn't so fine. It's proved to us you lost your job because of COVID. I mean, that gets pretty elaborate.
Right. You've gone past the universal at that point. You, there are qualifications. It is not universal.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you.
Sorry, I'm on my iPad, so I'm struggling to find all the buttons. Heather, did, did you get enough from us to move forward?
I think so. I have grants for businesses, grants for rental relief, mental health and homeless services.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure we had actually done our job. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Heather, for your time and we look forward to seeing a report soon. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and move to line item number nine, which is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and get his report. City managers, go ahead.
I can, go ahead, Lizzie. Problem. Good evening, City Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor. The resolution for you confirms the annual special assessment list for delinquent residential garbage bills and authorizes the delinquent charges to be placed on the county tax rolls. For health and safety reasons, waste management is required to continue regular weekly residential collection even when accounts are unable, or even when waste management is unable to obtain payment for past due bills. In 2013, council passed an ordinance to authorize collection of delinquent garbage bills by placement on the Alameda County tax rolls. Accounts that were over 90 days past due in January of this year received four delinquency notices from waste management and a final request for payment from the city. Unpaid balances under $20 are not included on the list and multifamily and commercial properties are exempt from this process. Once approved, the finance department will send the list to the county and the amount will be placed on the property tax bill. If the bill is paid in full, the assessment will not remain on the property. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions about the process.
Thank you so much, Elizabeth. Anyone have any questions from the council? Go ahead, Vice Mayor Jordan, and then Councilmember Tiedemann.
Well, we conferred about this by email, so I know the answer, but I think it's useful for, to put out in the public. Why are, and it's not all multi-residents, it's multi-residents for residences per property, I think, and commercial, why are those not subject to this process?
So I think there are many reasons for this. The most basic one is that in the municipal code, it just says that this process applies to residential accounts. I believe the reason that is, is because there's a state law that requires that residential properties, I don't know why multifamily above four units does not count as residential, but multifamily under four units and single family residencies must have weekly trash collection to avoid nuisance situations and public health and safety concerns. And if waste management is, or whoever the hauler is, is unable to recoup the costs of collecting trash, we could run into a sticky situation. So I believe that was the intent of the ordinance. And also, the way we've been doing it, I think, like we said, since 2013, and if it's something we need to change in the future, we can look into it.
I might be able to answer based on my waste management agency board service that it appears that single family is defined in state law as four residences or fewer on a property, which is the kind of definition only a bureaucrat could love. But it is what it is. Is, is waste service to properties with five or more residences and commercial not required?
I think it's required, but technically the hauler may pause service if bills are not being paid, or the properties themselves can pause service, whereas residential accounts, as you mentioned, under that definition cannot pause service unless it's a vacation hold for approximately six weeks at max.
Oh, that sounds like more of a disaster to pause service for a building with more than four residences than a house. Anyway.
I also think part of the reason would be that if there were a large multifamily building or a commercial property that was not paying its bill, it would probably be easier to track down payment than a long list of that definition of single family residencies.
Or other mechanisms. Yeah. So maybe waste management as an answer on this. Some. Anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
I just wanted to know, is there any sort of stopgap for people who can't make this payment?
We did send the list of, the final list of residences on the special assessment list to our Albany Cares program, and I believe they conducted outreach to individuals who potentially were unable to pay. I do not know the outcome and I'm not sure that would be shared with me, but I believe they looked into it. We do have a senior discount, a 20% discount for seniors, and we do have a discount for those who generate small amounts of trash, but we don't have a low income discount at this time.
Awesome. Thank you. Good to know that someone reached out and maybe low income discount, something to explore in the future. And just to follow up on that a little bit more, do you know, is the amount of people on the roll this year higher than in previous years? Are we maybe seeing, have we seen any spike of this during COVID, possibly because people are at work or anything like that?
Just by looking at the length of the list, I didn't actually compare the numbers, but based on what I was able to fill from the template from last year into the template for this year, it was only a difference of about five accounts, if I'm remembering correctly. So I, I don't believe there was a spike due to any reason.
Being more long than I am, I did actually do a merge between last year and this year. And surprisingly, the, the total amount in arrears was less over the last year than the previous year. So, you know, I don't know if that's courtesy of Care, Albany Care reaching out. And I don't know, you know, I don't know, but it's less, which surprised me. I was also wondering, you know, if, if a lot more addresses or parcel numbers came into play and there were not. And I looked at, you know, was it new parcels that came into play or mostly parcels that had been in arrears the previous year? And it was mostly parcels that had been in arrears the previous year. So there was no evidence that I got find in the data for a spike due to COVID much to my amazed, but that's why I'm a scientist, is I can be amazed by reality.
Right. And I'll just add to that with one small anecdote. There are a few accounts on there that I've heard anecdotally. The residents just choose to pay their garbage bill this way so that they don't have to worry about updating their credit card information as that changes. So that may also come into play when you see the same account on there every year.
Thank you. Councilmember McQuaid, hold on one sec. Can I get a motion that we move the time till I can say it? Let's go to 11.
Second.
To make sure that we're in line. All right. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nation?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid, did you have your hand up?
No.
No. Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and it looks like we have a public comment. And it looks like we have one. Go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, that was going to be my point. I hear this every year, this whole garbage bill thing put on the city. And, yeah, is, is it the same people every year? I mean, just got finished saying that someone's doing this over and over and over. So like, what's the problem? I mean, are they taking advantage of the situation? Or do they really need help paying their garbage bill? You know, maybe it's a social justice issue if someone can't afford their garbage bill. I mean, obviously, it seems like a great way to pay your garbage bill, right? The city's just going to pay it every year. But where does this money come from? What part of the budget is this? And I mean, the last agenda item, we're trying to figure out what to do with all this COVID money. Maybe this could be something we use with the COVID money, right? Because a lot more people might not have money right now to pay their garbage bill. I, I'm not looking at the list right now, but is it more this year than there's been in the past years? Possibly there could be an increase because of COVID. People lost their jobs, things like that. But nobody should have to live with trash. I mean, my dad owns a condo on the 555 Pierce Street and one of the tenants, they're not allowed to dump their trash at times because the garbage chute is full and the tenants are required to keep the trash in their home. And nobody should have to live with trash. So. And nobody should have to live with trash. So, you know, I, I, I make a motion to approve this and pass it and get this garbage and get these bills paid. You know, and just whoever keeps doing this, we need to figure out why and possibly give them some help. And not getting anybody in trouble, but just offer resources. Thanks.
Thank you so much for your comment. Go ahead and bring it back to council. Is there any further discussion or can I get a motion so we can go ahead? Councilmember Tiedemann, go ahead.
I was gonna move unless there was any other comment. So I move that we adopt resolution number two thousand twenty-one dash seven-four.
All right. A second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Nathan?
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to clarify if I made for the commenter that the city's not paying these bills, you're going on their property tax rolls. So it's a lean against their property, just to be clear.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Jordan. Thank you so much, Elizabeth, for your presentation. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go to item number ten, unfinished business. We have the designation of city council member to provide public comment regarding the proposed Albany Village graduate student housing project. We'll go ahead and get a report by Jeff Bond, I believe.
Good evening again, mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity that this evening I'll give the very brief staff report and then answer any questions you might have. As you know, and as you've discussed in recent meetings, UC Berkeley is currently undertaking a planning process for a new graduate student housing project at University Village, the northeast corner of Jackson Street and Monroe. This would have something in the neighborhood of four hundred units of housing totaling, again, in the neighborhood of eight hundred and twenty-five beds. The target population for the project is graduate students, single graduate students, first-year graduate students, and the project would be developed and managed under an agreement with a private developer company called American Campus Communities. You've discussed this on a couple of occasions. On April nineteenth, you held a study session both on this project and on the long-range development plan, which is a, a parallel planning project the campus is going through. That time you set up a subcommittee of council members, Tiedemann and Nathan, who met with campus officials last month. And in addition, in May, at your May third city council meeting, you discussed and approved a letter to go to the campus regarding rent increases at UC Village. So the purpose for this evening's agenda item is to give you an opportunity to designate one of the, one of you, if, if any of you are interested in attending virtually, I believe it will be the UC Regents meeting, which is tentatively scheduled well, the meeting is scheduled for July twenty-first and twenty-second. And it's our understanding that the Regents' consideration of approval of the, the housing project will be on that agenda. So this is an opportunity for you to select someone to represent the city council at that Regents Board meeting. I'll pause there and be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Jeff. Go ahead and open it up for council, Councilmember McQuaid. Go ahead.
Thank you. I was wondering if we could get a report back from the meeting that you had with UC staff that the council members had?
I'll, I'll defer. I don't know if Councilmember Tiedemann or Councilmember Nathan wanted to to answer that, or you'd like me to do it.
It, it was mostly factual information, which you're probably best suited to, to provide Jeff Bond. Although I would highlight two areas. One is that they indicated in response to a question about, you know, there's a sign that says no through traffic. And the, the school is being built oriented to Jack, Jackson Street, and so it's pretty clear there will be people who come in and if they, if they obey the signage, will all be turning around. And it's gonna be kind of chaotic, would be at least my, my perspective of it. And we asked about that, and the response was they, they had absolutely no idea. It didn't appear that anybody had really looked at the issue of vehicle flow. And that I think is something, and they did promise to get back to us about it, but of course, we probably need to pester them to get some further response on that. The other, another issue had to do with the the parking, that they're building a lot more parking than they expect to need. And we brought up, they say that only a very small percentage of Village residents use a car, but they're still, they're building a lot more than they think they're going to need. And we suggested that they consider reviewing, you know, taking another look at that. And finally, there was some discussion of re-okeing the, the Creek area for the, the benefit of the monarchs. So that from my notes, Jeff, those were the, the key issues that, and I don't know if, if Councilmember Tiedemann has more, or if, if you'd like to fill in a little bit more.
That was a good summary. I don't have my notes in front of me, unfortunately, but it was, you know, mostly just a deep dive into what the project will look like and what their design will be. And I think Councilmember Nathan captured a lot of that.
And we asked, they could identify a similar project somewhere that we could take a look at. You know, just sort of aesthetically, what we could expect to, to see visually on the site. But that's also an outstanding request.
I thi, I think those are good summaries. I would add that they did, you know, probably a twenty or thirty-minute presentation to the subcommittee, and if you go onto their berkeley.edu webpage and and put in Albany Village Student Housing, I think you'll get to the planning link, planning department link, and they have some newer architectural rendings of what those, what the project might look like.
And the final kind of key outstanding issue, which has been outstanding for, for decades in Albany, is how how we will ever get the university to contribute some, to make some contribution to the city of Albany in consideration of the public safety and other services that, that we provide. Especially in light of the fact that, that Berkeley has successfully extracted some funding from them by suing them. And that we, you know, they're, they're kind of sending a dysfunctional message if they're saying, hey, if you want something, sue us. And their representative kind of agrees that that, that's not a good way to go and that we should be having some kind of conversation about making Albany a little bit more whole. And that that would be a good conversation to have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yeah. My question is, Tashville, what, if anything, are we likely to be able to get from the Regents' meeting, which isn't say that we shouldn't go and talk? But tactically, you know, if you have a tactical approach, my guess would be we're only gonna get their attention on one. If we can even get their attention on one aspect of this, that would be perhaps amazing. Two would be incredible, would be my guess. I haven't ever watched a Regents' meeting. I haven't participated in a Regents' meeting. I don't know if anybody else has. I did look at the, the current Regents, and the only thing that gives us, gives me some hope is that the current chair of the Regents is an urban planner themselves. And they have founded two companies, one based on advancing sustainability and urban planning and the other equity in urban planning. So at least the chair is knowledgeable with the, a lot of the aspects that we're interested in. And so we might get there, but it seems like a long shot. But I don't know if anybody else has experience with the Regents. Or Director Bond has words of wisdom for what our chances are for actually getting, getting it together at this meeting and how we can maximize our probability of getting some traction.
So my experience with the Board of Regents is now probably about almost twenty years ago, so things may have changed a bit. In the, historically, the, the public input is usually at the beginning of the meeting, first hour or two of the first day, maybe a little bit in the second day. I do think they would be, I would hope that they're, and would expect them to be respectful of a council member attending and addressing them. And, you know, I think that the Board of Regents may not have always been, gotten the best reputation for for responding to public comments, but I would hope that they would listen to you and and at least it, it keeps the door open. My, my concern is with the absence of public comments from the, from an elected official is that, that a written comment alone might be more likely to be kind of dismissed in the, in the pile of papers that they're gonna have for the two-day meeting. But if they're sitting there listening and they hear something that resonates with them, maybe as, as Council or Vice Mayor Jordan said, maybe that resonates with one or more of them. They say, that's a good idea. Let's have that looked into. And that just kind of keeps the door open for us to continue to work with campus staff. Without that, the door kind of gets closed to some degree, because then once the Regents approve this, there aren't a lot of other opportunities other than just our kind of normal day-to-day, pick up the phone and talk to them, but their, their deal is kind of baked at that point, I would expect.
Yeah, so by all means, somebody that's, that's advocated for a couple decades, but I'll even write and comment, both are critical. So I'm not suggesting wouldn't comment. I'm just trying to figure out what would be most effective. It sounds like their comment process is a little different in the sense they take all the comments and then they deal with all the agenda items, so your comment could be separated from when the agenda comes up by four, five, six hours, which is way suboptimal, obviously. So is the, is the action that is anticipated that will be before them is just approving the project, like approve the project, one and done?
They would, they would be required to make some findings about SEQA, just as you have to make those kinds of findings when you approve a, a development project. And then they would probably be approving something to the effect of, you may not call it this, but you know, something to the effect of, of a term sheet with an agreement with American Campus Communities. And then authorizing the president of the university or the chancellor to, to take the project the rest, rest away through the, the more technical approvals. And those, those latter approvals are not gonna have, would not normally have public engagement in a formal sense, at least.
All right, looks like we have one, oh, sorry, Councilmember Nathan, go ahead.
Do we, could we possibly try to schedule one follow-up meeting between now and the Regents' meeting? Because there were a couple of issues that they said that they would take a look at, the number of parking spots and the traffic flow on Jackson Street. And it seemed like we might be able to get more information, that they were still working on the, the issue of the monarchs. We'd still love, I think, to see some kind of visual of what to expect. And of course, the big, the gorilla in the room of whether the, the Regents would make a contribution to, to Albany.
In my, I, I kind of shortened my, my presentation to the council. There is one more document that we're expecting to come out, which is a revision to their SEQA analysis. It's called an addendum in this particular case, and I believe that should be coming out shortly. I, I haven't checked the webpage today, but I checked over the weekend and I didn't see anything. So that will be an useful information document and could complement any any conversation that we want to have with them. I'd be certainly happy to reach out to them tomorrow morning to try to set up another subcommittee meeting.
I think that would be great. And I would suggest that Mayor Gary be our representative if she's available. And willing.
Let me check my phone. No, I'm saying, no, I it's fine.
I'll be happy to back you up any way that I can. I'll be your, I'll be your briefcase carrier, virtually, anything I can do.
Sounds good. Let's, let's go to public comment, and then after that, we'll make sure we're all in agreement, and then we'll go from there. Okay? Looks like we have two comments. Go ahead. I'm sorry, three. Go ahead, please.
Hi, Juan Aloches. My name is Julio Contreras. I'm a UC Village resident. I've been here for the past six years. And I graduated from UC Berkeley. So my comment in regards to this agenda item would be that I also agree that Mayor Gary should be nominated and should represent this this body, this, this motion. I also have been participating at the UC Gil Track and volunteering there and being a part of the farming that is going on. And so I agree with a lot of Jeff Bond's comments as far as what it is like to work with the UC. And once they decide something, it's, it's very strict. Not so much flexibility, as well as the comments and emails or writing, it, it also isn't as effective, unfortunately. And so, very rigid and difficult to work with. And so, yeah, I, I feel that Mayor Gary has been there with, with, meeting with folks and build community and trust. And so I, I agree to that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, please. Okay. Go ahead.
Yes. A couple of things. First of all, UC is not well-known for being very straightforward and truly investigative on SEQA situations. I don't know how the city of Albany can, since it's our environment as well and our butterflies and our other life forms, what influence you can have on this development. The height limit, for one thing, is going to change the environment a lot and not good for the butterflies. Well, let's see. I guess my time is running out. I the other question might be the cost of the rental and the whole question of housing and equitable housing and providing for student, low-income students. Anyway, check for now.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Next, please.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Effie Rollings, and I'm also a farmer and organizer at the Gil Tract. Thanks for the opportunity to comment. I would also like to support Mayor Gary going to the Regents' meeting. She's done a lot of work building relationships and bridges with the council, with the city, with the farm and with the village. So just want to reiterate that and encourage, yes, like, trying to get answers to these questions before the Regents' meeting, because once it's done, it's, there's just, as, as everybody's already said, a lot less likely that anybody's gonna be able to get anything, anything. So you know, the, the farm community has been trying to get further biological surveying, so that the fact that there is overwintering monarch recorded by the largest scientific organizations on butterflies, that, that, that this is a, a big in the environmental impacts and the knowledge that is, that the design should be worked around, that this is something that has not been incorporated into the design, that the mitigation measures that UC is offering is just about the construction process and Is just about the construction process and not about the long-term impacts of the building itself. So. These are concerns that we've got and that we're trying to, to get answers to also before the regions meeting. Um. One other consideration is that, um, I'm, I was also concerned, um, as someone who knows a lot of folks trying, struggling with housing in Albany to hear that. This was going to meet some of Albany's low-income housing requirements. Um. And I just feel like those are, you know, sort of two different populations, the population that's being served by the graduate student housing and. Other folks that are looking for housing. So it, it seemed, um, confusing to me that that was going to. Be kind of folded in and that that was a reason that Albany might be supportive of the, the development. Um, and that's all to say, you know, folks at the farm and. Um, and the village, of course, are supportive and know we need more student housing. But we don't want to do it at a cost, um, and do it too, in too much of a rushed way. So hopefully. I hope we all work on continuing to get those questions answered before the regions meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So your comment, I believe that's it. I'll go ahead and bring it back to council. Uh, Councilmember Tiedemann, go ahead, please.
Um, just wanted to say, um, if it's, well, the council, I'm happy to, uh, have Mayor Gary up to us, but I was going to volunteer as I would be. Happy to talk to the regents who's been working on this process and work with village residents and think it's a good chance to. Make clear our concerns and also dovetail with our other issues we've been having with the village and things we want to address.
All right. Anyone else that we make a vote or get a motion?
Talk a little bit more, um. Is the Director Bond is the addendum to the LRDP? Draft the IR?
No, the addendum is to an EIR that was certified back in 2004.
Oh, this is for the, the village master plan?
That's correct.
Okay. So I really could have some. Useful information in it. All right. I might ask some answers. Um. I would, I would suggest that. Whoever represents Albany does not raise the issue of UC. Providing revenue to Albany. I mean, I, I think, I think we really. It's to my experience, when you're, when you're at this level, you really have to focus on. The one or two things you think can actually really get without muddying the waters. If you throw everything in there, then you end up getting, you're more likely to get nothing. Um, so my suggestion would really focus on. The project itself and the one or two things that we most want to get. Out of it. I mean, I have the things in mind for, that I'm working on, um, and I can put those out there, but. But more importantly, I would say we really need to prioritize and just really cut it right down to, to just one or two things. Cause I don't think you're going to get their attention. I don't think more than that. And if we do a laundry list, then you're just going to lose them.
I think it will be helpful to hear at a follow-up meeting, um, what, uh, what they're open to and what they're not.
Well, then I don't know what the mechanism of communication is going to be without violating the Brown Act.
I think.
If the mayor is our representative.
I think Jeff Bond is going to see if we can set up another meeting. Um, and probably Mayor Gary should attend that one.
Yeah, she's selecting whoever selected should be in that meeting.
Yeah.
Um, for my part.
Or.
You know, I think they're not doing adequate transportation planning. You know, they're saying, well, we don't need many parking spaces, but they're not connecting this project into the cycling infrastructure. Um.
They seem even to be aware of the sign.
Yeah. So I mean, it's.
Yeah.
And so because of who the chair is, I, I think there's a high chance that we could get their attention on that. Um, you know, we're doing our part. We met our 2020 greenhouse pollution reduction goal, one of the few cities that did it. You would like to continue that path of success and they're helping with the transportation infrastructure and really plugging this project into the transportation infrastructure that we've been developing. Is key because it's at a key crossroads. Um. The other thing I'm worried about is that they're going to put natural gas in this building despite their policy not to, where their policy might only apply to campus buildings and. Cause I know, I think I read somewhere they're not taking responsibility for their housing. And they're going to the carbon neutral. Um. But I don't know if that should be raised or not. And that's kind of in the weeds. Uh, so I mean, the one thing I'm focused on is, is the transportation infrastructure and. As I'll report later, you know, we're, we're getting some traction with the AUSD. To, uh, build a motor separated cycling route. Um, across the front of Ocean View Elementary. So this is the other, you know, we need to keep the momentum and keep them doing their part. To continue that effort.
Yeah, I really have no idea what AS, AUSD is thinking. Are they thinking people are going to. Drive in there, drop off their kids and turn around, or are they going to. Drive past the know-through traffic sign and drive through the village? You know, there don't seem to be. There don't seem to be any good alternatives. Once you've entered, uh, you know, once you've turned on Jackson into the school. Uh. If I were the queen of the forest, I'd probably say, you know, let's have people drop their kids off along Buchanan, uh, much, much safer. But I don't know what they're, they're planning.
All right. So does anyone want to make a motion and we vote? It's like. It'll be either I or Councilmember Tiedemann. Councilmember Nation, go ahead.
I move that we, um, give, uh, staff direction for Mr. Bond to contact. UC and see if we could set up a follow-up meeting and that, uh, we send, um, Mayor Gary and. I would be happy to attend, but I'd also be happy to defer to Councilmember Tiedemann. It's the more, uh, UC knowledgeable person. Um, and we kind of set up, uh. Uh, and take a list to them of these outstanding issues. And try to get a sense of which one or ones they might be the most receptive to, uh, some change and see if we can, uh. Uh, get anything out of this.
I will second that. It also brings to mind that. It's a publicly noticed meeting, so there's, there's no reason, and I'm not suggesting we would, but there's no reason in law that all five of us could.
That's right.
Okay. Before Mayor Gary, before there's a vote, can I clarify an issue for the Brown Act that Vice Mayor Jordan raised? It looks like back in April, when I read the staff report, council did create an ad hoc committee. Um, of Councilmember Nathan and Councilmember Tiedemann to meet with, uh, UC Berkeley authorities on issues that were best handled. I think by the council as opposed to the staff level. So I'm concerned that if we now bring Mayor Gary into this. Meeting and swap people out, we've got a Brown Act problem. So I don't think we want to. Have that meeting and, and swap out ad hoc committee members.
Well, could we have, um, Councilmember Tiedemann and I, uh, sorry, one sec, do the, uh, follow-up meeting? And, uh, and then, um, prepare talking points for, for Mayor Gary.
We would need a meeting. We would need a public meeting for you to do that because it's the three of you. Functionally following up on that issue. So. If you want that subsequent meeting, I don't think.
I think that's what you're saying. Just call a special meeting after this meeting.
You would need to if, if that's the goal is to have Councilmember Nathan and Councilmember Tiedemann continue as the ad hoc committee and then express that information back to Mayor Gary.
Well, you know, if we are going to do a meeting on the strategic plan anyway, maybe we could, uh. Have, have this discussion during that, uh, as a second agenda item at that meeting. Does that make sense?
All right. So let's go ahead and vote and then I need someone to extend the time because we're at 10:53. So, uh, can I get a roll call please, Ann?
May I just note that, that that action will be contingent on UC, um, agreeing to a meeting before your special meeting.
Okay. Sounds good.
Can someone repeat the motion?
Vice Mayor Jordan, will you repeat your motion? I think you made it, right? No, it was Councilmember Nate.
It was me? Okay. Um, all right. Let me see if I've got it. The, uh. The first point would be the council would, um, direct staff to follow up with the, uh, UC Berkeley staff to see. Uh, whether they would be receptive to a follow-up meeting to our meeting that I think was on the 12th of June. I don't know. It was in June, mid-June. And, um, uh, and if so, then Councilmember Tiedemann and I would attend that as the ad hoc subcommittee. And then, um, if we, uh, since we are planning, I believe, to have a meeting. On the, uh, with a dedicated meeting with regard to the strategic plan, that we have one additional item and that would be next steps. Uh, on Berkeley with the likelihood that we would be, um. Updating what we wish to talk about at the, the chancellor's, uh, I'm sorry, the, um. You know, the, the.
The regions.
Regions. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, meeting and that, um, Mayor Gary would present our, uh, our, our issues at that meeting. So we're talking about three different meetings. One meeting between Councilmember Tiedemann and I with UC Berkeley. If they are receptive to the, that at the staff level, then a meeting amongst ourselves. In conjunction with the strategic plan to discuss what our asks, refine what our asks will be. And then at the regions meeting itself, Mayor Gary would be presenting our, our asks. Does that?
Makes sense. One second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember McQuaid? Yeah, yes. Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion.
Thank you so much.
What happens if you see declines or offer to have another meeting? Then. Does the next step is Mayor Gary then just automatically. Attending the meeting, which makes sense to me. I'm just trying to understand if there's, if we need to fix that somewhere.
I think whatever happens, we would discuss it again at the strategic plan meeting. That occurs before the regions meeting.
Thank you so much, Jeff, for your time and the report. We'll go ahead and, uh. And to move the timeliness. Let's do 11:20.
So I'll move to 11:20.
Second.
All right. Go ahead and roll call Ann, please.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuaid? Yes. Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Now we're going to new business, uh, item number 11, one. We go ahead and get a report from staff.
Nicole, did you want me to go ahead and present on this?
Sure, Mala. Thank you.
Okay. So the city council received recently a request from the school board. Asking that the council consider adding an item to the charter review committee's work plan. And the item was researching the potential for a city charter amendment to permit the district to offer exemptions to low-income households for. Potential future school district parcel tax, taxes. Unfortunately, the education code doesn't provide for that exemption for school districts. Um, and so the, the thought was from the school board to get a better understanding if there was another legal option to allow, um, the same result. Um, unfortunately for us as well, the California constitution limits what we can put in our charter regarding. School districts and it's very specific to, um, how school boards are elected. Um, the qualifications, compensation and removal and how many members would be on the school board. So we don't have the ability to amend the charter to address that specific issue. That the, the school board has asked us to look into. The mayor has asked, um, for this discussion before the council to consider other options. Um, including whether the council wants our office to research if the council could put a parcel tax. Um, on a future ballot that would provide for this low-income household exemption with the proceeds of that tax going to the school district. We have not done the research on this and we don't know if that's a legal option, but I think, um, the discussion before the council tonight is if there is an interest in. In having our office research that or researching other potential options.
Thank you, Mala, for the report. I'll go ahead and open it up for council for discussion.
Um, well, I guess I would just like to thank the city attorney and her firm for jumping on this question with special acuity. Uh, impressively giving a fairly definitive and concise answer. I was actually the, the source of, of this concept and might not be a much surprise, uh, in hopes to, to bring more economic justice to the city. Um, I do see that the board president is in the attendee list, so hopefully she'll, she'll comment from her perspective on this as well, what she would like to go from here.
I.
Go ahead, Councilmember Nation.
Yeah, I, I just, uh. I, I don't think that we should go in the direction of, uh, the city. Um, putting measures on the ballot. For the school board under the guise of, uh, financing the city. These are separate entities with entirely different legal structures around their financing and functioning. And I think it would create, um, it would create confusion among the voters. It would create. Uh, uh. Difficult, I suspect it would create litigation. I think it would create all kinds. I just see all kinds of potential problems. Uh, the state has a framework and the state has a framework for equity. Uh, too, you know, there's, this has been going on for 50 years. The Serrano versus Priest and all the, you know. Astonishingly complex, uh, issues around school financing for us to jump into it, I think would be. You know, we, we need to do, we need to do our work and, uh, we need to be supportive of the school district in doing their work. But trying to, uh, circumvent California law to provide. Something to, you know, this mechanism to the school board that California law does not provide just strikes me as. Uh, going way, way on a limb, um, and not, uh, and not necessarily, you know, I've talked about this before. Uh, but there's a big difference in a city like this between wealth and income. These are very different things and we may be, you know, we're, we're taxing newcomers. That's how we tax is we, we impose enormous taxes on newcomers. Um, and they do have big incomes because they've got to have a lot of money, uh, to buy into Albany. Um, but that has a huge effect on who is able to move here. And, uh, I, I just don't think this is a good, I don't think it's equitable. Uh, no matter how much we try to make it equitable. Um, and it's very much against, uh, the, the framework that California has developed for the relationship between. Uh, the state and the school districts. And I don't think we, we should go there. Thanks.
And any other? Councilmember McQuaid?
Thank you. Um, yes, I. Agree with most of what Councilmember Nathan said. Um, I'm a little confused as to why this is even on the agenda. When I read the request from the school district, it was simply to research the possibility of a charter amendment. Um, and now it seems like we've gone into a total overreach of how, how can we, um. Generate revenue for them and why we would use, you know, our legal counsel to do research or. Um, anything else seems a little odd to me. The school district didn't ask us to do this and they certainly have their own legal team. Um, you know, and I would be concerned that if we put something on the ballot. People, no matter how many times we said this is for the school district, they might not understand that and their tax bill is going to read city of Albany. So when we come along with our next tax measure and, you know, there'll always be more tax measures. They may think, wait, we just did a city of Albany tax. I'm not going to vote for the, this next one. So I think it puts us at, at real risk of not being able to pass the taxes that, that we're going to need, you know, years into the future. Um, you know, and I, I. I think. You know, I, I would like them to have a better system and I think that they, what they need is legislative relief. And I would, you know, totally support however we could help with that, sending a letter to. Whoever, you know, either our legislators or other legislators to help them with that part of the process. I'd be more than happy to do that. But other than that, I think. We did what they asked us to do, we sort of come to the end of that trail.
Thank you so much for Councilmember McQuaid. I want to jump in, excuse me. This is why it's on the agenda to have this conversation. I couldn't have called each one of you and said, what are your thoughts on this? We did our due diligence, they asked. I said, let's bring it to the council, let's have this conversation. Let's get the point of views, different perspective. I also met with Mala and um, her partner, I think his name is William Price. Because he sent an email, but he did not provide any options for us. So the question was, what could we as council members do? To, you know, like Councilmember McQuaid said, should we write a letter to legislators to try and help out? What can we do? And that's what I was looking for. What are some options? Not just, oh, well, we can't do it, and let's just kick it to the side and move to something else. So they're reaching out across the line. We have a partnership that we're trying to develop with our school district working hand-to-hand. So again, if we don't think that we want to go down this lane, that's fine, but I wanted to have the conversation. Your perspective from Vice Mayor and, and you council members on making the best quality decision on how we should help or not help in this situation. That's why it's on the agenda. So anyone else before I go to cap, um, the public? All right, I'll go to comments from the public. Go ahead, please, I think you're muted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I've never had to call in on the Zoom. This is uh, Sarah Hinckley. I'm the president of the Albany School Board. And I, I just want to thank the council for, or I guess staff and the mayor for getting a quick answer to this question. Which was brought to us by Vice Mayor Jordan. And um, you know, we appreciate having clarity about what the charter allows or doesn't allow, and I, you know, as a couple of you said. The district didn't, or the board did not even discuss the possibility of, of any additional steps, so. But I can speak for myself, um, that I would agree with the council members who said, you know, if it's not an easy solution in the charter. I think we've answered the question that, that we wanted answered, and I think there are far too many complications to consider. Some sort of workaround tax measure, um, even though we, we wish that we had the opportunity to do the kinds of low-income exemptions. That other entities have, um, and that we ourselves used to have. Because one of our parcel taxes, which is a permanent parcel tax, does have a low-income exemption that is grandfathered in. But if we were to replace that tax, suddenly low-income renters and homeowners who aren't paying that parcel tax would be forced to pay whatever. Whatever um, we use to replace that. So that was part of the impetus for us wanting to look into it, but. I appreciate all the time that's been put into it. Um, I know the rest of the board would, and I think. You know, I agree the due diligence has been done and we will, you know, explore other options or look forward to other legislative options for. Having more equitable parcel taxes in the future. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Next comment?
Hi, this is Harry Chomsky. Um, thanks for taking this up and thank you to the legal team for getting such a quick and definitive answer. I was one of the people who brought this issue to the front um, through my position on the charter committee. And I do think that the question as regards the charter has been answered and. And I pretty much agree with what others have said about the undesirability of certain kinds of workarounds. I, I think the state has a good reason to limit how schools go about raising money. Because the state wants to ensure that public schools remain a public responsibility. And that the community comes together to pay for public schooling and doesn't make unfair decisions about who is supposed to pay for it. And inadvertently or nefariously change it into a more privatized system, so. I think there's a good reason to follow state law. That doesn't mean that state law is necessarily perfect, and I think. Perhaps an adjustment to state law that would allow this kind of low-income exemption would be an improvement. If there's a way that the city can support a possible change to state law to that effect, I think that would be nice. So thank you for taking this up.
Thank you so much for your comment. Go ahead, please.
Hi, Anne. Yeah, thank you, Nicole Chauvin, I just want to thank the mayor and vice mayor for bringing this to the council. I want to thank the mayor for expressing the uh, view that the city council and school board should. And school district should work closely together and uh, to the vice mayor and others for um, working on equity issues. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, I'll bring it back to the council. Any other final words before we um, close this item out? Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yeah, to be clear, I might have not come across before, but I'm not, I was not in support of the city using its taxing authority to, as a workaround. Um, I was hopeful that the charter would provide a mechanism, but obviously it won't. Uh, I would hope that as a council, if the school board is interested in pursuing a legislative. Solution, um, which I have to think would be likely to pass in the legislature, because I can't imagine that they wouldn't want to provide. Economic justice, given the current formulation of the state legislature. That we would be willing to write a letter and then each individually use our. Uh, elected networks to try to, you know, popularize this and bring other. Neighboring agencies on board to also write letters and really create a movement, an East Bay movement to get this done. Because there's quite a few cities in the East Bay that have these, these partial taxes. So that would be my hope, but obviously that's not something that we can't, not something we can do unless the board says. That it wants us to partner in, in pursuing that, so we'll have to wait, see if the board um, takes that action or not.
Eric? Uh, with that said, I guess we'll just direct staff, as you know, there's nothing at this time to do anything further work on it, okay? All right, let's go ahead and move to item number twelve. We'll do council subcommittee reports, meetings that you've attended on Zoom around the room. Councilmember McQuaid?
Sure, one second. Um, I, I did attend the ACTC meeting for Supervisor Carson. I attended the uh. The CERT meeting um, the other last week, and I, I want to say that. That CERT group has really hung together well and are doing some really good work in the city and um. I was really pleased to, to see that. So, so often groups start and they sort of over time fade away, and this group. I think has gotten stronger as they've gone along, and that's, that's really nice to see. And I also attended the everyone home leadership board and of course the ever-popular webinars.
All right, Councilmember Nathan?
Did my webinars too. Um, could I, uh, could I share my screen for just one minute? Is that uh?
Yes, you could go ahead and share.
Okay, let's see. I can't get it to come up. I'm not quite sure what's going on here.
I can babble while you're.
Can you see it? Can you see what I'm sharing? Okay, let me see if I can do it. Okay, well, this is the um. No, it's just not working. Okay, well, I was gonna, gonna share the um. Report from ACTC, there's a chart of bicycle pedestrian program performance measures. And um, it says that the current master plan requires that plans be no more than five years old based on adoption date. And the jurisdiction must indicate plans to update outdated plans. Several are up, uh, needed to be updated, but uh, for Albany, it says um, that the bicycle pedestrian plan. No update is required. So I think maybe we should take a look at um. What the, if there is a belief that our active transportation plan is out of date. We should take a look at that. If we are um, on the books at ACTC as being in compliance. It's, it's, it's a good thing because we don't have to do a new plan if we don't want to. But it's a bad thing if we're looking for, if we really do want to do a new plan and we're looking for funding, if we're thought to be already in compliance, that's not going to help. So um, maybe it's something we better take a look at.
I'm confused, I understand what you just told us to be internally contradicted, self-conflicted. I mean, that, well, didn't it say that updates are required every five years, that there was some? Policy requirement, but then it says we're in compliance?
It says we're in compliance, it says uh.
Isn't the first part of what you read said, say they expect an update every five years?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I just. Hallucinate that or is that actually?
For Albany, no update required. So they think that we've been updated more recently. Nicole, do you have any?
Yeah, just a point of clarification, you know, Jeff did share information with me as we're in our virtual world here. We did make relatively minor amendments to the ATP in twenty nineteen when the Keynes-Adam project was approved. So that may, you know, just on the books appear as an update. Um, certainly not a intensive update, but less substantive in nature.
That sounds right, because that was the year they have, that, that our uh, our plan dates to two thousand nineteen.
All right, Councilmember.
Great life hack.
Pardon?
That's a great life hack. It's a great policy hack right there, just, you know, do a little tweak and.
Vice Mayor Jordan, we got five minutes. Councilmember, please tell us, what meetings have you went to?
Um, so I went to the.
I said, Councilmember Tiedemann, focus up, Vice Mayor Jordan, Councilmember Tiedemann, give us your minutes, you have one minute.
Okay, um, I'm gonna try and make this short, though I attended my big meeting of the year, the ABAG general meeting. So uh, at that, we had a presentation from BAFFA, which is the new Bay Area Housing Funding uh, Organization. They decided due to COVID not to raise uh, as much revenue as they are allowed to, they're allowed to put bonds on. For the nine county Bay Area and raise a lot of money for housing, um, which is very exciting, but they have chose to focus because of COVID. Uh, on several pilot programs, uh, which could be useful to us, especially when we're trying to meet arena numbers, so I'll talk to staff about that soon. We also had a presentation on best practices for addressing homelessness um, from uh, one at home. Uh, and how to disrupt the cycle. Uh, they focused on using a framework of one interim housing solution to every two permanent housing solutions. To every four homeless response uh, solutions, um, which is an interesting framework uh, that they had found that I hadn't seen before. In the general business meeting, our big thing was the budget. That is focused on a lot of technical assistance grants, um, and is a little bit smaller than last year, mainly do some other grants winding down. One of the only other big things there is that they'll need to adjust their admin fees at some point in the near future, just due to changing. Structures. I think that's it. I hope I stay within my minute.
All right, Vice Mayor Jordan?
I attended a stopways board meeting, also the energy council board meeting. Um, the stopways board adopted the organic. Organic, I think, reclamation and recycling ordinance, which we update on the current recycling ordinance, which. We will be able to, to utilize for SB thirteen eighty-three compliance by adopting an ordinance this fall that references that ordinance. Um, the mayor of Emeryville, Diane Martinez, to my surprise, nominated me to be, to be vice president of the energy council, which I was elected to that position. Um, should the council choose to keep me in that position, that means I would be president of the energy council in two years. Um, I also met with uh, EUSD, um, its construction manager and some of its consultants. And they've come up with a plan that has a, a cycling facility that's off the road. Running along the front of Oceanview Schools, we'll make some progress there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, let's see, I did. I didn't, no, I haven't attended any meetings yet, they're coming, they're forthcoming. So with that said, any future agenda items? Councilmember Tiedemann?
Uh, yeah, one of agendas uh, in the near future, uh, talking about establishing a subcommittee to. Look at a new version, what our options are for the ALS tax that didn't pass as measure E last time.
Okay, Councilmember Nathan? Vice Mayor Jordan? Councilmember McQuaid?
No.
All right, we go to line item number fourteen for announcements of city meetings and events that are upcoming this week. Please govern yourselves today, this, the events, we may be having our strategic plan meeting. Will be added to there, I think, next week, but we have to finalize that. And with that said, I would like to thank Councilmember Nathan, Councilmember McQuaid, Councilmember Tiedemann, city attorney. City manager, Vice Mayor Jordan and staff for a wonderful council meeting, and I'll see you next week.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Good night.
Good night.